I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council, May 24, 2016. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
The first item of current business is John Wayne Day. Staff, would you like to give a brief report?
This is a request by Mayor Protam Muldoon to have the council vote to waive council policy A6, and if affirmative in that vote, to then vote to designate John Wayne Day. And assuming you do that, we'd have a presentation tonight to some of the family members.
Okay, very good. I'll bring it up to council. Mayor Protam Muldoon, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you. The reason I requested to waive this policy is because John Wayne's birthday would be May 26, this Thursday, which also is my birthday as well, coincidentally. But, so, thank you. So, hoping that my colleagues will agree to join it so we can discuss making it John Wayne Day here in Newport Beach from May 26 in perpetuity. Thank you.
Any other council comments? We're discussing the A6 waiver first, so any council comments? Yes, Mr. Curry.
I'm pleased to join my colleague, Mr. Muldoon, in support of this. I appreciate his leadership in doing this and his joint birthday with John Wayne, and I think it'd be a great thing for our community.
Very good. Mr. Petros? Mr. Solich?
Okay.
Mr. Pieter? Mr. Duffield? All right, let's take it out to the people. Any members of the public would like to speak on the waiver of the A6 matter. This is just on the waiver of the council policy on A6. All right, let's bring it back to the council. We have a motion. We have a second.
I assume if we waive it...
Second. Let's take a vote. All right, now we... Oh, excuse me.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, now we will discuss the resolution to declare John Wayne Day, May 26. Any comments? Why don't I start? Mr. Pieter, would you like to make any comments?
No.
Mr. Duffield? Mr. Petros? Mr. Curry? Mr. Solich?
Okay.
Mr. Muldoon?
We want the one as presented.
All right, so we go public... Do we have any comments from the public on the resolution to declare May 26 John Wayne Day in Newport Beach? Now you may speak, ma'am.
As the Marines would say, "Ura!" Okay? That's to start with.
Please identify yourself.
Laura Dietz, Corona del Mar, Newport Beach Sunrise Rotary and founder of Iwo Jima Monument West, 501(c)(3). For the last three years, I've been studying the Battle of Iwo Jima, and in the course of that, have learned about John Wayne's role. And that's actually, there were two roles. He was chosen, he was not the first choice, but he was finally agreed to play the role of Sergeant Stryker in the film that eventually came out in 1949, December of 1949. And he had a great, great, enormous appreciation for the U.S. military. He had done several previous films about World War II and decided that, oh, I'm not, I don't want to do one more film. Well, they banded him and twisted him, however you do that with a John Wayne, and finally, he agreed to do it. But he was very glad that he did do it because a good, large part of the film, conveniently for him, was filmed down at Camp Pendleton. They did several things, including making the sand black, and, and sort of really getting into the ethos of the, of the Marine Corps on a very personal level. In the film, there is, which I don't know how many people of you have seen it, in terms of modern, you know, filmmaking, it looks pretty primitive, but he met the three flag raisers who were still alive at the time, and the Marine Corps loaned them the actual flag that was in the famous Joe Rosenthal photograph, which also was the second flag raising, not the first, and there's a whole other story there that I won't go into. I've had the pleasure of working, having somebody work for me who actually worked for the Wayne family for years, so I got an intimate look at them and their lives. And John Wayne was a person, I think, whose personality is sorely missed today because he was not afraid to wave the flag, he was not afraid to say what he thought, and he was not, he was not afraid to act on how he thought, what he thought was best for the country. And I'm particularly proud, given his residence here and his family growing up here in many respects, that you were doing this today, and thank you very, very much.
Thank you. May I just ask you, could you spell your last name? Very good, thank you.
Di- add a Z.
Okay.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have nothing against Newport Beach having a John Wayne Day, or a Bruce Wayne Day, or a Mike Hen Day, or a Dennis Rodman Day, or an Alice in Wonderland Day. As my uncle says, it's always good to find someone that we can celebrate. But I have difficulty seeing this as much more than a political stunt, and if we're actually planning to do something more than the resolution, I think it's reasonable to ask exactly what we're planning to do and what it will cost. I also think it's reasonable to question the credibility of a resolution calling John Wayne "the consummate American hero." I am sure there have been many people who have lived in Newport Beach or served Newport Beach who have exhibited great personal heroism, and I think we should celebrate them. But the John Wayne that we're proposing to celebrate on Thursday, as we've heard, is simply the stage name of an actor who is very good and very popular at portraying largely make-believe fictional heroes. He didn't actually put on a Coon skin cap to fight the British, or drive cattle along the Chisholm Trail, or die on Iwo Jima or at the Alamo, although he made, have made us think that he did. Celebrating fantasy is fine, but I think we should be honest about that, so I would like to suggest two modifications to the resolution. First, in the first whereas, instead of saying John Wayne was the consummate American hero, I think it would be more honest to say John Wayne was the stage name of an actor who portrayed what many regarded as the consummate American hero. And secondly, to accomplish what Councilmember Muldoon wants to do in Section 1, where it says the city hereby recognizes May 6, if this is not to be a one-off event, I think you should insert the word "recognizes" every May 6 as John Wayne Day. Thank you.
Any other public comments, please? Seeing none, let's bring it back to the council. Any comments? And on this side, any comments on this side? Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I'd like to reserve most of my remarks for when the Wayne family will join us if they're, if this passes, which my fingers are crossed. This would be, and the intent of this would be every year hereafter, May 26. Is that clear in the resolution, do you think, Aaron?
So why don't we add language to Section 1 to make sure it's clear that it's every May 26.
Okay, thank you. So just like Jim Mosher plays an excellent advocate for the truth on TV sometimes here, John Wayne also played an excellent advocate for American values throughout the history of our country, different areas of our country. And he's an inspiring leader to me. That's why I'm so humbled to be proposing this. And his family is very active in the community. I'd like to thank Duffy Duffield for helping me arrange support from his family in this. They're very excited. And countless thanks and emails I've gotten from people who love John Wayne and believe that he represented a very special time here in Newport Beach. So I'd like to make the motion to make May 26 John Wayne Day.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
And I just want to mention that, as Mayor Protam Muldoon mentioned, that at the 7 o'clock resumption of our meeting at 7:00 p.m., we will have members of the John Wayne family here to present a city proclamation to the effect of this resolution, followed by a brief public reception in the community room hosted by Mayor Protam Muldoon after the photo-taking that will occur, and members of the public are invited to attend cookies and beverages across the way for a few minutes while we resume our council meeting. That's okay? All right. Now, we have a little bit of procedural activity. We are going to adjourn now from the regular meeting now and convene the joint meeting of the Finance Committee with the city council, and we will have a discussion of our fiscal year 2016-17 budget overview. So, Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Finance Committee member Gorsicka is current, is absent.
All right, let's proceed. And Mr. Kiff, you have a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So, we're going to go through a presentation. I know it's annoying to look at a big PowerPoint, so I'm going to try to go through it fairly quickly as usual. Please do feel free to stop and ask either me or Dan any questions. I'm going to try to go through it thoroughly, but quickly. This is your annual presentation and study session of the budget, the budget that starts July 1. So, quick summary, general fund revenues in the proposed budget are a little under $200 million. That's an increase from 2015-16. The trend over the last six years is about, an annual increase of about 4.7 percent. The general fund operating expenditures, so these exclude the CIP, are $190 million. And this is a number I look to closely because it really tells us what is the cost of running our programs, paying our employees and running our programs. The trend over the last, sorry, this is about a 3.87 percent increase. And I'll talk about why that increase exists because actually, if you look at just our budget and you take away the pension costs and the MOU costs, we've been able to manage it so that the overall program costs would be down slightly. And that was kind of one of the goals that the mayor tried to set forth back in January. But overall, counting the pension costs, and that means we're paying more for pensions, we'll talk about that, are up about 3.87 percent. The trend over the last six years is 4.9 percent increases. This is the fund balance sheet for the general fund. You see where the revenues are and where the expenditures are. In this case, it counts the capital improvement program, or the $5.6 million, and netting out with a balanced budget and no surplus. Again, this is what we would project by the end of, by roughly a year and a month from now, the end of June in 2017. So let me talk about what some of those year-over-year changes are. That's what YOY will stand for. The pension costs are up by about $4 million to $40 million this year. So, the city's revenues, 40 million of them are going to pay for pensions. That's a huge amount. It's on an accelerated schedule by choice, but just so you know, just so folks at home realize this, of a safety personnel, in this case, a firefighter, a police officer, a lifeguard, for every dollar in wages they earn, we have to set aside 70 cents just to pay for pensions. Now, some of that the employees do pay for. Some of the 40 million, in fact, 9 million of the 40 million is deducted directly from the employee's paycheck.
Mr. Kiff, may I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
So of that 40 million, that's to pay current, the pensions of former employees that are now retired?
This is the, what we call the normal cost, the cost to keep up with everyone who's working and their pensions, as well as to pay something, and we'll talk about this more, towards the unfunded liability.
Okay.
So it's a combination of those two things. The unfunded liability more directly relates to retired employees. Mr. Pieter had a question?
You said it includes an accelerated payment. This includes our fresh start payment schedule, but no additional fresh start money, right? We're not adding
We're trying...
The new unfunded pension liabilities to a second fresh start?
It's a, it's a modified second fresh start that keeps us out of negative amortization. Dan can talk about that more, and we get to that if he'd like.
But that's coming from the surplus?
So it's, you're taking the new $50 million that CalPERS didn't make on their investment projections, which are now adding to our unfunded pension liabilities, and we, CalPERS would normally amortize that over 30 years, and we would pay a payment according to that. Are we paying it any quicker than those 30 years?
We're, we're trying to keep up with a 20-year, at least a 20-year payment schedule or less.
So even though we're not required to by CalPERS, your $40 million number here includes an accelerated payment on the additional 50 million?
Generally, yes, right. It's a little bit more complex than that. It has to do with our mortality schedule, our mortality update, too. And for the folks at home, mortality is an actuarial estimate of, that looks at how long our employees are living, our retirees are living, when people retire, and et cetera.
Okay, thanks.
But just to be, if I may clarify, too, 40 million of our approximately $200 million operating budget.
When you look at the operating budget, some of our employees are in non-general fund funds.
Right.
So actually, I would look at it more like a $280 million operating budget. 40 million of that is going towards pension costs.
Okay.
That's a challenging issue, so we, and I know we could spend days on it. And just to note again, the employees are paying a portion of that. They're paying $1 million more in the coming year. They're at $9.5 million a year. Safety employees pay, will get a paid roll deduction every, every pay period of 14.6 percent. Non-safety are paying 13 percent. More on what are the year-over-year changes. The council adopted some new labor agreements that are anywhere from two to three years. They do include some cost of living adjustments ranging from 1 to 2.75 percent. Those also have a pension offset from that, so that's the higher number. We also did increase our healthcare contributions to try to keep up with the market on that. Other year-over-year changes, Marina Park is at full strength right now in this budget. About 75 percent of those operations, though, are offset by new revenues. And then we did have a reduction in staff, so that's a negative offset to the, to the good, I guess one would say, in terms of year-over-year changes, and I'll talk about that briefly. This is a fairly complex chart, but it explains what I just talked about, how each of those elements affects the budget. The net change over the previous year would be 3.87 percent. And you see the lion's share of that, if I get my pointer out, is here. It's the pension costs. So, always get this great question, expenditures grew, did city government grow? Well, here's what went up. I mentioned pensions, I mentioned labor costs, mentioned Marina Park. Our contingency reserve goes up when our budget goes up. In other words, we set aside more savings because we're trying to keep to 25 percent of our operating expenses. We're investing more in the harbor, and we're, some of our municipal operations department contracts, like landscaping, went up. We put them out to bid, they were competitive bids, but they came back in at higher pricing than we'd seen before. So what went down? Well, we're down, a net of six full-time equivalent positions, even with Marina Park. So, if I was in your shoes, or the public's shoes, why would I like this budget? I think there's some important goals met, it's balanced, your reserve policies are met, except one, that's our wastewater fund. The PERS obligations are fully funded, even though they're expensive, they're fully funded. We did, we are proposing a greater capital investment in our seawalls, that's $7 million. We met what's called our rule of thumb for the general fund CIP. These are optional things that the council can do to invest in our community, like paving roads. So the council has set a policy in the past of putting aside at least $5 million of the general fund towards things that no one else is telling us to do, but we know are good things to do. And that includes the pavement management index that Dave talked about last time. Our master plans for our CIP are all fully programmed, including the wastewater master plan. So even though that is short money, we are fully funding, and we'll talk about that in a moment, we're fully funding the projects because we don't want the sewer system to suffer. And we also are continuing what we would call strategic savings, such as general liability and setting aside money for computers and vehicles. So here's more on the changes in positions. Again, we're down six. There's four that have gone away in fire. There's five in mod, municipal operations. We're up two in recreation, and that's Marina Park primarily. And then I approved, I'm recommending the approval of a change from a part-time community services officer to a full-time community services officer and police. The Finance Committee worked hard in another reform to realign the vehicle internal service fund, that's what ISF stands for. They were able to, that realignment was able to achieve $1 million in one-time savings and $350,000 in ongoing costs. So this means our vehicles will last longer and be used longer and replaced less often. We also worked with the Finance Committee and did some improvements to community development. The fire plan check process is now overseen by community development versus the fire department, and you now have two paths for plan check, an inside and an outside. And as a result of this change, the fire marshal position was removed. Here are those changes in full-time staffing, just in more detail. Here's a chart that talks about the savings for future needs. When I mentioned general liability, some of the equipment funds, you see what we set aside for workers' comp, our vehicle replacement, and facilities maintenance. And I'll point to that latter one just briefly. We've been very diligent about saying, let's keep our, the buildings we have in good shape. So we'd never, prior to about three years ago, set aside money on a regular basis for that. So we do have that fund set up and are following it. So reasons not to like the budget, and I'll, it has my own bias as to what can or can't be done about that. So the personnel costs are very significant. Certainly, what we do is we hire people to do things. So a big portion of our costs are personnel. These are locked into the MOUs, but admittedly, staffing levels can change, and that's what we did see in the fire department. There are no really interesting or creative pension alternatives in this budget, and that's because that's not allowed for us to provide. Per, we're a member of PERS, we can only provide what PERS authorizes. So someday, I hope there's a defined contribution plan that we could enroll employees in, and/or there might be some changes statewide to, to the PERS system by Chuck Reed and Carl DeMayo. I know I'm, I'm optimistic and hoping that someday that might pass. The Finance Committee talks a lot about cafeteria allowances, and we, we tend to use cafeteria allowance as an offset to salary in some cases because it's not persible. It's one of the few things we can give, and when I say persible, means it does not become part of that employee's pension calculation. So that's why sometimes we move compensation over there to keep it from being persible. Is there enough outsourcing in here? There's some, there has been some, but we always try to measure what's the community tolerance for that. And then, is this an efficient budget? And please know that I wonder that too, all the time. Are we working at full steam ahead? And I just know that I have a lot of great department directors who know that spirit and know how, will nod when they say how, how full their employees' days are. Mayor Dixon asked me about this next slide, and that is, what's truly discretionary in our budget? And I'm going to say, admittedly, this is my biased interpretation. On the left would be things that are really discretionary, and the right things are things that are generally nondiscretionary. But arguably, things could pop back and forth between categories. So this is kind of what that looks like. If you look at, in this scenario, in the, there's a color that's more green, doesn't show up very well here, it's the top color, then blue, then purple. If you really looked at what, what we, what we could actually cut out without, say, impacting a program, about 2.9 percent of the city's total budget is discretionary, although I threw in some things in there that would be majorly impactful, like the police helicopter. And I know, I'm sure Chief Lewis is saying, oh my God, why did you put this on this list? But I really wanted to look at what, what things we had some discretion over versus that were locked into programs. So this is kind of an example of that slide. Again, about 2.9 of that total amount is on this slide. And a majority of that is the general fund CIP that I talked about.
Mr. Kiff?
Yes?
You've also included the 5.5 million for the general fund CIP contribution.
I did.
But it could be argued, if we wanted to do away with certain recreation programs, that's discretionary as well.
It is, yes.
So you're, you're, you're taking the, the CIP, the fundamental infrastructure of the community, and saying, that's discretionary, whereas in reality, other items such as the programs we do for children, the programs we do for the elderly, the programs we do are equally as discretionary if it falls under that type of definition.
Well, that's why I said it was my biased interpretation. And probably, if you, if you really, if you were true to my thinking about including the general fund CIP on there, the next year, you'd want to reprogram it because you don't want the streets to start falling apart, or landscaping to look bad, or you need to replace streetlights and things like that.
I just, I'm, I would be very cautious about calling one thing discretionary and something not. Both are impactful to this community.
Understood, and I appreciate that. This is another question that the mayor asked me to try and answer. Just to remind people, who actually funds our operations? Certainly, the residents fund a lot of them through property tax and sales tax, if you shop and eat here. The other list is down there, from classes to plan check to your water and wastewater rates. But I'd just like to make the point that the businesses and visitors make a lot of, cause a lot of our revenue to be here as well, including from the sales tax. Anytime someone from out of town buys a car at Newport Lexus or Fletcher Jones, that comes to us, 1 percent of that. Certainly, the hotel bed tax. About 17 percent of the overall property tax is non-residential. And then the business license tax. Parking is another big deal for businesses and visitors. So some decisions to make for you, there's a few of them. We have programmed 3.5 million in last year's surplus for nothing. It's called a city manager assignment. There's been some discussion about moving this to the wastewater fund. That's a perfectly legal thing to do. It's, it probably wouldn't be my Plan A, so I want, but I wanted to at least approach it in a relatively unbiased way and show why you might want to do this and why you might not. The wastewater fund is below reserves. We have, we were supposed to be spending 7.5 million. We've only spent 4.4 million on the sewer CIP, so we're about 3.1 million short. It could mitigate a future rate increase, and it does share this with most residents, not all residents, as some have pointed out. Why do something else? Well, it is fairly atypical to have the general fund support the enterprise fund, and I would worry about this move if a rate increase was never approved, ever, because this really is a Band-Aid. The sewer fund should support all of its operations, including capital. And then there are other important general fund needs and wants, like pension debt and a coast highway landscaping project. But again, this is something totally up to you folks. We welcome your input and ideas and your approaches. If you were to move it over there, is, again, completely legal. I'm going to jump to some of the work of the Finance Committee. We've had a, they're here today, three of them are here, and three of them are behind the dais. They've spent a lot of time with us, learning about the budget. It's not an easy thing to learn. I would, I would probably venture that they know it quite well now, but still, you can never, besides Dan and Susan and Steve, they're the people that know it even better than I do. So there's different levels of understanding. But they, these are the meetings that we've gone through, sorry. From September to October to November, and then into December, January, and February, we were reviewing last year's budget to get people familiar with the different departments, not all of them, but most of them. And then they helped look at the budget assumptions with us. They've reviewed this twice now, this specific budget. And they'll have one more meeting, if, they can have more than one more, but their third review is on May, sorry, is coming up here. It's actually on Tuesday, sorry, Thursday, so two days from now, sorry. I want to leave you with some final important thoughts, kind of sobering thoughts. Our pension unfunded liability is probably going to be at $300 million, $300 million by June 30th of 2016.
Excuse me, Dave, could you just, for the public's understanding?
Say that again?
Not only say that again, could you just remind us what our unfunded pension liability was in 2007?
$2 million?
I think so.
$2 million in 2007?
Or zero.
Yeah. So, of course, the stock market crashed. And remember, the, the assumptions that CalPERS uses is that every year, they'll gain at least 7.5 percent. And of course, that didn't happen for, for a good handful of years, and some years it exceeded that. But you were, even the, the exceedances since then, like the one year it gained 18 percent, it was gaining 18 percent on a much smaller pot of money because the, the decline was so significant. Now, if you went to PERS, they'd say, oh yeah, but our average returns over 10 years and 20 years is over 7.5 percent, and it is. But I think my worry is that those days are all on the, back in the early 80s and early 90s versus now. We're just not seeing that same expansion in the equities market. And the trend for us will be that 40 million will go to 45 million in 2021, and 52 million by 2026. So if you think about that, if, let's say my revenues are still growing and my costs are still growing but moderately, my pension cost just went up by over $12 million. I have to somehow find, or someone who's by over $12 million. I have to somehow find, or someone who's here in 2026, we'll have to somehow find $12 million more per year, even when you're looking at just our normal costs, our revenues, and our expenses are chasing each other right now.
Okay, can I just ask, make a point, just to edify what you're saying? So 2016, 15, 16, I mean, it's been pretty good, strong economy, and certainly in Orange County. And even in a good economy, our revenues increased 2.0, only 2.58%. Is that correct? Taking off your original slide on page two, our general fund revenues.
Just for the last year, yeah. Our six-year trend is 4.5%.
Well, okay.
But it's still not enough to keep up with this.
Yeah, all right. And so, just kind of as a trend point, then, the percentage increase on this 40 million going to 45, going to 52, what percent is that increasing every year?
You know that off the top of your head, Dan?
I don't know the payment, but we know, I don't know the specific payment, but we know the accrued liability is marching at a rate of about 7.3% a year.
So again, the general point is that our revenues are not
They're not keeping up with 7.3%.
Keeping up with the increasing liability?
No.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Kiff, would you also explain why we have an unfunded pension liability?
Sure, there are a handful of reasons. I think the most significant one, I would say, is back in, shortly after 2000, when the state allowed different retirement options that this city and many cities took part in that, in choosing those retirement options. And that primarily is what's called 3% at 50. And I'm not intending to pick on safety people because they're wonderful, hardworking people. But basically, that was, and if you had worked for Newport Beach for 29 years, and you're, and all of a sudden, 3% at 50 was adopted, you could retire the next year at age 50 with up to 90% of your salary. And all of those 29 years before the last year, nobody set aside any money for that. So that seems to be the problem, certainly that we have, and that many, many cities, many counties, many school districts and special districts all see, is there was an assumption made that has not come to pass. And one of those assumptions is that these retirees would be, would not, have a risky job and would not be living very long. Well, the mortality studies are showing that most of our retirees are living a long life, which is terrific. But it wasn't built into these projections. So those kinds of decisions are the most consequential to the unfunded liability.
So, yes, they retroactively granted them additional pension benefits without collecting or putting money in reserve before that. But the reason it went up from 250 million last year to 300 million this year is because CalPERS estimated that they were going to have 7.5 million, or 7.5% return, and they only made 2 and change. And so, we as a city are having to have to make up that difference, correct?
Dan may nuance that slightly because he knows it better than I do.
Sure. Our last known unfunded liability was 250 million, and I'm projecting forward based on what you're referring to. In 2014, they earned only 2.4% versus the 7.5%, which means they were 5.1% short of their target. And then, for fiscal year, and for the current fiscal year, they're hovering about zero. So if they finish at zero, those two years, looking forward, might increase our unfunded liability up to 300 million. And again, that's my projection and not based on a value.
Right. And that's based on the fact that there's a guaranteed payment that's made to the retirees. It's not like a 401K like most people in the private sector. And regardless as to what happens in the market, we, the taxpayers, bear all of the risk of what happens in the market, and we have to make up the difference. And in this case, it's 5% or 7.5% difference. And you're estimating at the end of 2016 that that number's an extra 50 mil.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, and I give this information to you not because I want folks to panic. I don't. And I don't think there is reason to panic. But what I do think is that we should be aggressively reviewing this with the Finance Committee, and then with your colleagues in the state legislature and at the PERS Board, to say that if Newport Beach is having these kinds of issues, and we're a wealthy city with a strong tax base and a great economy right now, what are other cities facing? And I think it's something that's important to talk about. A number of people do talk about it. Joe Nation does, was in the Register over the weekend. These are things that will impact every city's expenditures in a significant way in the future, meaning less roads paved, less buildings replaced, less parks maintained. And I think we all want to live in a California that reflects today's quality of life. And I worry that unless something significant changes statewide, that will not be our California in five years or 10 years.
Mr. Kiff?
Madam Mayor? Mr. Vermoldun, Mayor Porchemaldun had wanted to speak. Go ahead.
Are you able to speculate, Dan, as to why the performance is so poor? Is that being seen as a general trend, or is this PERS making poor investment decisions, in your opinion?
In my opinion, it is, you know, they invest for the long term, and they will have good years, and they have bad. You know, going back to 14, they had an 18.4% return. But the last two years certainly have been disappointing.
Do you think it's, and we're reading about investment opportunities that they will not partake in anymore because it's not politically correct, or, for example, oil or other industries? Is it your opinion that that's not something we should be concerned about, or is that something we think limits their ability to continue having positive years like you referenced?
Uh...
If it's outside your expertise, I understand. I mean, these are serious questions.
You would find folks on the PERS Board that would have different perspectives than that. Some would say, no, the investment strategy is perfect. Others would say, no, the investment strategy is far too optimistic, given where the market is headed in the next five to 10 years. But I don't know that anyone would call out specific, that kind of political correctness, investing is compromising either way. They pretty much just follow the Dow.
Okay, that was my question, basically. So, as Councilman Curry said, which I tend to believe, they have some of the best and brightest people making these investments. So it's not the vehicle, per se, or it's not them. It's generally the market.
That's the way I see it, yeah.
That's the way you see it too, Dan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Petros?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Dave, I think you bring up a very good point in suggesting that we look at the trend and the growth here. And it is alarming, and you've got my attention. We're faced with looking at one static issue, and that's our budget for the upcoming year. This is something that is also, that's a trend that we should be concerned about. And I, you know, you hit the nail right on the head. We're a wealthy community that can address this in the short term. And I wonder what other cities in Orange County who are smaller, as old, who don't have the means that we do, what they're doing, what other cities in the state of California are doing, what other agencies throughout the state are up to. I would like to suggest that we focus on the budget at hand for this year, but then also, as a city council, take some action as a result of this information to empower you, or us, or whomever, to approach other agencies, the state, whomever it may be, our legislative delegation in California, to take this matter seriously and to somehow address the issues that the PERS Board is not. So, you know, there is a budget before us. That budget is balanced. It does keep us solvent. It does take into consideration the matters for this year. But I'm alarmed at what is the trend in the future. And I think that we would be remiss if we did not also take additional action to take a more regional or statewide view of this, and really get out in front of it now.
And also, Mr. Kiff, just to follow on Mr. Petros, and I completely concur. And I think that's what you were presenting as well, is laying this out, as a responsible city manager would do, that going forward in a three, five, or 10-year horizon, we have some serious issues that we're not going to resolve today, but that require us to look at perhaps in a series of public discussions, study sessions, and other kind of fact-finding to determine how Newport Beach can perhaps, if, lead the way, identify some way forward. But the current trend line is unsustainable, and we could say that till the cows come home, but we still have to pay that bill. Could you just remind me, how many employees, retired employees do we have who are part of our pension system that we're paying?
Thanks to some quick digging, we have about 989 employees or beneficiaries. Sometimes the employee can choose to designate a beneficiary, so they're related to our PERS, that are PERS retirees. So that, just to put that as an example, that's 260 more employees than we have. So in other words, our retirees are in a greater number than our current staff.
I see. Is, any more comments up here? Do we want to ask the Finance Committee members in attendance if you'd like to make a comment or speak?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, Mr. Petros?
If, thank you for acknowledging them. And I would just say that, as you're designated to chair the Finance Committee now, I have been honored and humbled to lead a group of my colleagues and representatives of the public, Mr. John Warner, Will O'Neill, and Larry Tucker. Mr. Kiff pointed out that this group has been meeting frequently. And I would just like to make sure that the public understands, this group has met more than I'm aware of any finance committee over matters of the budget in greater detail and a finer-tooth comb, in my knowledge. So please be, just be satisfied that there are very wise eyes and good hands looking at this budget. I would appreciate to hear from any one of the three of you, your thoughts or questions as it relates to the budget.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Will O'Neill. And, Mr. Petros, thanks so much. You're right, we've had a substantial amount of time looking at this budget. We've been spending the last year going through and doing deep dives into quite a few departments. And many, I see many of the members who are department heads here who have come in and run the gauntlet through the Finance Committee, and to them, I say thank you very much for your time. I also wanted to say thank you very much to our Finance Director, Dan. Susan, thanks so much for all your work going into this. This is not an easy job by any stretch of the imagination. I don't believe that we have too many comments or questions at this time, thanks in large part to the amount of time that we've spent on the budget. And I believe that if I can speak for the other members of the Finance Committee, we will be happy to discuss this at our meeting on Thursday, when I believe we'll be making a recommendation to the full city council. So at that time, I'll reserve my comments. Until then, thank you very much.
You want to?
And I would, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. I would just underscore to the public that there is a Finance Committee meeting to be held this Thursday at 4:00 in the Newport Coast Room in City Hall. This will be the meeting where the Finance Committee does make its final recommendation to the council. So if you do have an interest in this matter and the budget, or would just like to have your voice heard, please, you are encouraged to attend, and we would love to hear from you.
Madam Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Larry Tucker, and I too am one of the Finance Committee members. Getting to the point of understanding the current budget, while it took a long time, and the city has thousands of charts of accounts, items, line items, getting to the point of understanding the unfunded liabilities was completely different. And, I mean, the word that I used when I first started seeing these numbers was shocking. I mean, it really is remarkable, and it's very easy to figure out what to do year to year with respect to the budget. What we do with the long-term circumstances that we find ourselves in is going to be played out on a much bigger stage. I mean, these numbers for a city like ours at $300 million, it's just, it's inconceivable. But yet, other cities aren't going to be in the position that we're in, where we can probably soldier on. So I expect that something is going to have to give at some point, and we hope that our city council takes the lead in trying to raise the red flag. I know a lot of people have done that over the years, but I think it's got to be getting close to the point where if we have things like zero returns over the course of the year, all you have to do is multiply, and you see that the numbers are gigantic, and they just get bigger every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The city manager said he would go through his slides very quickly, and he did that. So I want to make my perennial comment about the opacity of the city's budget process and its budget, when one has the leisure to look at it in more detail. My example this year is what the dollar amount is that you will be budgeting for airport consulting services. Much as we honor John Wayne, we have a city council policy, as you know, that declares the John Wayne Airport to be the greatest threat to the quality of life in Newport Beach. And it was therefore gratifying to see that in the city manager's proposed budget, which is available in the libraries, under the city council budget, there is a page entitled "City Council Airport Issues" that allocates $241,000 in the coming year for outside professional consulting services with respect to airport issues. That was admirably transparent and prudent as well, because you may remember, it was a few meetings back, you committed 70,000 of that to the airport consulting efforts of our former mayor, Tom Edwards. But in item 12 on tonight's agenda, we will learn that the city manager in the checklist is going to be asking you to entirely eliminate that page. So if the airport allocation is $241,000 less than originally proposed, that begs the question of where in the budget Mr. Edwards' salary now is, and how many additional dollars are reserved to handle those high-priority airport consulting issues. The answer, I gather, is that the airport dollar allocations are in the budget, and you will be approving them. But kind of like those 79 units in the general plan in Newport Center, you and the public just can't see where they are. I understand that they are hiding at the moment in the $240,000 line item for city council professional services, or in the similar line item of $300,000 for the city manager, or possibly in both. But those totals must include an array of other professional services that the staff anticipates will need during the coming year. So I'm asking, and I hope that you will ask, exactly how much of that are you approving for airport expenses in the coming year? And I would point out that this is not a completely pointless question, because you may recall approving a while back increases in aircraft noise limits resulting from the installation of new noise-monitoring microphones. And it turns out that when the first results were released by the airport, they strongly suggest that the airport is not properly reporting the airport noise levels. So this city council, because compliance with our settlement agreement is very important, might be wanting some money in the budget to audit or check that the airport has ever been properly reporting the noise levels. Thank you.
Any other public comments, please? Seeing none? Any comments more for the council? Mr. Petros? So, staff, you're looking for some direction?
Let me help wrap up a little bit. One of the, in the end of the presentation here, copies available to the public, this is a summary of what we call the Budget Checklist. And these are indeed things that, when we print the proposed budget, this is roughly sometime in April, and then we still work on the budget with the Finance Committee and even just as our own staff. And then we propose amendments to that. And that's, for those of you experienced this one year last year, it's called the checklist. There are literally amendments to the proposed budget. And some things go up, and some things come down. Some are mistakes that I made, and I didn't, wasn't clear with our staff that I wanted that in or wanted that out. I didn't, wasn't clear with our staff that I wanted that in or wanted that out. One of those is the airport issue. I did send an email back to Jim, talking to him about where those funds come from. You do have over $500,000 available to you for airport things, and we never know what those are gonna be, so I don't program a specific amount. We had programmed a specific amount in the past, because we knew we were gonna have to pay for part of the EIR for the settlement agreement, and then negotiations continuing from there, there forward. So I was comfortable in removing that amount, because most of those funds, we don't spend, we just return to fund balance. Anyway, that's the checklist, those are the slides that I'm scanning through in front of you. I always welcome your questions on that. But what we, and I'll finish with this slide, this is the proposed use of the surplus from, it's, it's generally our projections for the end of this year, and then what we know about the end of last year. And you see where we've roughly kept that split that you've in the past recommended between neighborhood enhancement and debt expenses or obligation expenses. So what we would ask you to do between now and your next meeting, which is June 14th, at that June 14th meeting, we're gonna ask you to approve the budget, and then approve the checklist, and approve the allocation of the surplus. So all of those things, any comments on those are helpful to the staff right now, especially that 3.5 million that I mentioned, whether it should go to wastewater or something else, because we, we do wanna frame something up for you so that you can approve it on the 14th. If you're not comfortable approving on the 14th, we do that on the 28th, but that's cutting it close per the charter. Again, kinda confusing process, I wish it was simpler, but it's the budget, the checklist, and the allocation of the surplus.
Mr. Petros?
Madam Mayor, I, thank you, Mr. Kiff. I would just make these observations that we have been, or we are working on and have been presented with a budget by the City Manager that reflects the analysis of his staff professionals, how to continue the operation of this fine city and achieve all of the goals and objectives set forth in our general plans and all of our master plans. This budget has been reviewed on numerous occasions, up to 12 separate meetings, and I don't know how many times others have gone to go speak with staff independently, to make sure that, one, we understand it, and, two, are satisfied that it does, in fact, reflect the wishes, wills of the community, and does continue to perpetuate Newport Beach as the wonderful city that it is. I would just ask that my colleagues who have representatives on the Finance Committee to please tap into the resources that you chose to, to appoint to the committee. These folks have spent a lot of time with this budget. To the public, realize that this reflects what we want as our city. This is how we will manage our funds for the remainder of the year. And I think it's important to note that the, the budget is a flat budget. Outside of the MOUs and PERS, the actual operating budget has diminished slightly. So Mr. Kiff is attempting to run a very efficient program here of how to deliver the platinum-level services that the people of Newport Beach desire, and quite frankly, deserve. I think this budget is solid. I am, I, I believe that I have a good enough understanding of it to be able to support it, and I'm looking forward to our June 14th meeting.
Any other comments? From the Council?
Look at your screen.
Oh, it's not, doesn't show up on my screen.
It doesn't?
No. Oh, Mr. Selich.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anytime.
Checklist time is always fun time, right, Dave? So, every year, we have been funding the Balboa Island Historical Society out of the checklist, and then we got a request this year from the Newport Beach Historical Society, and I think you indicated in an email to me that you're planning on doing that out of some council grant program. And I'm just curious, given all the applications we had for stuff out of that last year, and with these grants, is there gonna be enough money to fund everybody, or how do you look, how do you see handling that? Because I'm sure these folks are gonna come to the Council at the budget hearing, wondering what's happening to their request.
Yeah, the, the council grant money is highly competitive. You, we have a certain amount that we set aside for things like the Boat Parade and the Film Festival, and, and then there's an amount that the rest of the folks kinda fight over. The Balboa Island Historical Society asked for 35,000, and then Newport asked for 10,000. In that specific allocation, I don't think there's even enough for those two, that, but you could always add more to a different category. You could also, as I noted to you, Mr. Selich, you could just throw it on the checklist and go around it. That's, that's what the checklist is there for. But I, I really, I'm just kinda wearing my green nerdy hat and just thinking, you know, if they really did this the right way, they'd put it through the competitive process. But I respect how we've done it in the past, too.
Are there any, there are no others? Let me ask you a couple of questions on that. Is there any way that we could combine those, that process at this time of the year, and the special event, normal permitting application process, or the special event?
This is different.
No, I know, but that comes later. These, these grants come later in the fall, and I just wonder, just for purposes of understanding?
It'd be nice to speed it up, and I think, Mayor Dixon, you, you asked for that last year, and that's been our goal, to try to get it a little closer to the budget adoption. One thing we could look at is if we did, if we did have more applicants in the pool, should the pool be expanded slightly? And I'd be willing to look at that between now and the 14th, and that might become a checklist item to expand the grant pool. We're already up in the range of, I think, 350,000, and again, most of that is the Boat Parade and Film Festival.
Hmm. Let me just make a comment on, I guess it's Slide 32, if that's correct, on, is that the Budget Checklist Amendments? Yes. Well, first of all, thank you for adding in the Balboa Village and McFadden Square additional steam cleaning, because that is probably number one on businessless, in those areas, to clean up the sidewalks. And, that's really important. The, the, where did I see? The Chalk, Chalk Art Festival, the Balboa Village, I see some folks here. I just wanna, even though it's not going to save our budget, and we're going, I'm going to request that we defer that funding for now and not in this current budget. I've talked with members of the Planning Arts Commission and the Planning Group for the Chalk Art Festival, and there's some further work that they want to do on the proposal, so it won't be part of this year's budget request. So we'll save $12,000. All right. Any other comments?
I've got a nice list. Dave, I like the idea that we're going through outsourcing, I'd like to encourage us to do more, and I would like to, especially in the Building Department, like to see not just an optional, but a mandatory. And as we've discussed before, I'd love to see that happen more on something that, like the TI Plan Check, something that's compartmentalized, where all of those can go outsourcing. Outsourcing is gonna be one of the few or only ways we have to reduce our PERS-able expenses, and that would be the goal of outsourcing it. I realize that that's fee-based, so we're probably not gonna see a lot of budget improvements from that. Assuming that we get consultants that we like, I think in the long run, we end up with better service at a better price, but we're gonna have to train and get that up to speed. So I'd like to at least get some sort of a pilot program going for something like that. I would love to see more ingenuity as far as how, you know, what other things we can do to reduce our PERS-able expenses. I would love to see us restructure some of our, you know, right now, each department kinda carries their own contingencies, and I would love to see that restructured in such a way that those, those contingencies are identified, so that we can track those through the year. I would love to see incentives, so that instead of, you know, we, we, people talk about zero-based budgeting, where you're gonna start with, here's our task, what do we need to get the job done, rather than, here's what we had last year, and we're gonna take that and add 2% or whatever, and that's our budget for this year. I would love to see some restructuring, so that you give incentive to people to come up with creative ways to do the same level of service, but to do it in a more efficient, effective way. You know, cash bonuses to managers or to employees that come up with those kinds of cost savings. Those are the types of things that innovativeness, I'd love to see happen. The fresh start, we're locked in with the fresh start, I'll call it Fresh Start 1. I have no problem with accelerated payments towards additional unfunded mandate, or additional unfunded pension liabilities. I have real heartburn over those going to CalPERS, so I wanna make sure that it's clear that the Finance Committee needs to review and come up with any kind of proposed fresh-start program, and that there's no agreements with, with CalPERS until the Finance Committee and the City Council review those situations. I also would like to, again, propose, I know we talked about it last year, and I did not get any traction with it, but this time, we got a sewer fee increase that was proposed and not passed. And I would like to propose that we change our business license tax to a flat fee of $50. In conjunction with that, I would propose instituting the sewer fee increase, so that it would be a net-neutral revenue-wise. And that's all my comments, thanks.
Any other comments? Mr. Curry?
So Dave, if we were to reduce the business license, or Dan, reduce the business license tax that goes into the general fund, the $50, is it my understanding that that would be about a $5 million hit to the budget?
I believe it is about a $4 million.
$4 million hit to the budget. And that's general fund money that funds the entire budget, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then if we adjusted the sewer fee by 3.5 million, those are sewer fees paid by users, and what we would be, we've already messed that up, because we now run the sewer fee at a structural deficit, because we failed to pass the increase. And we're taking money from people in Newport Coast, and Mr. Mosher's neighborhood, and Santa Ana Heights, who don't receive city sewer services. And we're gonna consider using general fund money that those people paid to subsidize the sewer system for those people who are in the sewer system. Is that basically the proposal that's gonna be considered?
That is correct.
Yeah, so what we're doing here is we're going back and forth with a variety of financially irresponsible proposals. A $4 million hit to the budget is roughly equivalent to the cost of 20 police officers. So if we do these little things that get thrown out here as bon mots, that are utterly financially irresponsible, that are utterly damaging to the budget, all we're doing is exacerbating the problems in the city. It is financial malpractice to do that. And we end up with the general fund subsidizing certain residents, the general fund taking a big hit, and we have just an extremely convoluted and, and damaged balance sheet. So I would not wanna do any of those things. And as it relates to the fresh start, the fact of the matter is, if we don't put the money over time with accelerated payments in CalPERS, we get zero credit. Our liability is reduced by zero. Is that correct, Mr. Meneshewitz?
That is correct.
That's right. So doing, you know, taking it and, you know, trying to speculate in the stock market on our own, or putting it into a box and doing voodoo chants around it, is not gonna help us. The only way we're able to reduce this liability is by paying it down, in a, in the best way that we can. Now, we could hope for state law changes, and we need them. We need, for example, maybe the tax pension benefits over a given amount, put that money back into the, to the fund, or to slow down the growth in cost-of-living funds. But even in Illinois, where they adopted some very modest reforms, those were struck down by the court because of the impairment of contracts clause. So we've got limited opportunity here and limited things to do, but the one thing we can't do is make irresponsible choices based on politics that are not financially sound.
Mr. Duffield?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, so if...
Please, 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 please. No clapping?
This won't save our city, but it's a, it's a harbor thing, so that's what I think about. And right off the bat, it's become apparent that I think we should, it's time to discuss a different model for administering the mooring fields in the harbor. And previously, we struggled with how to provide service 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but today, things have changed, and I believe we can take advantage of communicating to visiting boaters through an app that could inform the visiting yachtsmen regarding available moorings. And we also now have a marina park that can offer solutions to the monitoring of the mooring fields that we did not previously have. I'd like to see us direct the Harbor Commission to study this, and it's just not savings alone, but a more efficient system. And then I'd also like to discuss briefly this idea that I've had, this is kinda how I would run my business and, and what I do. But I know that the department heads within the city are doing what they can to always be thrifty. I, I know them now after a year and a half, I've never seen anybody throwing money away and wasting it. Having said that, I do want to suggest that within the city-serving department heads, I would ask them that, to suggest ways to save on expenses for the next year with a goal between 1% and 3%. Instead of projecting an increase, I am not asking to reduce the services, rather, see if you can do it for slightly less. That's all I'm saying, I'm not suggesting lower the quality of service. But to incentivize this creative reduction thinking, I think I'd like to see us offer an incentive to those who actually do reduce their costs over the course of a year. I think it's more than fair to them and to the taxpayers. You know, we hire the best experienced staffers, they're, they're really good, and they're educated, and they know their stuff. And 1% to 3% savings seems, seems well within reach to me. I'd like to also briefly say that I think our schedule for replacing our public docks needs to be looked at, a little, extend that out significantly, I don't believe they need to be replaced so often in, in the future. And I'd like to sell the hotel. I would like to not have a lease on that, on the old City Hall site. I would encourage us to just look into turning that into some cash to pay, to use in different ways. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter?
Just a quick response. Dan, we talked about a $4.1 million income off the business license tax, but that's not the net number, it costs us money to collect it. Plus, I am proposing keeping a $50 fee to cover the cost of maintaining that database and collect, so that we know who's doing business in the city, but to reduce it to a, a flat $50 fee. So I thought that the numbers we talked about before, that that would make it probably a net $3 million cut, not a net $4.1 million cut. Am I in the ballpark?
I don't remember discussing those cuts.
It's a matter of what would the income be at 50 bucks flat versus what it currently is?
We could project all that.
We can come back to it with that.
Okay, so that's one thing. And, you know, Mr. Curry likes to sit there and, and talk about the sewer fee, and mixing it with the general fund, and who gets credit for what, and, you know, somebody's gonna pay here and not get credit here. You know, the reality is, is that the previous council, I'll call it the Curry Council, neglected to raise the fee when it was supposed to have been raised in the 2010 to 2014 timeframe, and now it's come to the point where it's critical, and we, we don't have reserves for it. I am okay with taking that 3.5 million dollars from the general fund and putting it right into the sewer fee. I was offering an alternative that says, "I will support the fee increase that Mr. Curry wants in the sewer fund," and I would look at it in exchange for cutting the taxes in the general fund. They're two separate issues. I realize that the same people don't benefit versus pay on the two scenarios, but in order to win my vote in a fee increase, I would like to see a tax decrease that's a commensurate amount. So that's just a different way of phrasing it. So we're not being irresponsible, we're still paying our bills. What was irresponsible was that this council decided not to put the money into paying for sewer improvements, as they should have been, in putting reserves in. Instead, we have, you know, $143 million Taj Mahal.
Instead, we have, you know, $143 million Taj Mahal, complete with our concrete bunnies. So it's a matter of priorities and where you spend your money, and that's more the point. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor Protam Maldon.
Thank you. My look at a lot of the items that we talk about, I don't think it's the small dollar amounts like the Baobab Island Museum. I don't think it's really how much we give, you know, Arts Commission to have a reception, although I think it's, I do want to look at the Arts Commission budget more. I think we ought to do Y-sanes like what Duffy said, Councilman Duffield said, we think we should sell the hotel property. I believe that will happen. I will do whatever I can in the coming years to make sure that property gets sold at a good value. I believe we'll have the votes in the future. We should keep our services. The residents really enjoy the services. I feel it's the projects. It's the projects that come up that are a couple hundred thousand dollars that sometimes council members want for their district or because they're getting five to 10 people asking them for it that's causing everyone in the city to start to worry about their bare necessities, the things that they rely on day-to-day. So I hope the future of this city, and this is what I continue to try to do, is keep our services, put projects on hold, and to deal with things that are very serious. I believe the unfunded pension liability is a very serious issue. And I also agree with Councilman Duffield's proposal to make the departments more efficient. I know that you work very hard to do that. But I think that's the way this city needs to go because we hear the services, and I know how many people want the services, but I think the real problem is, are sort of the pet projects, I'll call them, which hope doesn't make any of my colleagues upset, but they're the almost million-dollar budget items that are constantly coming up. In an ideal world, we'd quickly apply those unfunded pension liability and move on.
Any other comments? So Mr. Kiff, how would you, what kind of direction would you like from the council?
What I'd probably do is I'll bring you back the budget and the checklist with the chalk art changed, and maybe another little, it's probably not little, decision matrix that reflects what you've raised, so that if a majority of council members support, either it's a proposed action or something to study something or an approach, I'd really like all seven of you to decide if a majority of you think that's appropriate. So I might bring that back too on the 14th because they all do relate to the budget.
Well, let me just ask you a quick question there. Are you looking for approval of the budget on June 14?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so at that next meeting, what you just described, we will go through the pluses and the minuses and net out where we need to end up.
Yes, and that's really the checklist. But if you find things in there that you want placed on the checklist, you should let me know separately, and I will put them on there with the proper Brown Act notice so that it's appropriately considered at least five days before your meeting. And then in addition, you, a number of you have talked about more strategies and approaches, and ideally, I would hear from at least four of you that that's a strategy you'd like us to approach within the coming budget year, and I'm happy to follow that. And I'd probably ask you to weigh in on each of those, if that makes sense to you.
All right, so that will be an important, obviously every meeting is important, and that will be an important and probably a long meeting to make those final decisions. Were you expecting any specific recommendations today?
No, I think I heard enough. I'm still unclear as to whether or not the 3.5 million is going to go one way or another, but we'll learn that on the 14th.
Well, that's what I was going to, my next point. Do you want more clarity on that from us tonight?
It would be helpful, although it is 5:15, and you've got two other important budget items on there. Again, I, oh, I'll stop there.
Mr. Sullivan, do you want to add a comment?
Yeah, I'd prefer on things like that $3.5 million that we bring it back during the budget and we have a process where we can vote it up or down what we're going to do with it, rather than just registering opinions here tonight.
And that's certainly appropriate. So we could tee that up.
I agree with that.
Decide at the actual meeting.
Yeah, because I think, just to...
We can move pretty quickly. I mean, we can, we're...
Well, that was the purpose of today, to kind of go through all of these issues. We're all very fresh and current on the issues. Some of the members have identified specific items that you might consider, how that can be incorporated, and bring that back. Did anyone else want to, Mr. Piattar, did you have another comment?
Yes, thanks. I also am supportive, just wanted to pipe in Duffy's idea of cutting 1% to 3% in each department. And lest anybody be misled, I'm not offering to trade my votes with Mr. Curry on the tax item.
All right, okay. All right. Comment. Mr. Souch.
I'm just going to eat my own words. I'm not giving my opinion on the sewer issue. When you come back on the 14th, I'd like you to bring back some alternative for us to consider that equalizes the situation with the non-sewer property owners in the city, Irvine Ranch Water District and Mesa, on something that's a fair system that we're just not penalizing those folks out of their share of our general fund.
Okay, I don't know what it is right now. I've got three weeks.
The genie.
If it didn't help, call me.
That's going to be an amazing mathematical equation because you're going to take water use that visitors use, and you're going to find a way to equate that based on some imaginary number of how many people live and pay tax in a certain region. I mean, that's a ridiculous request. But what I don't want to see is 3.5 million used again for another pet project. But that's what's going to happen. It's going to get earmarked again for another pet project. So my request is we get back to the basics and it goes towards a sewer fund.
And I will say, just to clarify on that, just to put this thought out there, if, because we are now putting our sewer infrastructure into a precarious state, there's high risk here, that if there is a sewage line break, it doesn't travel but a few far, but a few feet to go into our harbor, and that repair fix would cost every resident, the general fund, to fix that sewer line break. So on the repair side of a crisis like that, everyone would be paying for that. So at the end of the day, it equalizes. Having said that, there are no more speakers waiting to speak, so Mr. Kiff, you have your marching orders. And so our next and final discussion on the budget incorporating these thoughts today will be on June 14th. So with that being said, we'll move on to the next item, which is public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, because this is still a mini joint meeting of the finance and the city council. Any comments on agenda or non-agenda items of this unique group? Seeing none? Oh, okay, please.
Hey, you're a city council. My name is Carmen Rason, and I would like to understand from the budget, working for a private company doing projects, petrochemical plants, our contingency is 3%. I would like to understand why it's 25%, and in the past years, what has happened to the contingency. Also, I pay for a business license, and I don't need it to be reduced to $50. Happy to pay what I pay, so.
Could you just spell your name, just to be sure we get...
Rason, R-A-W-S-O-N, Carmen, C-A-R-M-E-N.
All right, thank you very much.
If it's okay with Carmen, I'll probably put her in touch with Mark or Dave because our contingencies are in our public works projects, and they can explain why we have what level of contingency. It does vary. Can I be anything from 5% to something significantly larger?
Okay. Any other public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Seeing none? All right, now we're going to adjourn, excuse me, adjourn that meeting, and now we're going to call a study session of the Newport Beach City Council, May 24, 2016. Call it to order. First item, current business, a clarification of any items on the consent calendar. Are there any clarification of items on the council consent calendar? Seeing none? Move on to item number two, recognition, recognizing poppy month. And I'm supposed to have a proclamation. Do I have a proclamation? Oh, maybe I do right here. All right. Ms. Schubert, is she in the audience? Oh, here she comes. Hello. Let me read the proclamation and welcome you all here. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas the nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice and lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. And now I therefore, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as poppy month, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy. So thank you. And would you like to make a comment before I come?
Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Taylor Howard. I am Miss Poppy at the American Legion, Post 291 of Newport Beach. And to continue on what you said, I would like to recite Colonel John McCray's poem, "In Flannard's Fields." And while I recite this, I would like my sister, Junior Miss Poppy, to hand out a few things.
All right, please proceed. Thank you.
"In Flannard's Fields." "In Flannard's Fields, the poppies blow Between the crosses, row on row, that mark our place, and in the sky, the larks still bravely singing fly, scarce heard amid the guns below. We are the dead, short days ago, We lived, felt dawn, saw sunset glow, loved and were loved, and now we lie in Flannard's Fields. Take up our quarrel with the foe, To you from failing hands we throw the torch, Be yours to hold it high, And if ye break faith with us who die, We shall not sleep, though poppies grow in Flannard's Fields." Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make any other comments?
I thank you for inviting us here for that. My name is Carolyn Whitlinger. This is Debbie Schubert, and together we're the co-chairs for the poppy fundraisers for the American Legion Auxiliary, Post 291, and we just wanted to say thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. And I'll come down and we'll have a presentation and a photo. And we have some guests here to make a presentation. Do we have staff to make a presentation? No? Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Dr. Eric Handler. I'm the Public Health Officer for Orange County. I've been in this position for almost 10 years, and most people don't know what the Public Health Officer does. So to summarize it, I sign all birth certificates of every baby born in Orange County. So if you have any babies that you know of that were born, take a look at the birth certificate. That usually gets people's attention. All right, so I'd like to share with you our campaign that I started in 2012 called Waste Not OC, and it's to end hunger in Orange County. What I'd like to do first, if I may, is to share a video. So let's go to the next slide. We have internet access that we can go to our website? I gather the video isn't working.
Had it worked once before? Did we run through this before? No?
So Brooke, if you can pull up our website? Give us one moment, we'll... I was told I had two hours to present, Mayor.
You've got plenty of time.
It's not showing on the screen? Do we know why? Okay. So why they're doing this, let me just explain to you that in Orange County, one out of five children don't know where their next meal is going to come from, and we have 350,000 people facing food insecurity in Orange County. Not only that, we rank one of the top 10 counties in the nation with the highest number of people not knowing where their next meal is going to come from. Very few people know that. And we decided that in conversation, that if we captured all the food that was thrown away and redirected it to people in need, we could end hunger. And that's the principle of our coalition. So that's the backdrop. How are we doing? There we go. Can you do it from the beginning? That's it. We need sound now. Is the, I think I'm mute? Okay, so we're going to nix that. All right.
Cancel the video?
Yeah, I guess with no sound, it's not going to be very useful. So Brooke, can you show the three-legged stool, please? All right. So what makes our campaign so unique that it's received national recognition is because we have a three-pronged approach to ending hunger in Orange County. The first part is to recover food from restaurants and grocery stores. The restaurants and grocery stores don't know that under the Good Samaritan Act, they are not held liable if the food is prepared correctly. So what we make, what we are doing is we're using the environmental health specialists who do restaurant inspections to hand out informational sheets to the restaurants and grocery store, saying, "Under the Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Act, you're not liable." And if you want to donate food, Waste Not OC will help you do that. It's that simple. But again, what's unique is it's already using a workforce, the environmental health specialists, who are usually feared by restaurants and grocery stores and now are advocating and educating. It's unique. The second part is, I'm a pediatrician, and in my 40 years of practice, I have never asked a family if they were facing food insecurity. There are 16 million children in the United States that are suffering from food insecurity. You can't learn, you're not healthy, there's all kinds of consequences. So we decided that there are two questions you can ask to identify families in need. Chalk is screened, Children's Hospital of Orange County has screened 31,000 families, asking them about food insecurity. Family resource centers are now starting to screen. And what's so magical and unique about this program, I took a tour of the Chao Cancer Center at UCI with the head medical director, and at the end, I said, "Do you think cancer patients suffer from food insecurity?" He goes, "Absolutely." And they are now starting to ask the question of everybody who enrolls in the cancer center. We also know that schools, university people also have food insecurity. So that's the second part. Part of the reason why I never asked the question, if somebody said yes, what am I going to do? Give them money out of my pocket? Say, "Go to the nearest restaurant?" So a student of mine developed a Google map of all 240 pantries. You click on a pin... You click on a pin. It tells you the phone number, location, hours of operation. You put in your zip code, and it'll tell you where the nearest pantry is. That is remarkably a simple tool. But what's so interesting is the National Associations of Cities and County Officials has recognized this program in Orange County, Waste Not OC, as a model practice program. And we are getting an award in July for this. If you go to our website, wastenotoc.org, you'll see a whole host of information. But I'm just one person. And I said, "We can end hunger." And since we started this early last year, we've collected 245 tons of food that normally would have been thrown away. The other incentive, other than to end hunger, is there is a new bill called AB 1826 that says you have to decrease your landfill contribution by 50% in 20... By 2020. So, there's an incentive for restaurants and grocery stores to do food donations to decrease the landfill. And what we want to do is get the word out, saying, "You can do this. We can help you, and it's good for the community, and it's good for the county." And that's our program.
All right. Did you have any other presentation? Are you here with other folks who wanted to speak?
What I'd like to do is I'd like to call Jeff Snowup. And he's the expert on AB 1826 and one of our biggest advocates. So, I'll let him introduce himself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Dixon and esteemed council members of the City of Newport Beach. Thank you, Dr. Handler. My name's Jeff Snow. I'm with Rainbow Environmental Services, a Republic Services Company, and a steering committee member for Waste Not OC. AB 1826, first-tier implementation began April 1 of this year. It will phase in over the next three years. And it is landmark legislation for the solid waste industry. We must get food waste and other organics out of the landfills. In landfills, they decompose and create greenhouse gas emissions, specifically methane. So, both the Air Board and Cal Recycle have given us and your local municipality mandates to remove food waste from landfills. The wonderful, magical intersection of removing food waste from landfills with ending hunger is what's brought together the partnership of the solid waste industry and the county health... Orange County Health, Dr. Handler and Waste Not OC. So, in getting food out of landfills, we can recycle it through anaerobic digestion or composting or other technologies, or we can feed hungry people as a first resort. We believe that Waste Not OC's coalition with the Second Harvest Food Bank, Food Finders, and others, ending hunger will help keep the highest and best use for those foods. No farmer uses 90% of our fresh water, lots of fertile land, lots of labor and lots of love to grow food and look at it and say, "Great, someday a hauler gets to pick this up and recycle it into compost." Recycling is not always the right thing to do. It's the wrong thing to do when it comes to food. We believe that surplus food should be redistributed to end hunger. We have an ask of Mayor Dixon, not company-specific to my company, not even specific to AB 1826, but to simply support this program of donating surplus food to end hunger by giving us a letter on City of Newport Beach Letterhead, supporting this notion that we can have the city mail to the commercial food establishments and the various haulers that service the City of Newport Beach can provide to the customers is a choice. What does it do for your businesses? Recycling food waste costs three times as much as taking trash. So, donating food, instead of having a very large bill to pay for recycling it, they'll actually have a negative cost. 60% of the cost of the food can be written off as a charitable donation. So, in closing, we believe that we can absolutely end hunger. We can save the planet, and we can save Newport Beach businesses money through a robust food recovery program as being part of your city's AB 1826 program and ask that the council endorse the mayor in providing a letter of support to Waste Not OC. Thank you.
Now, we might have some questions. If I may just ask a question. So, the AB 1826, Newport Beach restaurants are going to be required, when to start diverting their food waste?
Madam Mayor, the large generators are already required. That began April 1 of this year, eight cubic yards a week or more. Very few, hopefully, that are throwing away that much food. But certainly, all of your supermarkets are already required to comply with this law. January 1 of 2017, that threshold gets cut in half. It will be four cubic yards a week or more. And virtually every restaurant in Newport Beach will come under that tier 2 and be required to comply by either recycling the food waste or donating it or a combination. We simply think that the first approach should be the highest and best juice, donating it to feed hungry people, then recycle what's left over.
Let's ask the council, any questions up here? In terms of whether we should support it? In terms of writing a letter, as Mr. Snow recommends? Any questions? Mr. Kiff? Ms. Mayor Protam?
Snow, how are you?
Mayor Protam, nice to see you.
What, again, does it require from us, other than a letter? That's it?
That's all?
You don't need an ordinance or...
The city, upon Mr. Kiff's or Mr. Pizzani's recommendation, may want to support AB 1826 with a local ordinance. That's a city matter. But all that we're really asking for tonight is that the city show its support of this program and this approach by providing a letter from Mayor Dixon.
Because I wouldn't support an ordinance yet. I don't know nearly enough, but a letter, I'm sure most of us would. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Council members, we have a study session planned for you in June on this item. This is kind of a teaser of it.
Oh, all right.
Waste Not OC, but the Assembly Bill requirements.
Okay. But if it is the will of the council, could we send this letter?
Sure.
All right, and then we'll continue to discuss this. We'll see you probably again to make those same comments. So, thank you, Dr. Handler and Mr. Snow. Appreciate it. Do we have public comments on this? Is there... Do we have public comments? No. Sorry, Mr. Mosher. Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it, and good luck to you. All right. Item number four, the Pacific Coast Highway Corridor Study, presentation by the Orange County Transportation Authority, OCTA.
Yes, Mayor and Council, if I could introduce Joe Alcock. He's with the Orange County Transportation Authority. He's going to talk tonight about a study that back in 2011, 2012, the Orange County coastal cities got together and asked them to take the lead effort on. As we realized, many of the freeways in Orange County and a lot of the major arteries, Imperial Highway, Beach Boulevard, Cattella and all, had been addressed, but Coast Highway had never been looked at. And it created a lot of problems for the various cities. It's a multi-jurisdictional problem, and it has a lot of a unique character. So, the OCTA stepped up and performed this study on our behalf. And I'd like to introduce Joe Alcock to go through that.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As I mentioned, Joe Alcock, OCTA Section Manager for corridor studies. And we just wanted to walk you through the study. Real quick, I had a little bit of background, but given the time, I'll just sort of blast through this. PCH corridor is 37 miles long. Orange County's... In Orange County, there's about six coastal cities. We worked with all of them. Two-thirds of PCH is owned and operated by the state. Caltrans, one-third, like here, parts here in Newport Beach are locally controlled. It is also Orange County's most multimodal corridor with significant numbers of bikes, pedestrians, cars, and transit use, all interacting with an extremely tight right-of-way. Because of these challenges, as Dave mentioned, OCTA, in partnership with the six corridor cities, as well as our funding partner, Caltrans, started this study in 2014. We're now nearing completion. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dave Mark McQuigg and Tony Bryant for being our... Your city's representatives on our study team. And essentially, the goal of the study was to identify a broad range of long-term, so 2035 and beyond, multimodal strategies, both on a corridor-wide and a city-by-city basis. And our first step in doing this was to identify the corridor's needs or problems. So, on the left-hand side, the graphic here, we show some examples of the corridor-wide needs within PCH. So, there's conflicts amongst modes. So, bicyclists riding between parked cars and moving vehicles, traffic congestion, which speaks for itself, constrained right-of-way, which limits the type of improvements we can reasonably recommend, more consistent aesthetic treatments, such as better signage and landscaping to make PCH more of a destination corridor. And then the corridor is subject to frequent closure, whether it's from weather or special events, like the Surfing Open over in Huntington. And then the corridor has limited parallel routes as well. From here, we went on to the project's purpose, or these are the specific improvement objectives for the corridor. And these are on the right-hand side of the slide. And specifically, they're looking at recommending improvements for improving safety and mobility for all modes, improving traffic flow, maintaining operations during these closures, which I referenced, and then encouraging greater use of intelligent transportation systems to better help with routing and congestion through the corridor during peak activity periods. And then for Newport Beach specifically, some of the issues that we focused on as key improvement areas for the city were looking at spot congestion improvements and then greater safety and continuity of bike and pedestrian facilities throughout the city. On here, we have a slide, it's pretty complex. It's just a summary of the process we went through. First, we developed five improvement strategies. We looked at... Started out with everything, anything as simple as bike lane, restriping lanes, so we can incorporate bikes, all the way through significant capital investments, such as constructing pedestrian grade separations. We screened all these alternatives. We looked at the physical, financial feasibility of them. If an improvement didn't pass this assessment, we didn't recommend it for further consideration. The remaining improvement options that we did have, we went through a second round of screening. In this case, we looked at trade-offs between cost and benefit and enhancing the corridor experience for all users, so bikes, transit, cars, et cetera. So, the remaining improvement options were then packaged into a reduced set of three recommended alternatives, which are sort of highlighted on the slide here. The first one is the Transportation System Management or Transportation Demand Management Alternative. Refer to this as the TSM-TDM alternative. And this looked at relatively minor and less complicated improvements. Then sort of the mid-level alternative looked at is the low-capital alternative. And this looked at low-to-mid-level improvement recommendations. And then finally, we had a high-capital alternative, which included larger, more complex recommendations. So, as I mentioned, the study looked at improvements both on a corridor-wide basis and a city-by-city basis. On this slide, we have an example of a corridor-wide need, which is traffic congestion and heavy pedestrian volumes adding to delay for all the corridor users. So, a lot of interaction between pedestrians and cars causes some level of congestion. So, the study took that problem, and then it, through its three alternatives it recommended, there's improvement recommendations for each alternative. So, for the TSM or TDM alternative, the low... The easy-to-implement alternative, we looked at a traffic management program. For the low-capital, which is sort of the next level of complexity, we looked at a signal synchronization program. And then the last one, the higher-capital alternative, looked at transit hubs with potential signal priority for buses. And on this slide, we have an example here for Newport Beach. The recommended improvement here is looking at the Mariners Mile area. And on the left-hand side, we have the specific improvement need, which is, in this case, bicyclists and pedestrians having to navigate the corridor between parked cars and moving vehicles. And then on the right side, we have the improvement recommendations. So, for the TSM-TDM alternative, it would recommend pedestrian safety enhancements, like better lighting and striping to better alert motorists to pedestrians using the corridor. The mid-level or low-capital alternative recommends striping modifications to the PCH 55 interchange, which would include adding an additional through lane underneath Newport Boulevard and carrying a Class 2 bike lane through there so it could connect up with the loop that would take you from PCH on, around, and down Newport Boulevard into the Balboa Peninsula. And then the high-capital alternative would call for restriping PCH to provide three-vehicle lanes and a Class 2 bike lane in each direction. This is from Newport Boulevard to Dover and would likely require parking relocation or parking removal. That's why it's a higher-cost, higher-complexity recommendation. Some other examples of improvements for Newport include bike and pedestrian bridges at PCH and Superior, intersection improvements at PCH and Superior and PCH and Riverside, and then completion or extension of existing bike and pedestrian facilities throughout much of the city with focus on better safety and bike lane connectivity to key destinations like the Santa Ana River Trail or the Crystal Cove State Beach. And I believe as part of your packet, we included these executive summaries from the study. For more details, more specific reference on Newport Beach, we have a listing of all the 37 recommendations that did come out of the study. It's also available on our website at OCTA.net. So, now that we've developed these improvement recommendations, where are we going? We're currently conducting outreach with all the city councils in the corridor. And we anticipate that the study's findings will be incorporated by Caltrans, OCTA, and SCAG in our long-range planning documents. And they're also likely going to be used by lead agencies like Newport Beach or Caltrans in applying for competitive funds for further project development activities. These alternatives that we listed are at a relatively high 30,000-foot level. They will require more feasibility assessment, environmental consideration, as well as potential design consideration if they're going to advance for project implementation on down the line. So, in closing, I just wanted to reiterate, this study is a long-term vision document. It highlights the need for significant bike and pedestrian improvements throughout much of the cities in the corridor. We identified 37 specific improvements for Newport Beach to consider implementing over time as funding and as priorities emerge. So, this concludes my overview, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Salich?
You noted the issue with bicycles on Coast Highway. The... One of the big issues I noticed is where we have these free right turns, particularly when two busy intersections meet and the conflicts between the cyclist trying to go straight through and the vehicle of traffic trying to make the right turn through the free right-turn lane. And you talked about, I thought, some generalized recommendations there. Is there anything specific you guys have come up with in terms of how to deal with that situation?
Yes. So, throughout the corridor, that is an issue that a lot... Most of the cities have identified as major concern. And the study did identify, it's sort of a treatment that comes from ITE, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, where it's green conflict zone striping. So, you stripe through the bike lane, through the turn, so that the cars are aware that the bikes are coming. It creates this visual awareness as the cars are coming to make a right turn. We specifically made that recommendation in Newport Beach for PCH and Newport Coast Drive. But there's also that recommendation to deal with those right-turn conflicts throughout several other areas along the corridors, 37 miles.
You know, I noticed, because I drive through it all the time, Dover and PCH is a real issue, from my perspective.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor? I would just, first of all, like to compliment you, Mr. Alcock, and OCTA, as well as our public work staff for the collaborative work that was done through the seven cities to bring this to the attention of OCTA. I believe this has got to be one of the first collaborative efforts that started from the ground up that was facilitated successfully by OCTA. So, on behalf of the City of Newport Beach, I just want to say thank you. I'm very interested in what the findings say and the fact that we're now starting to really have a good conversation about multimodalism. I cycle Coast Highway not only for recreation, but as a commuter. And there are places where we do need more attention. I'm interested, though, in how then these recommendations can actually be implemented. And I would like to see if there isn't some follow-on of some recommendations in the final report of how cities and... report of how cities and agencies can actually go after funding, where those funds are, and what the likelihood is of success based on a statewide competition.
The report does include identification of potential funding sources. It doesn't ensure a likelihood, it's just saying these are the competitive sources available. We do provide that to the cities. But as we see it, most of these funding sources are competitive. So being in a planning document that's consensus-based helps you in your grant application process. The state, the PCH is state-owned, locally-owned, so there's some trade-off in who would lead a project application. But overall, sort of those issues are highlighted in the wrap-up of the study.
And you'd be happy to know, Mr. Petros, that we've already implemented several projects while this is going concurrently. We're working on the interchange of Newport Boulevard and PCH. We're working on traffic signal upgrades, as you approved recently as a council. All that kind of facilitated that. And the good thing, bringing OCT and Caltrans in, is that the study actually solidifies some things that the cities believe we can do, but Caltrans and the rules and regulations have forbid some stuff. And I think that brings in, and opportunity to bring in, design modifications and other things that allows us to advance some of these projects.
And to Mr. Selich's point, a very good example of that is Dover and Coast Highway. We had numerous meetings with Caltrans staff and were stymied at every point based because of the design recommendations that our staff was coming forward with. Caltrans would say, no, that we don't have a page in our book where we can find that. So I applaud you for that, and I hope that we can continue that dialogue to put in some new, safe, innovative design parameters in the city.
Well, let me just also echo hotspots in the city, because I go through Newport Boulevard and Coast Highway multiple times daily. I mean, that's just, I'm amazed we don't have more problems there, the convergence there, all the way under the underpass, too, cars coming through. So just a further, the questions on terms of next steps. So is this essentially kind of the imprimatur now that allows us to move forward with our specific programs that are in concert as recommended by OCTA and blessed by Caltrans? Is that where we are?
It's surely a positive force forward on a lot of those projects, particularly with Caltrans. It also allows OCTA to better program or prioritize our application projects. Typically, you need some kind of study on a corridor to identify it. Now that these identifications have been made, when Mark and various folks put in applications for projects, it'll be recognized and better chance to be funded.
And also, what are the other cities doing, and just to kind of get a sense of the full picture?
In terms of implementation?
Yes, well, in terms that you've presented, I presume, to these cities. And so how are they following through on your recommendations?
Sort of the same questions that are coming up here. How do we proceed with next steps? Is there other grant funding sources? Is there opportunities for partnerships? One of the, kind of, one of the big issues, which I touched on, but I thought might get more traction, but it hasn't perhaps, is signal synchronization. That's a funding program OCTA administers, and we look for, you know, as Dave said, if it's in a planning document. And if you get partnership, a consensus-based recommendation on some sort of improvement, that does tend to help you compete more favorably for our funding programs. So that, those type of partnerships and emphasizing the consensus-based nature of these documents is kind of key in terms of submitting your funding applications.
And this supports what we've been doing and identified in terms of traffic?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And to that point, Madam Mayor, we have a 20-year bicycle master plan that was recently completed. Staff is undertaking those projects on other facilities, but by virtue of this now dovetailing in with the PCH study, we're teed up to now be very competitive.
Is there any area or item or issue that we are not in sync?
You know?
There's probably a couple, I'm sorry. When we get into Caltrans planning and things, there's, we have met with the high-level staff all the way from Ryan Chamberlain, our district director, down to his management staff. But you always get stuck sometimes with the geometricians and folks in Sacramento, and they get hung up. But again, this study will lead us to, when we're looking, for instance, we're going to talk in a minute about Mariners Mile. Some of our solutions are right-of-way constrained, and the state recognizes, they have a facility here that was designed a long time ago that has right-of-way constraints, that we're not going to be able to buy multimillion-dollar homes and cut down hills and things like that. They have to cooperate, and this will help us do that.
I see.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Petros.
Did you say geometricians?
I did, sorry. Back in my engineering days.
And how many recommendations did you say the report had? For, you said 37?
For Newport, specifically 37.
And did you know you can leave the check for that with Dave before you leave?
He actually provides us a lot of checks. We get a lot of money from OCTA.
I can't sign him, but I can pass that back to him.
All right. Any other, Mr. Petros, any concluding comments or anything? All right. Well, thank you very much, appreciate it. And this will feed right into our next discussion on Mariners Mile and important projects on Coast Highway. So thank you so much for being here this evening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mayor Dixon, it'd probably be appropriate to take public comment on this item, because there's a little bit more than just a presentation.
All right. May we have public comments?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Since this is a study session, I was hoping we might get clarification on two points. First, I heard, but it went by fairly quickly, and it's not indicated in the packet available to the public, which I guess will be on the city website. The documents that were on the podium and apparently given to you as part of the presentation, I take it are available somewhere on the OCTA website? Could we be a little more explicit about where we look to find them?
That's correct. Joe, can you repeat the website? I apologize, it's not on the PowerPoint.
Sure, I can give it directly, but our main website is www.octa.net. And if you search, you can go in the search area, PCH corridor study, it should pull it straight up for you.
Thank you. And the other clarification about what Councilman Selich mentioned, the free right turn lanes, could we clarify if the rule about those is that when pedestrians are waiting to cross the free right turn, the motorists are supposed to stop and yield to them? Or even perhaps if a bicyclist was waiting there, trying to walk their bike across? Because if that is the rule, I've observed that only about one, and maybe 10 or 20 motorists in Newport Beach observe that kind of rule.
Yeah, technically, if there's a crosswalk, and he's talking about that free right turn lane, typically it's a crosswalk out to an island where the signal is. The pedestrian has the right-of-way in California, and they should stop. We have a lot of issues with people running things.
They seem designed to make them look like not part of the intersection. So I think most of the motorists assume that they have the right-of-way there. Apparently, that's not true.
There's a crosswalk there, there's a legal crosswalk there.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comments? All right, seeing none, so we conclude that item. Next item, number five. Do we need any direction on that, do you staff? Okay. Traffic and land use issues along Mariners Mile. So, Mr. Webb?
Hold on, Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself, as I have a business on the highway.
Okay. This is what I call the Rancho Cucamonga theory of government. You have to live in Rancho Cucamonga so you could vote on things in your district. Okay, Mr. Webb?
And thank you again. Yes, we have a really important study session for you, and I apologize for the hour, and I'll try to be brief. I did send some of this along, and I'm apologizing again. I don't think it made it in the council packet. I know we have a lot of folks here, our business community and various residents from Mariners Mile, we did send out a flyer or two, folks, to alert them of the meeting. So I'll try to briefly go through some things, hurry up where I can. If I feel that we need to stop and pause, or if you feel you need to pause, let me know, and we'll get it done. So we're going to be talking about Mariners Mile capacity study, and it dovetails into exactly what OCTA just did on the whole corridor study. Before we get started, though, I'm just going to do some background and relevant information real quickly, because some of the business owners and stuff may have not known this. But Pacific Coast Highway, again, you know, it's an iconic highway that runs along the West Coast. Originally built in 1920s, it was the Roosevelt Highway and ran 37 miles through Orange County. We renamed it Coast Highway back in 1941. It's important that it serves both rural and urban highway settings. It has an interstate option, it has regional traffic, local traffic, a lot of truck traffic. It was also designated the state's Pacific Coast Bike Route in 1976. That's important, we've talked a lot about bikes, and it is a very busy bike quarter. The segment we're going to focus in today is Mariners Mile, basically from Newport Boulevard over to Dover Drive. And it's 1.3 miles. Currently, the right-of-way through here is originally about 100 feet. We vary from 100 to 112 feet. Two lanes going southbound, two to three lanes going northbound. It has parking on it, some metered, non-metered, scattered throughout. It's, over the years, been designated different things. It's been in our arterial highway, master plan of arterial highways for a long time. It's designated, it's a six-lane major arterial, and it's in the general plan as that. And basically, the two adjacent segments, if you go both to the north and south, they're basically seven lanes going into this corridor. They've been widened in the past. Also, as you just recently saw, that it also serves as a major utility quarter. Because the way the nature of the highway wraps around the bluff there, it's got major sewer lines, gas lines, electric lines, things that run in it. And we do service those, and it causes interruption. For some background, too, on the general plan, the 2006 general plan, the statement here talks about "traffic flows smoothly throughout the community. The transportation circulation system is safe and convenient for automobiles and public transportation, and friendly to pedestrians and bicycles. Parking facilities are well-planned for residents." Just a background on where we're going on our circulation. There's some key points in here that I pulled out in regard to Mariners Mile. And the first one there is, you know, talking about providing an integrated transportation system that supports our land use, and that's a key point. The other thing in the general plan that the citizens in the council adopted then is, they basically said, "All our arterials need to work at least at a Level Service D." And we'll talk about that in just a minute, too. I just lost it in here. What's that? Okay, let's try that. Excuse me, it froze up. So cities' role in planning and maintaining West Coast Highway. We maintain the conformance with the master plan of arterial highways. The city ensures its transportation and circulation needs are in accordance with that, with vehicles, pedestrians, aesthetic appearance, et cetera. We develop and implement proper zoning and land use that supports the circulation system. We also have to coordinate with the state and utilities on capitol and projects, and we also maintain the landscaping throughout Mariners Mile. Mariners Mile, by the way, is Caltrans-owned. Our separation starts at Jamboree, where the city owns the highway going south, and from Jamboree north, the state still owns the highway. A little bit about the master plan of arterial highways. This is a document that the Orange County Transportation Authority currently administers. It dictates all the circulation planning throughout the county, established in 1956, and it's kind of the backbone that all the planning and zoning is based on, to make sure the circulation works with that. Also, a key element, because we get Measure M funds, approximately about $2 million a year, we need to be in compliance, our general plan has to be in compliance with this document, the master plan of arterial highways, to keep getting our revenue. I put in a couple of master plans here, just so people can kind of see. As you look through here, here's the city of Newport Beach back in 1958. And you see down here where my pointer is, we're kind of going through Mariners Mile down here. And you notice up here, too, there was originally a freeway planned through the city. And if you go through history, it's kind of interesting to read about that freeway. But that didn't take place. There were some changes as we got into 1963. That freeway kind of moved down onto Coast Highway itself that runs through here. And again, this didn't take place. As you know, that freeway eventually got built up here, the 73 freeway. But what is, the significance is, there's a lot of traffic that has always passed through here, it's always been a major transportation quarter. And although the city, I guess in this case, defeated the freeway on the coast and pushed it inland, the traffic and the connection is still there. 2015, you see the countywide master plan here. You can kind of see how the network is throughout the county and its various roads of principals, arterials, primaries, et cetera. The master plan talks about various categories for our arterials, and this is the categories. And you see the big ones, the primaries and the majors, and that the traffic on those type of corridors. And ADT stands for average daily traffic. So you've got a kind of sense of what kind of volumes are running on those roads. And then I mentioned earlier about level of service, that's important, too, because we, our general plan says we need to maintain at least a Level Service D. This is the definitions on level of service and what they mean and how they reflect to that, and we can get a feel for that. When I plug in further into the master plan here, you're looking at Mariners Mile here as we go down into it. And then I put in the volumes here. I wanted, again, to give the folks a sense of volumes and what's traveling through our roads. And right over here with my pointer again is Mariners Mile. And you see we're running about 48,000 to 44,000 cars a day, that's average daily traffic, through that area. If you go over towards Jamboree, it's about 65,000 cars a day, there's a lot of volume through there. And again, kind of similar, you get down to Corona Mar, you see about 51,000, 47,000 cars a day. It varies, you can look at Coast Highway, you can look at the various arterials around there. There's the traffic volumes for Mariners Mile, as I mentioned. And just to give you a sense, too, what this means, if you look at other arterials that are six lanes around the county, you travel around, you feel this. Jamboree Road up by the freeway is about 35,000 to 47,000, and you can, you can see the volumes there. Harbor Boulevard, as you go into Costa Mesa, goes from about 29,000 to 43,000, that's a six-lane facility. Brookhurst over by Huntington Beach, 42, 45, 3. Warner Avenue is another one that's kind of parallel. If you're in the North County, Imperial and Valley View, you get a sense of how those flow, because they, sometimes they're very busy, sometimes they're a little open, and that's kind of how Mariners Mile works. If I look at the level of service based on our study, and by the way, I wanted to, just background on that, OCTA did their study, and they hired HDR Engineering. JD Douglas is in the crowd tonight, he's with HDR, and did that study. And we kind of piggybacked on that and said, well, you're at it, let's drill down on Mariners Mile and help us out on this. So went through it, and this is basically the ADTs that we find on Mariners Mile and the various lane configurations for that. So that's kind of the background on it. We'll get a little bit more into Mariners Mile now, why we're studying this. For a long time, we've had concerns and requests from residents traveling through Mariners Mile, there's just a lot of traffic on there. And when I came to the city in 2007 and talking with Tony and working with him these years, our two biggest complaints are basically on Coast Highway, when they come from down in Corona Mar and Mariners Mile. They're always kind of consistent, that's where a lot of our traffic is. So we know that for fact. We also went through our bicycle master plan. The bicycle community really wanted bike lanes on this section. As I mentioned, there's parking on it, that was one of their goals, one of their high priorities. And then through the years with the business associations, too, they wanted area revitalization. This was one of six revitalization areas that we undertook years ago, and we never got to this particular one, and we'll talk about that a little later. We did do a charrette back in 2014. We had folks come in, they kind of started the juices flowing on this and came up with it. And I did what could be, and that kind of led into some other discussions. You heard a little bit about OCTA today, we've now gone through their study, we know what they've talked about. They've talked about the needs of the area and the objectives, and this slide kind of covers that. And it's on, if you want to have some more detail, I presented that slide for you earlier. Here is the specific projects for Mariners Mile that Joe talked about earlier, and you can go through this, or as you go through the study and learn more about it. That's bike lanes, traffic synchronization, elimination of multi-driveways, things like that, from low cost all the way to widening the highway and adding the bike lanes. So with that consultant drill down, as I mentioned, with Mariners Mile by HDR, we asked them to look at five basic configurations, just to verify and see, how should we make the configuration, make sure we're addressing the circulation element going through here and we're planning for the future? So we looked at really quickly the current configuration, which we didn't go into detail because we know it fails right now. It's LOS E and LF. We looked at maybe a full configuration of the standard plan for that level of highway. And then we've heard about maybe a five-lane option, can we get, can we do it with five lanes? We did look at the five, six-lane hybrid. And then we looked at what we call our minimum MPH configuration. That's a reduced right-of-way. And then we had an alternative on there, I'll show you later, that we added to that. So when we looked at the full mph configuration, our standard plan calls out for the minimum right-of-way would be 128 feet. Currently, as I mentioned, it's 100 to 112 feet. And we didn't go very further, much further on this, because we know that's going to cause a lot of problems. It could be done, but you've got right-of-way takes, problems with shallow lots, et cetera. So we put this in abeyment for the time being, because we think we had some other options that might work. Looking at the five, six-lane hybrid option, we went through various configurations and did line drawings and channelization. And I'll mention for the audience that these full-size drawings are over in the community room, laid out in the tables. They're rather long, and if you want to take time to look at them, how that impacts and how it looks, feel free to do that. On these, I blew up the cross-sections at the bottom that talk about the traffic volumes and the level of service under existing conditions. In this particular case, you see, we're cutting through an important area here, right at the interchange of Newport Boulevard and Coast Highway. And if we went from a five-lane configuration to a six-lane configuration under today's traffics, we go from a Level Service E to a Level Service D. So that becomes compliant currently. But if you go to the future, we get into an LOS of F here, and I don't think we can solve that by going to a bigger level freeway or any kind of principal arterial going through there. It would just take a lot of right-of-way. So as we go through these slides, you'll see the various configurations, and we can go back and look in detail if you like. The particular note in this hybrid option, you'll notice right here in the middle is Tustin Avenue. And one of the problems with the operations of Mariners Mile is the signals here at Riverside and Tustin are too close together for operations. And one of our goals we wanted to look at is, what if we put a signal out further, maybe here, maybe here? And again, this is just schematics, nothing, no right-of-way's been dedicated here, we're just looking at it. But making this a right-in, right-out, and it improves the operation of the facility. And we may be able to make something like that work. So you'll see that in this option. Going through, the five-lane option would only be in from basically about where the Pelican Wall is down to, say, somewhere in here, where we'd have to go back to a six-lane through the intersection. So we don't gain a lot, we still get a Level Service F through here with a five-lane on on the ultimate, the forecast for the 50, I think it was 50, or 40, 53,000 cars a day through here. Another note on these exhibits you'll see, too, is the colored sections above on the north, lost my pointer here, these areas right here. What those represent is, over the years, probably back from the 80s, when Mr. Webb and others were at the helm in Public Works, they required dedications of these properties, and we actually have a lot of the dedication along these properties, probably about 60% now of a 12-foot dedication that was planned for way back when to add the six lanes. So it's in this area to keep it at five, we've gotten most of the right-of-way anyway. You wouldn't make your general plan assignment a level of service D, so it may not make sense in that case. Again, going through this important intersection, Dover, we need to come back to six lanes here, that's really critical to make the intersection work. You'll notice a lot of times, too, we'll hear comments like Mariners Mile doesn't look too congested, but if you drive it a lot, you'll notice the congestion is back here from, say, Dover going all the way back to Jamboree, and also on the other side, Newport Boulevard, all the way back to Superior, because you're free-flowing to there, then it's a choke point trying to get through those intersections. Once you get in through it and you get down on the highway, then you move pretty good, but it's really choking, all the traffic's held back. So then we looked at what we call the minimum mph configuration, and this was basically 112-foot configuration, not our normal 128-foot configuration. And again, we looked at options as we went through here, and we found that our level service improved. We still had level service and the ultimate level service F through this area in 20 years, but the current level service goes up to level service C on a six-lane facility through here. We allowed this intersection to stay put in this option. And again, coming into six lanes all the way through here and going through this intersection, and I believe this ended up at E if I remember right, which I don't think we'll be able to get to a D in this unless we do something more dramatic, there are some other things we can do, but we may want to live with an E on a six-lane configuration, but a smaller, tighter right-of-way. And then, I mentioned this alternative option, the fifth option we looked at. During part of the charrette, when we looked at this, there was a lot of talk about here, and also we're going to talk later about the planning study that comes along in this area. And one of the thoughts was to move this intersection over, maybe make an intersection here or here, and make this a right-in, right-out, and make circulation around this. So, the alternative kind of looked at that, and we found there's some benefits to that, surely in the operation areas in here, and I think we actually have some willing abilities with the owners that we've been talking to about, maybe an intersection here, they'd actually like to have a signalized intersection there. We have most of the right-of-way for this road, I think we even have this piece, I understand, recently, so minimal right-of-way takes to add some circulation gain, and then maybe end up doing some really nice stuff back here where the village area might be developed as we get into a planning study. So, just to blow up at that intersection real quick. So, in summary on that, after we looked at that, here's what we found on the capacities, and you'll notice here that if we stayed with five-lane configuration as we go from Newport to Tustin, we're basically currently in LOS of E, we end up with an F in the future, and on six lanes, we get to a D with an F in the future. Again, this is something we have to work on, but I don't think we can solve it by a six-lane facility. Through the Tustin Dover area, we ended up with basically, we're at F and E on the four and five-lane option, C with a six, which is good, and as we get into the future, it'll drop down to an E, which is, again, it's not our general plan element, but I think it's something we might want to consider accepting. Much better than an F, but it would be hard to get to a D in that area without more right-of-way. The other thing I talked about, too, is addressing parking on the street. We have scattered parking currently in Mariners Mile, it's metered and non-metered. Removal of this parking on arterials is highly recommended because it causes safety concerns as doors and cars, I'm sorry, cars try to park and doors are opening and backing up and various things, increases congestion, conflicts with the bicyclists. We think development's required to self-park, but we have issues with that, too, and again, that leads in the planning study. And then, we can think we can replace this public parking, maybe through, the Coast Commission requires replacement of, we think we can replace it through maybe doing some onsite lots, and I think we can get into maybe with OCTA, some ability to bring some funding in to purchase property to build some on-street lots. So, that's all positive on the parking side when we get into trying to remove it now. It used to be that we really had a challenge removing it, but now, recently with changes in the OCTA guidelines just for coastal cities, as actually resulted out of the study we did with them, we can now, just like we did on Newport and 32nd, get funding from OCTA to buy properties to build those parking lots. Funding for, again, this is a state responsibility, but we all know where the state stands, and Coast Highway unfortunately has fallen down to a low priority with them, they're just trying to maintain the freeway systems and some of their high-priority roads, so we're just not getting the funds out of, and don't expect any out of the state. OCTA is probably the major funding partner, they've had the transportation programs and Measure M. We also have our turn-back in gas tax and traffic impact fees that we could bring as matching money to this. And real quickly, I'm going to talk about the Mariners Mile Revitalization Master Plan. On your item tonight, item eight is a contract award to a planning firm to start the revitalization effort, to have a planning study done through Mariners Mile, basically looking at, it's the six target areas I talked about, and we want to look at how to identify obstacles and incentives encouraging redevelopment, again, to offset some of the capacity widens and also spur development in the area. Mariners, we started this with basically an RFP process we've gone through, and again, I'm not taking from item eight tonight, but we basically, the scope of work is to, public engagement, the stakeholders, some of them which are here today, evaluate the existing policy and regulations, because they may not fit that area anymore. The zoning is, because the properties are very small, cut up, or are shallow, maybe we have to do different things on that. The parking's kind of in different locations, we have some public parking, private parking, things we want to look at there. Parking management would surely be a big deal there. Do we need to require them to all self-park their lots, or could we do maybe joint lots or municipal lots that service the developments? That's something to look at. Urban forum and visual stimulation, potential development scenarios will be done. Also, looking at the pedestrian-bike connections in the street design, that's important in the planning study that we'll be talking about later. Schedule for that is basically from June to December of this year, is our hope.
Is that the later-on item, that sort of timeline?
Yes, this is related to item eight on your agenda tonight. So coming out of this and wrapping up, recommendations for Mariners Mile. What we concluded out of the HDR review is basically that the general plan and master plan is right for, basically, we need a minimum of six lanes as an arterial through here. But with that, what we'd recommend is to, item one there, is removing the on-street parking, and again, I mentioned how we do that, maybe it's through grants, maybe it's relocating the parking, maybe it's an evaluation of the parking, but on the parking note, I failed to mention earlier, that is, if you recall when we had the sanitation district going down the highway and taking out all the parking temporarily, we did studies and Tony and his gang went through there and looked at it, and we found there's probably adequate onsite parking, a lot of the parking was unutilized, there's actually a lot of parking in the developments around there, so I don't know how impactful it'll be to remove that, but we'll work on that as part of the recommendations and part of the study. Our second recommendation is undertake this land use study to review and recommend possible land use changes and modifications in Mariners Mile business area. Again, to support the development, the changes in unique nature of that area, and with the ultimate road widening. And then, to work with Caltrans on a modified design and not use our normal 128 right-of-way, go down to maybe a 112, which we started years ago, and try to get them to work with that, and there's two scenarios on your screen here. The preferred option would be basically a 12-foot inner-left turn lane, basically, which is out there now, and a larger sidewalk on the land side of Mariners Mile. Or if they wanted, they feel comfortable, they want more 14-foot turn lane in the middle, we could make the sidewalk a little smaller in that. There are some variations, we could even take some of the sidewalk off the ocean side, again, depending where we're at on that. So, we'd recommend that we use a smaller design going through here to try to get the six lanes, again, much of which I mentioned, that we've already had dedications in the past to support. So, with that, I'm sorry to rush through, that I know we're busy, but I'm happy to go back on anything or take any questions you have.
Council members, questions? Mr. Peter? I'm sorry? Oh, all right. Mr. Peter, did you want to ask anything now?
Dave, what kind of feedback are you looking for? Are you looking for a four, or five, or six-lane configuration, parking on the street?
What I'd like to hopefully tonight is confirm, I think staff would recommend we don't change our general plan and stick with the six-lane arterial that's already proposed and has been in there for a long time. What I'd like to know is just, can I get council's direction to go to 112-foot right-of-way versus our standard 128 feet? I think that's important, making a smaller footprint. Would you encourage us to pursue removal of the parking on the street and go ahead and start trying to get the bike lanes on there? I think that's important. And then again, the last one was to undertake the planning study, which you'll have a vote on tonight to award that contract. Any other feedback you're willing to give or have, we'd be happy to take that.
All right, Madam Mayor, I'll wait till after public comments to make mine.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment? I just have a question on the projected daily trips that are coming through Coast Highway that obviously have been increasing over the decades. Maybe this is just really a rhetorical question, but with the emphasis from Caltrans to get people out of cars, are we going to experience that on Coast Highway, or they're all going to, the last remaining car drivers will continue to go down Coast Highway? So we, do you see any lessening because of other forms of transportation that would have a positive impact on Coast Highway, or is it more of the same for the last five decades?
I'll take a stab at that, and maybe Tony wants to jump in, but I do think we're moving to more of a multimodal nature, things like our bike master plan, we're trying to get people to cycle more. I think there's a great bus route on there, if we can get people used to circulators or buses. We don't even know how the world's going to adapt with Uber and if we get into driverless cars in the future, you may have more traffic, local traffic, or you may have less. It's probably more Ubers and things are going to affect the parking demand side, because you won't have to park all these cars, but I think you'll have the traffic there. Tony, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
No, I think the only other thing to add there is that the traffic models, the computer models that we use, they haven't taken into account things such as Uber or driverless cars or that type of thing. They continue to use the same type of modeling and future projections based on land use and directional movements.
The trips are still there, it's just where to go with them.
Okay, let's open it up to the public, please come forward. Don't all go at once, okay?
Good evening, my name is Manoush Moshayidi, and I'm a resident of the city of Newport Beach, I've been here for 30 years, and I own a pretty big stretch of land right there in Mariners Mile. So, a couple of things that I wanted to clarify and understand, the studies that show, you just mentioned that it doesn't include Uber or self-driving cars. Obviously, those things are coming, I've been in technology business for a long time to know that once it hits, it's going to hit hard, and we're going to see self-driving cars pretty fast, and we don't know what the size of those cars are, so they could be much smaller than Canon cars, so you're going to have smaller traffic jams in between the two, and they're obviously more intelligent, therefore, they're not going to create as much traffic as regular cars. We do have, in the city of Newport Beach in Corona Mar area, a two-lane area with thriving retail and businesses that are existing in that area. Now, making a superhighway in between Mariners Mile, you could basically, kids could buy any viable retail opportunities in that whole area. So, I, as a developer, I would be against this type of a thing, to try to speed people up through that area, and try to slow things down rather to make a viable retail area for that whole area. And you're talking about revitalization of Mariners Mile, well, you're not going to see any of that if you're building a superhighway there. Six-lane highway today, between the traffic light that's right on that car wash, the spa, and Tustin, during regular hours, you see people go at 50, 60 miles an hour. Well, that's definitely not conducive for people having retail or any sort of business out there, because people are passing them by so fast, they don't even know what's around them. So, I'm not sure if this project that you've got or you're undertaking, it benefits people of the city of Newport Beach. It might benefit people who live in Huntington Beach, who come through the city of Newport Beach, but city of Newport Beach residents who are here, they only benefit people who are on Balboa Peninsula, who come and work in maybe Fashion Island or Corona Mar, or people in Newport shores. Otherwise, who does it benefit to have a, who have a big six-lane highway going back and forth on PCH? I would say that it's actually against the people of Newport Beach, because as we've been sitting here and talking, you guys have been talking about your budget, you gain a lot of city taxes by people buying things in the city of Newport Beach, and by creating such a highway, you're just going to eliminate any viable businesses that are going to be out there, because people are going to be afraid of going into driveways, they're going to be afraid of coming out of the driveways, people are driving by them at so, such high speeds that those businesses will not be viable and tenants will not come in, and so what happened? My time is up.
Your time is up? Thank you, good comments. I'll ask Mr. Webb to respond to that. What would be the proposed speed limit on a six-lane highway through that area?
We don't anticipate the speed limit going up, it's capacity we're looking at here, so, and I understand the concern from the business community, we've had this discussion, it's really a balance between the capacity needs of the community, keeping our arterials in good shape, and the business community. We've heard about this before, and it depends on the development, I think that's where the land and planning use study comes in, and how we develop our properties there. But remember, as I mentioned, some examples of roadways, if you think of some of those roadways, they're all like Beach Boulevard and Brookhurst are viable, thriving business communities are on the sides of large highways like that. So, it's not that it's not done. We mentioned Corona Mar, too, and that was, that decision was made years and years ago, but on the same note, here we are talking about trying to find ways to bypass traffic out of Corona Mar because it's such an issue, we have so many complaints with it. So, you have to kind of balance that. We've got a lot of people, when we did our two annual surveys years ago, the highest thing on those surveys for the citizens was traffic congestion. So, again, looking at a land use study, I can't speak to Kim and how that's going to go off, but I think if we change the nature of it, one of the things we saw, Avon behind it, maybe the highway is serving as that, it's not a freeway and it's not a superhighway, it's a six-lane facility that goes through there, but maybe Avon becomes the business district, and we make that slow down in that community back there, and those properties up front, the highway now, would be serviced more on Avon. That was one of the discussion items that we thought might come out of that, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please?
Shame in as someone else will might be coming up, but remember, too, that we're looking at a future, and even with six lanes, it's still, I think, level of service E. So, that is not, that is not a free-flowing freeway, that's still a challenging place to drive through.
It's going to look like one.
Even with the improvements, right?
The arterial should be an eight-lane by the book, but we know that's not going to happen.
Six lanes creeping north and south. Any other public comments, please come forward.
You're in, City Council members, Carmen Rossum. Yes, I would like to, I assume that you will take into consideration, there are a lot of kids that go from the peninsula to Enson in bicycles, and some of them, not only they use the Riverside Avenue, but also they may use the Tustin Avenue. So if you take that into consideration when you're looking at deleting that crossway, crosswalk. And then, I would say something that maybe you won't like, but it's like here we are talking about traffic and how it's difficult, but then on the other hand, we have all of developments on Marion Ranch and all that, and we are told, oh, it's not going to affect traffic. And that honestly is an insult to the intelligence of the residents of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I should ask Mr. Webb, I mean, those proposed developments are in the general plan, and the traffic projections aren't included in the general plan?
They are, and that's where you get those future numbers, and that's one of the curious things, too, because if you look at Mariners Mile, it's not fully developed yet, there's a lot of parking lots, actually, Manoush mentioned his property, it's a boatyard now, and it's zoned for a lot higher density, and when you start getting that development, which will come, it brings a level of traffic with it, at least local circulators there, taxes coming in, services and things like that, which will compound the problems you have there now. One last point, if I could, to the speaker's comments about the children. That was one of the things that we do have a concern about. Riverside, as you know, connects with Coast Highway, and that's kind of the path from the peninsula up to the schools. And I pulled this screen up purposely because some of the thoughts, too, we have this street called Avon back here that runs here, and we actually have a right-of-way that runs through here, and we're wondering if there's a way to bring the bike trails along here and loop them around and get them off the highway. That was one thought we had. Also, maybe we get into pedestrian over crossings here, which would really help. One of the concerns that the corridor study talked about was the conflict with pedestrians. I'd love to get those kids and the bicycle riders off the roadway, it's a big roadway to do, and as we've talked before, when a pedestrian uses a signal, it even causes even causes more congestion because it puts in an automatic loop of how long they get to cross the street. And a lot of our problems in Coronado Mar are pedestrian-related because there's so many people crossing the street that it just freezes up the signals, if that answers that.
Well, if you did remove those bike lanes off Coast Highway, then that you've just eliminated, was it 14 feet or something?
Not off Coast Highway. There's, there's the bike movement that goes along the highway. I'm talking about the highway, the kids are up here in the schools, and they come down, they cross this intersection, they go down onto the peninsula. And is there a better way to get those children down there would be one of our goals here? You still have a lot of commuter traffic on bikes going through the highway.
I guess I'm just suggesting, can we just move the bike path off Coast Highway?
There's actually, there's actually a wide sidewalk, as you know, on that side. It was built purposely so the bikes and kids are riding on that side already.
Okay. Anyway, I'm not a traffic engineer, obviously. Any other public comments? All right, I'll bring it back to council. Mr. Pieter, did you have a comment?
Mr. Sherry, I'll go ahead and start.
I apologize. Excuse me, Mr. Pieter, Mr. Selich was there. I apologize. Well, it's half the time I don't see a name. All right, Mr. Pieter. And then next, everybody, just a kind reminder, everybody put their requests in there, then I will look at them, in an important, just a fun way. Okay, Mr. Pieter.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking for feedback in the size of the right-of-way. I would, I would love to stay at the 112. I'd like to not have to purchase a lot of right-of-way and keep the cost reasonable. I would like to go to six lanes and see if we can move the parking to Avalon or one of these other streets rather than PCH. That was one of the things during the sewer construction, I think, showed us that the on-street parking wasn't that necessary, although I'm sure the businesses along there, you know, probably give you a different opinion. And, and this other issue that's on the agenda tonight, it's to take on the planning study side of this, right? So that we could evaluate over crossings and all these other things. So we would not be making a decision, final decision on the configuration until we got that feedback, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Selich.
Thank you. What is the level of service through Corona Del Mar?
Well, it's a four-lane facility right now, so the level of service as a segment is F.
So that's, how, how do you measure that? I mean...
It's a capacity issue. It's the volume of cars, average daily traffic versus the capacity.
Volume to capacity ratio?
Correct.
Did, did you guys ever consider taking the, because I think the gentleman had a, had a good point about the business district aspect of it. Did you ever consider taking that center lane during peak hours, which is really when the, when the, when the traffic problems are, and using it as a, closing it down for left turns and using it as a counterflow lane during peak hours, coming in in the morning, going out in the, in the afternoon, so you didn't have to take on the extra right-of-way there?
No, that's never really been looked at. Essentially, that center lane serves as a two-way left turn for many of the driveways. I mean, there's numerous driveways along Coast Highway through Mariners Mile, so we didn't want to take away turning movement ability during a peak hour to get into many of those businesses.
It also conflicts with the left turn pockets because you'd have to get out all the time because that, that island area becomes the left turn pocket for the signals at the club and Tustin and the other areas. So you wouldn't have a complete through lane.
Well, that's, that's, that's true. You'd have some interruptions there. All right. Okay.
Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, back in 2012, I was invited by a loose coalition of business owners, the Mariners' Mile Business Owners Association, to a series of meetings. And I think one of the things that we keep hearing is that what business really appreciates is some level of certainty in their decision-making. If they know what's in front of them, they can make good decisions and, and move on. The problem with Mariners' Mile right now is that there is a complete lack of certainty in what is going on there. Is it gonna be five lanes? Is it gonna be six? What happens under the different configurations of that six-lane highway? I don't believe we have much discretion to suggest anything but the six-lane facility, given the fact that it is indicated on those master plans as a six-lane road, and it is Caltrans Road to administer. That, I don't think, is a question. It's what right-of-way do we put those six lanes in? The six lanes would operate at level of service E or F, so you're not getting a freeway, you're not getting a superhighway, you're getting a very slow-moving, chugging facility that has six lanes of capacity. I don't know that I would consider Corona Del Mar to be a real good example of an economically vibrant community because of traffic, when we can't keep a supermarket in there, when the restaurants keep getting turned over into banks, and there's more butcher paper on windows than in the meat departments. I, so that I don't think is a real good example of what, what constitutes good economic development, and that's precisely because of the traffic. That's the problem. So I think that we do need to look at solutions, and it's, and this is a, this is a big one. And this is gonna take some, some vision, some courage, some creativity. And that's why I think it's important that we also look at the land use side. If it's gonna be six lanes, what can we do as a council to help the businesses thrive and survive in a, in a setting where now it goes to 118 feet right-of-way? And I think it's important for us to be proactive so that our business community knows in the future. What are they going to get? What's it gonna look like? And what can we do from building heights, building setbacks, ultimate parking configurations, to make sure they know their, their desired success from this council?
And if I could interject just on that, and following up with Mr. Pieter, you questioned me earlier. I don't think the decision of six lanes is something that you, you can choose later to change that, but the width of the right-of-way and things will all be determined in the planning studies. Let's say if you want big, wide landscape medians, we're gonna need more right-of-way with six lanes. That would be something coming out of the planning study. But I think at this point, we are locked into six lanes. You could always make a change on that, but I didn't go into detail on what happens on that. That's a change to the MPH, which in turn, as you know, all our current and past developments based on. And we'd have to get basically the adjacent cities to agree on that too, which would be a problematic issue because there are developments based on that. I do know a city recently that, I don't know, did some development, and they didn't cooperate with the other cities, and two cities sued them, and they got money to basically widen their arterial. That's the kind of stuff that comes out when cities say, I don't want to build to the capacity that I did when in the 70s in all my developments now, and traffic's generating on that. So I'd, it'd be hard to go from six to five or four lanes. We would have to look at mitigation items, things like maybe widening West Cliff or other areas to get the traffic to move around it. So I don't know about moving from a six-lane to a four-lane option or a five-lane, but the configuration is surely anything in there is with it. If you want a lot of landscaping, if you want wider sidewalks and trees and things like that, we could put that in the planning study, but there's a right-of-way effect, just to be clear on that.
That's fine. I support the six lanes in the, in the general plan. It was the configuration I was interested in.
Mr. Selich.
So if we, if we choose the 112-foot option down by where the, where the Bay Club and the Car Wash is, is that, does that mean those curbs stay exactly where they're at? And we, and we eliminate the parking and change the lane widths? Is that what happens? Or are we gonna be moving the curbs over?
You will be moving the curbs, but on the inland side. I think when that 112-foot option was actually, I think, back when Don Webb was here, the decision from council then was to take all the right-of-way on the inside and not on the water side. If you want 128 feet, you'd probably be taking on the water side too. You would have to, the sidewalk out there, I believe, is 12-foot now. So you're gonna move the curb, and you're gonna take some of that sidewalk down to maybe six or eight feet. And a good example might be, if you're familiar with when, right where the college is right there, the Boy Scout Center and across the street, when the sand district came in and rebuilt there, we made them move the curb out and put the sidewalk in the right location. So you can see the little jog that happens there.
So would be, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be needing to get any of that 40% right-of-way that we don't have? It would just be moving the curb over and nearing the sidewalks?
We would probably need to get that right-of-way, and that can happen through development extractions as they come through, or because we can get grant funding, and if we have willing owners, in most of the cases, when you look on here, a lot of it's parking lots and things, we could actually purchase that right if we had to.
So we'd have to get the same amount of right-of-way we've been getting through the dedications in the past then?
Yes, you're gonna need the 20.
For that 40%. Okay.
I have a question, kind of a different concept you see a lot on the East Coast, that you have the interior lanes, and then you have like a frontage road that is the road that would service, in this case, service the retail businesses, the commercial businesses on either side. So within the same amount of footage, you devote one, two lanes in each direction as a frontage road that keeps like a continuous loop around, in front of those commercial areas and keep the traffic flowing. So the, those cars that are getting, servicing the commercial entities have a, have a different traffic pattern than the flowing through on the others. Do you see, I'm sure you see what I'm talking about. Is that something that would be realistic in that area?
You know, the Shret looked at what they call the slip lane in there, and actually, it, it makes it a little worse because there's not enough right-of-way for that because there's buffers involved and those things on that. And you have entry, merges and exits out of the slip lane. It actually didn't work, is what we found. We couldn't get it to work. You'd reduce your capacity. The only way to get that to work is, you see, you've got a lot of side friction here too, driveways and other things here, versus, let's say, Jamboree, which is a six-lane facility. About the same traffic flows pretty good, but you don't have a lot of business driveways and people turning in and out. Here you do. The only way to probably do less lanes, you would have to do like a flyover or some kind of express lanes. And a good example of that might be when you go through Bolsochica and Huntington Beach. It's a four-lane facility that moves really good, but there's no access points. It just flies, and once you get to the intersections, they flare it out there, so.
Anyway, as I say, I'm not a traffic engineer, but just a thought. Any, I don't see any other speakers here, any other council speakers would like to make a comment?
Do we feel, Madam Mayor, do we feel like there is opposition or concern if we were to maintain the six-lane approach for our planning purposes as well as removing the on-street parking? I guess those are some of the key things we...
You want that addressed?
I think that's helpful if, if that's what we're marching forward with, with the land use design, that's helpful for the consultant. I see, and I see enough heads nodding, I think.
One I would like to say, given the gentleman who spoke concerning his properties along there, I would hope as we go forward in the study, the master planning study, that any stakeholder, any and all stakeholders who are commercial and property owners along that area participate in this, so they are, have a voice in, in the future of what happens in this area. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I would just echo that because I think it's very important. I'm gonna support the study, but we vote on it later today, that we get a lot of feedback and a lot of close consultation with the, with the businesses and the property owners there. I mean, you know, we have the potential of really doing some serious damage to businesses, and so this needs to be very, very well coordinated and managed with the property owners.
One thing I do want to say, add to this whole holistic discussion we've had this afternoon, I think is very helpful. I appreciate staff kind of tying it all together with the framework provided from OCTA, Caltrans, and putting this together. And now the next step this evening where we're going to be looking at that, funding that study, it's good that we're looking at it all in one day and all in one discussion, and kind of we get our minds focused on all of this and how important it is to be looking at it as an integrated entity of what we're trying to do to improve traffic flow on Coast Highway. So any other comments from council members? So do you need? There should be a little bell here, so I...
I think we're good.
Well, Mr. Selich has one more comment.
So, so the 112-foot right-of-way, then that becomes the base, baseline in the, in the study then, as you work with the businesses and the property owners in the area? If people come up with different ideas and stuff, then that gets thrown into opera for consideration, or what?
That would be the minimum baseline. If the businesses or the business district wants to, let's say, have wider sidewalks or landscape medians or add to it, we could work with that. That's the minimum we need to get the sidewalks through and the traffic through.
Yeah, I'll just say one thing on the parking, that, you know, I, I don't see how we do it without eliminating the, the parking, but parking is a problem there. There was one slide where you said that you didn't think there was a parking issue, but there is a parking issue if you start taking the parking off the streets for quite a few of those businesses there. And I know that when I was on the Planning Commission, we gave a lot of, a lot of parking waivers on there. And so there's businesses there that are not even parked to code right now. So I think as we do the study, I think parking needs to be a big part of it to figure out how we can increase the parking supply at the proper locations.
And that's a very good point. I apologize if I alluded to there wasn't a problem. There are specific areas that is really tight, and we know that. In general, I was mentioning that, you know, some of the areas just doesn't seem like there's as big a deal, but right around a couple of areas is really concentrate. We need to address the parking.
And then there are a lot of areas that are not utilized, so there's an opportunity there to, yeah. Okay, I do not see any more current speaker requests. So, Mr. Kiff, do you have, are we clear on that we say, move forward with the plans as recommended? All right. All right. Madam Clerk.
Public comments. The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. Completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If this optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I, with regard to agenda item number SS3, the presentation by the Waste Not OC Coalition, if you remember that, they, they made to you a very heartfelt and convincing request for a letter from the city council. I just wanted to point out that that was not on the agenda as an action item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please? Come forward.
Hello, good evening. My name is Nicole, and I am a health educator with Community Service Programs. That is a drug and, alcohol and other drug prevention project that's funded through...
Did you say your last name, did you say?
Oh, sorry, Nicole Zarotti.
All right.
Z, yeah. And so I work with Community Service Programs, and it's an alcohol and drug-related impaired driving project. And so we are funded through the Orange County Healthcare Agency, and we work with several cities, one of them being Newport, and we've worked in this city for, since 2010. And we, one of the main components of our project is to provide bars and restaurants with responsible beverage service training. And just in case you don't know what that is, that is a program that gives owners, managers and any staff of an establishment that sells alcohol, and it gives them the knowledge and tools to help them serve alcohol responsibly and follow alcohol-related requirements, so, such as preventing intoxication, underage drinking and impaired driving. So to date, we have trained over 190 bartenders, servers and managers in your city, working closely with the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. And tonight, we just wanted to come in today and to highlight two local establishments that have shown a commitment to RBS training, Responsible Beverage Service Training, in Newport Beach by voluntarily having their establishments, their staff and their establishments trained. And so just to say them, the Nordstrom Cafe Bistro in South Coast Plaza and Billy's at the Beach will be presented with a plaque this week from us in appreciation for their support and participation in RBS training. And we will continue to work in collaboration with establishments that serve alcohol in order to continue our efforts to reduce impaired driving in Newport Beach. And that's it.
I commend you. Is this Nordstrom at South Coast Plaza or Fashion Island?
It's at, I'm sorry, at Fashion Island.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah.
All right. Very good. Well, thank you for your good work.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
How you doing, Ms. Mayor and council members? My name is Chris Benzine. I'm from the Finley Track, and I'm representing 400 people that live in that track. Ever since the city council building, the old one, they started construction on the new hotel. They've removed the parking off of the street and built that little lot that's where the bank used to be. It's not a solution. That overflow lot that was the city council building, people have been parking there for the last two years. They've also raised the rents at the Lido Island Garage across from the Lido Theater. And so now everybody from the businesses are parking in our neighborhood track, leaving no parking for the residents and our guests. no parking for the residents and our guests. If you try to park after 4:00 PM any day, even in the off-season, when the beach traffic's not here, it's impossible. You can't park anywhere after 4:00 PM. So we're just kind of coming here to this first meeting to introduce ourselves and our cause. We'll be coming to the next meeting with all the neighbors to address this, but we wanted to know if you guys had any ideas or any resolution for the Finley Track neighborhood in addressing the parking chaos.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kiff, do you want to respond to that?
We should probably have an offline discussion with this gentleman and however many neighbors want to talk with us, we'll get the public works and the community development people together and see what we can figure out.
Okay. And also, I'm having a town hall over here on June 6th, I believe.
June 6th.
And we could add that to the agenda if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Brenda Calvio, and for the last few years, we've had several complaints about pet stores in Newport Beach selling dogs from puppy mills. So I decided to look into it a little bit more, and I found out that there's, there's not that many pet stores left in Southern California because most cities have passed ordinances to ban the sale of dogs and cats, rabbits, other small animals from pet stores. Why? Because the public is fooled into thinking that if there's a retail location, they're legitimate retail. And they're fooled to think that the city is protecting their citizens. So I decided to look into the pet stores. There's, you know, not that many left and do some research where the puppies came from. And this is definitely something that the Newport Beach City Council should look into. I've received several emails. Why? Because I volunteer a lot with shelters, placing dogs and cats in foster homes, finding homes for them. Whenever there's a stray dog, people call me all the time. So I really, really would appreciate if the council would look into this issue because it's not only a humane issue, it's an issue that has to do with your citizens of the city into believing that the council is protecting their interests, and they're not because people are, without knowing, you know, there's a learning curve. Not everybody knows about puppy mills, where the dogs come from. They come from the Midwest. Southern California is the number-one region where all the dogs from puppy mills end up in. So it's an issue that not only affects the city, but it affects the entire nation because every year we put to death five to six million animals to death because they simply don't have homes and there's not enough room for them. So these dogs that are being sold in pet stores are spayed, unneutered, so they reproduce. And buying a dog from pet store is like an impulse buy. People want to rescue, they think they're rescuing the dog. They're not rescuing the dog. What they're doing is they're relegating the mother and father of that puppy who's left back in the kennel, trailing kennel, brokerage kennels. These are two kennels that I've looked into. So they have R licenses and B licenses, broker license, and research license. So these puppies are also used, are also sold to research labs. And the broker is the Hunt Corporation. So you see big semi trucks coming into Fashion Island, which is, you know, really good mall. So please look into this.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any more public comments? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn for about six minutes. Is that right? All right. And we will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. Do we have members of the council here as well? Oh, good. All right. All right, we will now reconvene our 7:00 PM meeting of the Newport Beach City Council on May 24th, 2016. Madam Clerk, on the roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, I'd like to welcome Girl Scout Troop 2917, who will lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please come, the ladies are forward here, so if we'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Petros will lead us in the invocation, please.
Please pray with me. Dear Father, in your book, you say, "A gentle answer turns away wrath, but a harsh word stirs up anger." Father, as we gather here tonight, I pray that you would shower your grace upon this city. Let us learn what it means to love one another, to love our neighbors, to truly demonstrate compassion as we walk down the street, drive in our cars, shop in the markets, and go on our way to work. And as we gather here tonight, Lord, please bless us, keep us within your grace and mercy, and shower us again with that sense of compassion, calm, and patience that only you can provide so that we can truly find love for each other as we deliberate for the best for the city of Newport Beach. I ask this in your name. Amen.
I'm going to just come down and have my picture taken with the Girl Scout for one moment. Okay, their next item, we have a presentation and a special guest, and we are going to be recognizing John Wayne Day, including presentations and comments by a member of our vice chair of our Board of Supervisors, Michelle Steele. And so I'd like to first turn this over to Mr. Muldoon.
I'll be the game show host, and welcome everyone this evening. Thanks for coming. Special thanks to the Wayne family, who I look forward to hearing someone speak for behalf of the family as well. This morning, I was able to attend with Ethan and Marissa the resolution declaring John Wayne Day by the Orange County Board of Supervisors, which is championed and led by Supervisor Michelle Steele, who's present in the audience. And if now is a good time, Michelle, I believe you have something to present.
Well, I'm going to do, read our proclamation.
You want to read ours first?
And then Michelle, Supervisor Steele, you can come up. I'll read our proclamation, and then you read yours. Does that make sense?
Sure.
All right. Okay, this is a little long, but I would like to read every word. Whereas John Wayne moved to a Newport Beach Bayfront home in the 1960s and was one of Newport Beach's most famous residents. He loved the sea and was known as a regular guy around town, frequently hosting Hollywood personalities and important visitors to the area. His beloved yacht, the Wild Goose, a converted Navy minesweeper now owned and operated by Hornblower Yachts, is available for tours and charters to share Newport Beach with its visitors. And whereas in 1968, the University of Southern California established the John Wayne Scholarship Fund in his honor, and upon his passing in 1979, the Orange County Airport was renamed John Wayne Airport in honor of his achievements and influence, and a nine-foot-tall statue of him was erected at the airport. And whereas John Wayne was laid to rest in 1979 at Pacific View Memorial Park in Corona del Mar with a Western-themed plaque depicting a cowboy on horseback, and whereas John Wayne was a founder and supporter of the John Wayne Cancer Institute, which went on to develop many innovations in cancer research and treatment, and whereas John Wayne's love for Newport Beach inspired the creation of the foundation's skin cancer prevention program, Block the Blaze, which started with the Newport Beach Junior Life Guards and has now expanded to eight states and has cumulatively educated nearly 200,000 youth in sun safety and melanoma prevention. Now therefore, I, Diane Brooks Dixon, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby proclaim and recognize May 26 as John Wayne Day in the city of Newport Beach. Supervisor Steele, Vice Chair, Orange County Board of Supervisors, would you like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon, and thank you, Mayor Protem Muldoon, that he came over to the board meeting this morning. And I am very, very happy instead of I'm reading it, that my experience with John Wayne. I mean, we, when I was, I finished my grammar school in Korea, and we used to have just one TV, I mentioned this, at the board, and one black and white, that's going to show my age, right? So I should not really mention that, black and white. My father used to watch that TV, that John Wayne's movie, and John Wayne was my, that was just like, he was a fan. So when we moved to Japan, I used to watch John Wayne's movie in Korean language. And then when I moved to Japan, Japan for junior high and high school, I used to watch movie in Japanese. And then I came here, then I was watching John Wayne movie in English. And he was our hero. These days, a lot of kids, they don't have any hero. They are just looking at their computers, and they're not really reading or watching or anything. Then I was studying about John Wayne, that he was not just hero on the screen, but he was a hero in his life. He actually helped a lot of immigrants, Vietnamese immigrants, that when they came here to settle down in America, he did that. And Cancer Foundation, he saved a lot of lives of younger kids. And I am just so grateful that I found out he was not just my hero on the screen, but he was my hero in my real life. So I was really lucky to have Ethan and Marissa Wayne at our place, and we were just moving around so much, I couldn't get for all five supervisors' signatures. So I came here to deliver it. So I got all five signatures from all five supervisors and love to present this to Ethan and Marissa. Thank you very much for letting me have this time.
Absolutely. Thank you. So could all the members of the family who are here this evening, Mr. Ethan Wayne, Patrick Wayne, Marissa Wayne, husband Tony, children Duke and Carmella, and Anita and Tim Swift, come forward, and we have some presentations, please.
Madam Mayor, while that's going on, I also have a personal story that I'd like to share. My father was a county marshal back a long time ago, and he would work up on Jamboree and then come down and come home. No, no. But he would off-time stop at the Balboa Bay Club for an adult beverage on his way home. And he would say that on occasion, Mr. Wayne was there, and he would sit and tell stories. And I would think, a man who's larger-than-life, a man who did so much in his life for all of this country, was also one of us, that he was also a very kind man and a very humble man and a New Yorker. And for that, I'm ever grateful. So thank you.
And while we're posing for the pictures, I'll just add a personal story of having the honor of meeting John Wayne with President Ford in 1976 before he died. He was also a person who cared very much about his country and about our state and trying to make it a better place. For those of you, it was a pleasure to meet many of the family in 2007 when we had the John Wayne Centennial during the Newport Beach Film Festival, and now a John Wayne movie has become a staple of that festival to remind us of our great local resident and his contribution to American cinema. So thank you all for being here.
Mayor, do you want to get a full picture of everybody? Councilmember, Mayor Protem Muldoon, can you? Yeah, squeeze in a little more, please. Thank you. Need you in more, Councilmember Curry? And Councilmember Petros, can you get in a little closer? Thank you, sir. One, two.
Step back.
I have, I'm, I'm, hold on.
I got a good one if you didn't get one.
Thank you. I think we got it, but.
I got you. I'll make sure to get you.
On behalf of my father and my family, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem Kevin Muldoon, Duffy Duffield, Mayor Dixon, the entire Newport Beach City Council, also Supervisor Michelle Steele, and the entire board for recognizing May 26, my father's birthday, as John Wayne Day in Newport Beach and Orange County. This area was a special place for my father. He started coming down here in the early 20s and was eventually able to make Newport Beach his home in the early 60s. It's where my sisters and I were raised. It's where he's buried. And I know that he would be honored and pleased by the fact that the city council so many years after his death and the Board of Supervisors not only remember him, but honor his memory and his legacy. John Wayne's also still at work in this area through his fight against cancer with the John Wayne Cancer Foundation. So on behalf of my family and my father, thank you very much. It's appreciated.
Well, thank you. Mr. Muldoon?
Yeah. I'll speak first. First, I want to, the honor is all mine, it's all my colleagues, because your father is a bigger-than-life character who helped fight communism and evil that destroyed countless lives, who dedicated his life to helping our military with moral support, giving people something to believe in, and honorable characters in the films, and being a great resident here in Newport Beach. Everyone has stories about him that you can feel the love that they have for John Wayne and the city, and it's humbling for me to work with you, Ethan, so I appreciate the opportunity very much, and thank you for all you're doing still with your father's foundation. Thank you.
Now, do we, would you, Mr., if you would like to speak, please.
Yeah, I will.
Click. All right, Mr. Duffield.
All choky. So my quick story about John Wayne is I'm getting a ride home from school from my dad in third grade, whatever, going down Bay Shore Drive, and there's this huge man in the street, right in the middle of the street, and he's kind of, sorry to say, balding. But I didn't know who he was, and so my dad sees him, and they, car stops, and they get out, and they're doing all this handshaking and hugging and things, and he says, "Duffy, I want you to meet Marion Morrison." And I'm thinking, okay, nice, Marion Morrison, big, big, huge guy. And they start going on about, he was a Sigma Chi at SC, so they're doing the Sig Shake, and they're, they played football together, my dad was the quarterback, and he was the biggest guy on the team, and he weighed like 220 pounds or something. And back then, football was much, much different. You had to go both ways. You couldn't, if you came out in a quarter, you couldn't go back into the next quarter. So these, you had to go both ways. So to be that big was unheard of because big guys, you know, they don't do well going both ways. But John Wayne did. And so sad, and the other quick end of this thing is that as a Sigma Chi, my dad was president of the fraternity his senior year, but he loved to tell the story how all his Sigma Chis got together and voted John Wayne the most... story how all his Sigma Chis got together and voted John Wayne the most unlikelyst to succeed. True, true story. Not, I'm not making that up. And then lastly, you know, he, of course, with his cancer guidance and support and encouragement with those issues, my dad, and he started the 552 Club, and raised countless sums of money for HOG, and started the 552 song, Christmas Carolings Evening, and all these things, all these deals, and with his help. And I agree with Councilman Petros, he was, he was a regular guy. He used to pick up hitchhikers. He picked up my brother-in-law, Jim Stoneman, and Jim still talks about it. That's the end of report. Thank you.
Any, I don't see any other speakers listed here, so. Thank you all, and thank you, family, and it's a pleasure to honor your dad. And when I was about 10 years old, I had my picture taken with him, and some movie, this was actually in Phoenix, and he must have been filming a movie in Phoenix, but anyway, it was one of the highlights of my life. I tried to find the photograph, I have it somewhere, I couldn't find it. But, for those of you who would like to talk with members of the family, Mayor Protem Muldoon will be over in the community room, and we have cookies and some beverages. Are you still planning to do that?
Yes.
Yes. So, we'll proceed with the rest of the council meeting, but those of you who'd like to go over and exchange greetings with the family, please do so, and, for a few minutes, and then come back in if you're interested. Okay, so we'll take about a two-minute recess while people go across the sidewalk there, breezeway there. Thank you very much, again, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, would you like to give notice to the public, please?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
All right. Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just last night, I had the honor to attend and represent the council at the Airport Working Group meeting, their annual meeting. And this, while they're always informative and well-attended, this one was very special, because the seven-year president, Tony Corey, had decided that it was time to step aside, and he left as the president. Tony had a very distinguished career as the president of AWG, really working on behalf of that organization through the settlement agreement, the agreement that we are now living with in cooperation with the county of Orange, on the terms of the operation of John Wayne Airport. He has been steadfast in his care of the community over the airport, and it was really, really moving the sentiment that was poured on him yesterday evening. However, the Airport Working Group is still in good hands. Mr. Mel Beal will continue on as the president of the group on into the future. He laid out a very visionary and aggressive agenda for his term as president, and so we should all be very grateful that the community has community-based activists and representatives like the folks at Airport Working Group looking out for us as it relates to airport, John Wayne Airport issues.
Well, very good. Thank you. Mr. Curry.
On Saturday, I was, again, privileged to speak at the Relay for Life event. This is an annual event from the American Cancer Society, bringing the Newport Beach community together to raise money for the fight against cancer. And I want to particularly commend our city staff, who did such a great job in preparing Peninsula Park for this, for this event, who have always, year in and year out, been amongst the biggest supporters of Relay for Life, and once again, it was a very successful program this year. On Sunday, I was able to participate in the Balboa Art Walk on Balboa Island, which just highlighted again how important arts are to our community. And then on Sunday, or Saturday as well, to join with Councilman Selich and Mayor Protem Muldoon at the Field of Honor Ceremony, and I would particularly commend Mr. Muldoon for his very moving comments at that event. But that's always a great celebration of patriotism in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
Thank you. Well, I messed up at the last meeting, I should have announced the art walk, and I didn't do that, but it's a good thing I didn't, because it was really crowded, I was there also, and could hardly walk down the street, and another successful year for the Balboa Island Art Walk. Now, on the 5th of June, the weekend after next is the Balboa Island Parade. It's the, going to start at 11 o'clock, and the bridge to Balboa Island closes at 10 o'clock, so after that, you'll have to use the ferry to get onto Balboa Island. And it's the only parade I know of where the parade's actually longer than the route. So, it's, it's a lot of fun, it's bands, and floats, and a lot of cool classic cars. I think most, if not all, the city council members will be riding in the parade this year. This will be the 23rd year of the Balboa Island Parade. And then the day before, on June the 4th, is the Balboa Yacht Club Wooden Boat Festival. That starts at 10 o'clock to 5:00 PM at the Balboa Yacht Club on Bayside Drive, it's free to the public. There's going to be more than 50 wooden vessels, large and small, there, in the land, and on the land and in the water. The Wild Goose is going to be there, John Wayne's former minesweeper, converted to a pleasure yacht, as well as my wife's former boat. It's a 55-foot, 40-ton wooden Chinese junk that her father had built in Shanghai in the early 1990s, and our prenuptial agreement was that she sell that boat before we got married. I don't think my neighbors in Promontory Bay would like having Chinese junk sailing up the channel. Anyway, her boat's going to be there, and her dad's going to be there. He wrote a book on how he built the boat, and why he built it, so he'll be there, talking about his book. The visitors can enjoy music, food, beverage, it's a lot of exhibit space filled with artists and nautical-related things. And the event's going to culminate in an award ceremony, including our mayor's choice by Mayor Dixon for the best boat, not that I'm putting a plug in for the 55-foot Chinese junk.
Oh, is that what that was?
I won't hold it against you if you don't vote at the best boat. And then finally, we're finally getting underway on the Park Avenue Bridge. And today, we actually put in place the temporary bridge, and slid it into place, so there you can see the slide, that's right before it went over. And, we have another slide there, Dave?
Wow.
There, there it is in place. We still have to build the ramps for it, but that will be the temporary access for the next nine to 10 months, while we construct the Park Avenue Bridge. So, it's a monumental day, it's been many, many years in the making. I know when I first got on the city council, one of the first projects that I was told that I needed to be tackled was rebuilding the Park Avenue Bridge. So here we are, 10 years later, finally getting it done. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Any announcements, Mr. Pieter? Mr. Duffield?
No.
All right. I have a few. Many of you knew that I excused myself early from the last city council meeting to attend my grandson's birth in New York City the following morning, and so I'm pleased to tell you, that little Teddy Tompkins was born. Wednesday morning, May 11th, he did spend eight days in neonatal ICU, but I'm delighted to tell you, he is thriving and a healthy little guy, and will soon join his superhero brothers, Brooks and Walker, in future fun and games. So, when you hear me go to New York City, this is why I go, so. I want those little guys to know who I am in their lives, so, thank you for indulging me. Back to a few more announcements. Coming soon, the Newport, look for the Newport Navigator, the city's catalog of events, recreation activities, and classes for children and adults, and the summer issue is coming soon. Copies should begin arriving in your mailboxes this coming weekend, so please take a few minutes to check it out. It's also available online at newportbeachca.gov/recreation. Also, the natural, the Orange County Natural History Lecture Series continues on Wednesday, June 1, at 7:00 PM, with a lecture titled Bobcats and Other Predators in the Urban Setting, A Closer Look at Some of Our Wild Neighbors. And this will be at the Back Bay Science Center. Dick Newell, founder and primary instructor for Orange County Trackers, will be the speaker. It is free, but please RSVP to marineeducation@newportbeachca.gov. The big event at Oasis, this, or Saturday, June 18th, will be their Chili Cook-Off at noon in the center courtyard. It is free, but please RSVP by calling 949-644-3244. And then a couple other announcements I have, or just a statement or request of the, Mr. Kiff, oh, we were all saddened this week by the fire loss at the building at the end of the Seal Beach Pier, once the home of Ruby's Restaurant. I'd like to ask the city manager with the fire chief to report back to us on our fire department capability in handling a fire from the ocean side of the city. It would probably be helpful to have a brief process review on how this type of fire would be addressed. I'm not suggesting in any way that we're not capable of it, I just think it would be nice to know that, how extremely capable we are. So, thank you. And I think that is it for all of the announcements. So, the next item? Matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. We have two items here, the limitation on debt issuance proposed by Mr. Pieter, and the Dog Beach matter proposed by Mr. Curry. So, should we go to the public to have comments on this, and then come back? Well, two of the members of the public speak on either one, and we will be voting on them both at the same, unless you want to have a comment?
Well, no, I don't know how the public speaks on them, if they don't know what these ideas necessarily are. So I think we ought to have Mr. Pieter present his idea, and we should have public comment, and then I'll present my idea, and have public comment, and then we can move from there.
Okay. I accept that. All right. Mr. Pieter, do you want to describe your idea?
Sure. My proposal is to refer to the Finance Committee, an item, a proposed charter amendment that would go on this November's ballot. The charter amendment would be, it would restrict us as far as what would be referred to as unboned, unboned indebtedness, like our certificates of participation are for this city hall, and that any debt would have limits to it. The limits would be a maximum of 50% of our general fund, sewer fund, water, whatever the enterprise fund is, but if, the total city debt would not exceed 50%, and if it does, it would have to go to the voters. Item number two, or condition number two, would be that the, the particular issuance of debt, if it exceeded 25%, in other words, if the city had zero debt, and then wanted to propose some new unbonded indebtedness, if it exceeded 25% of the fund, then that would also require a vote of the people. And that no non-callable notes would be allowed, the uncallable feature on bonds or any financing instrument, or anything that would have a prepayment penalty, would also require a vote of the people. And of course, refinancing existing debt would be exempt, or if the governor declares a state of emergency, that would also be exempt. And it's to refer to the Finance Committee for their recommendations, then come back to us.
Okay. I guess, are we going to invite public comment first?
Well, we can discuss this. I'd like to discuss this.
Do you want to do it now, before the public, or, all right, go ahead?
Well, Mr. Pieter, may or may not be aware that we have a 10-page debt policy that provides specific limits. We have a 20% limitation on variable-rate debt, we have a limitation on, in the, in the city charter itself, that says, assessed debt cannot exceed 15% of the total assessed valuation. We have a policy that says, the city shall strive that general fund-backed debt service, which would be the COP he's talking about, shall not exceed 8%, so when he talks about 50%, that's a debt limit that would be unheard of, and would bankrupt the city. So it simply makes no sense as a, as a number. We also have a coverage ratio requirement of 125%, and we have 10 pages of additional restrictions on debt that are used by the California Debt and Advisory Commission as an example of one of the most comprehensive debt limitation policies, debt management policies, in the state of California. Now, his issue on non-callable debt, we can put a number on that, because if that provision had been in place when we financed city hall, it would have required our debt service to be $7,000, $19,000 higher, or $7 million higher. The fact of it is, is that all bond issues have some elements to them that are non-callable. Typically, you do, you can't call bonds for 10 years. So that provision is wholly unworkable, even if we were selling basic tax and bonds.
Excuse me, wouldn't we want to debate this, though? I mean, we're just talking about agendizing this.
Well, we're talking, I think there's reasons not to agendize it, because it fundamentally is, doesn't make any sense.
But we would debate that. I mean, your comments certainly can be.
Well, you keep trying to cut me off, because, but these ideas keep moving forward. It's like a full moon, because we've got a lot of them coming out of the woodwork these days. And the fact of it is, is that this would be a policy that would affect our, potentially our ability to acquire police cars, to lease computers.
All right, but we will debate this when, if this is agendized.
Well, no, we aren't going to debate it unless people vote for it, and they shouldn't vote for it, because it doesn't make any sense.
Okay. So, thank you. All right. Any other comments from the council on this matter?
Clarification. The percentages, I maybe didn't identify, this is, 50% of the general fund would be the total amount of debt, not the debt service, which is the, what the 10 pages that Mr. Curry's referring to. So he's referring to the actual payment, I'm referring to the total amount of debt.
Okay, but we would clarify all this. This is just to put this matter on a future agenda. Any other comments? No. All right, let's go out to the public, please. Any comments on this item, to agendize this item?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. I have no idea of the merits of the proposal, but it does occur to me that there is some limit by which a charter amendment has to be prepared and adopted by the city council for it to be practical, for it to be on the November ballot. Kind of think that would be in July, but I'm not sure about that. And if this is just coming back at a future council meeting in the, in the middle of July, it sounds like a complex matter that's going to take some time to debate, research, and draft, so that it's something we actually want in our city charter. I would just question whether it's practical to do that within that timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on that? Seeing none, let's bring it back up to the council. Do we have any other comments? I don't see any names on the roster here. Any other public comments?
So before you vote, I think, Mr. Hart can clarify this for me, I believe the A6 rule is that three of you would have to agree to bring this back for it to come back. Is that correct? Okay.
All right, so the vote is to bring it back for an agenda item, so there can be a fulsome discussion and public discussion on this matter.
Yeah, that's absolutely right, and the, the policy says, if three people want to hear it, then it comes back.
Now, when it comes back, that is just to determine if, to send it to the Finance Committee, is that?
That's absolutely right.
Okay. So I, I guess I want to clarify, the discussion of this item is really going to be fully discussed at the Finance Committee, assuming that this council at the next meeting where this is agendized, will discuss it. So it's not for a debate at the next council, it's just to vote on sending it to the Finance Committee. Is that your intent?
Well, it'd be nice if we didn't have to go through the extra step and come back here before it goes to the Finance Committee, and that the chairman of the Finance Committee would carry it, if there's three people that are interested in doing that.
And Madam Mayor, you cannot arbitrarily limit debate on an issue like this by saying, "We're only going to talk about, talking about it, and then we'll send it to them, and then talk about it later." The public needs a fulsome discussion of this, because these are dangerous policies that risk millions of dollars in taxpayer money.
All right, but I expect there to be full discussion at the Finance, no, at the Finance Committee meeting, where it should be, this is where it should be taken care of, and then it will come back, assuming it comes, if it does come out of the Finance Committee, it will come back to the city council for another, I think there are at least, next week, the Finance Committee and coming back to the council, there'll be three public, at least, three public discussions.
Well, you can't go to the Finance Committee until it comes to the council, that's what we're voting on.
I know, so it'll be next week, and if it goes out of here next week.
Not next week, we're not.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Then it goes to the Finance Committee, assuming it, whatever it does up or down at the Finance Committee, then it will come back here. So at least three other public discussions. Okay. All right. So, let's have a vote on this matter. Right?
Yeah, and just for clarification, so the vote is to basically bring it back to the next city council meeting.
To determine whether it goes to the Finance Committee.
That's correct.
With council members Curry, Petros, and Selich voting no, the motion carries for three.
Okay, the next item, Mr. Curry? The next item, Mr. Curry, if you'd like to talk about Dog Beach and your idea for agendizing this item.
Sure. The issue on Dog Beach is that it's never actually come to the city council. The mayor had some ideas on it, was moving in one direction, it came back, and PBNR held some very extensive hearings on it, moved it in an entirely different direction. I think PBNR did a good job. The county has got some policy initiatives that are in abeyance while they figure out some environmental issues, but as, for those of us who were there on the day that it was announced, as Mr. Mosher knows, there are some issues about access, there are some issues about neighborhood control, about how we're going to manage our adjacency to this facility. And I just think it would be good for the city council to have an opportunity to weigh in on this. We haven't had that before. Mr. Kiff, if you want to wait until the county resolves some of their issues, it doesn't necessarily come back at the next meeting, but soon, when it is ripe for the council to make decisions on this.
If I may ask a question, Mr. Kiff, what kinds of decisions do you see as needing to make on this?
Well, if we were to do any kind of, even a small capital project, such as new fencing or, you know, more bike racks or things that made the beach more accessible and maybe controlled the use of the beach from the adjacent neighbor's perspective, that would have to come to you for approval as a budget item.
Okay.
And probably a, maybe even a coastal development permit.
Okay. All right. Any other comment, any comments from the council?
I actually did put it on the screen for you.
Yes, thank you.
I guess I don't see the need to bring it back now. If we're going to do anything on our side, it'll go through the budget process, it'll go through PBNR, and then come to us. And I don't think the council needs to get into micro-managing the leashes and the controls and the fences.
Mr. Muldoon?
I just, I was actually here for the hearing with PBNR, and, I mean, I don't want the hundreds of people filling this room again. I have no desire to do anything other than just support the county. So, I probably would, you know, fall on the side of not bringing in the crowds again and not discussing it.
Mr. Curry?
Well, I appreciate my colleague's sentiment about not having to sit through a long meeting, but the fact of it is, is we have to react to what the county does in terms of providing for access, signage, bags, who can be where with their dogs, how do you get to the county's dog beaches through the city beach. I mean, for those of us who were there on the day, and Mr. Piattar was there, you understand that the city's got a role to play here, and the city council needs to weigh in, and the people need to have an opportunity to let their views be known as well.
Mr. Muldoon?
I've just got a counterpart here with you, Keith, because it's so much fun right now. City manager, you can do a lot of stuff administratively, can't you?
I don't know how to answer that question. You know what, I could explore, depending on where your vote goes here, I could explore what I think I have the capacity to do on my own versus what I don't. Certainly, you know, installing some doggy bags and some trash cans, I could probably do. The fence and bike racks start to get a little more wobbly.
Let me just further edify what you're saying. What I would hope you're doing, and I think you are already doing, and staff is already pursuing, looking at these administrative-type improvements to protect our residents and create improved access, and more trash receptacles, more trash bags, maybe see where there can be improvements in the end of seashore there. And I think that's what the residents really are looking forward to you doing, and I do not think, at least I do not understand that you need council directive. You're already pursuing those activities, correct? If, as you explore these next steps, you determine that whether fencing is necessary and maybe a new walkway and some capital items are necessary that would require a budget amendment of some sort, then I would presume that you come back. So, I guess I'm coming down to the side as I want, we want to comply with the direction where the county is going, absolutely. And just to clarify what Mr. Curry said, I, my whole intent in this whole process was to listen to the people, and the people want a dog beach, but the residents want protection, and I want to help them coexist with this dog beach. So, that is what the city staff is going to be doing, and I would direct the staff to come back to us if you need further budgetary authorization to protect that area even better. So, I guess I'm just saying, what do we need to agendize?
Mr. Curry, at the end of his comments, said, "Let's wait and see what the county does," and I think Mr. Piattar agreed with that concept. I think we can, in that interim time, develop a plan that involves some small expenditures. I can do that on my own, and I guess I could start to raise the flag back to you if I felt like that something was going beyond my authorization.
But I agree with that, and I think let's keep moving forward, clearly, and we're not standing still on this matter, and come back to us if you need further authorization. But you don't, we don't need to bring this back on an agenda if you're already moving forward.
Madam Mayor, I thought we weren't debating the issues here, just are we going to put it on the agenda?
Well, we don't need, okay, let's have.
Be fair on both sides of this matter.
All right, thank you. So, any more comments? Mr. Muldoon, your name is up here. Did you want to make a comment? All right. Okay. Public comment?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't want to give the impression I agree with Councilman Curry on everything. I definitely don't. But on this matter, I do agree with him that some discussion is needed, because if the county is going to go ahead with advertising this as a dog beach, at some point, the city and the county are going to have to come together with some coherent plan, and as the city manager said, that coherent plan is going to have to be presented to the Coastal Commission, because you're changing beach access, you're changing the use of the beach, you're advertising it differently than it has been, and it, in all likelihood, is going to need a coastal development permit. So, the city's stance in connection with that, and it is maybe a little bit premature, but at some point, you're certainly going to need to discuss what the city's policy is, and the city manager does not set policy for us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments on this matter? All right. Seeing none, coming back. Next step. So, I would propose that we don't agendize this until we're ready to see what the county is going to do. Let's vote. Stop talking, just vote.
I just want to make sure we're clear on the motion, and that there's a second. So, your motion is to not bring it back? Is there a second?
At this time.
At this time.
Well, wait a minute. We need three votes to bring it back, so we don't need a motion.
I know.
We didn't have a motion the last time.
Yeah, we weren't doing a motion.
I think there was a motion.
Well, there wasn't.
No, there was not a motion.
So, let's see if we have three votes to bring this back, as I have proposed. That's what we should be doing.
I just want to know if people, I always want to make sure people know what they're voting on. That's all I care about. So, your vote, the vote is to bring it back. If you have three votes, then it comes back.
Well, in the future, not necessarily at the next meeting.
That's correct. That was what you proposed.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right. But it's ripe for decision.
All right.
So, do we know what we're voting on?
To bring it back at the time when the staff has information in the future. I can go on.
I'm thinking.
With council member Piattar voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 2 through 12. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Any public comments on the consent calendar?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, I have two items I wanted to comment on. My name is Jim Mosher. Item 12 is the setting of a public hearing date for the adoption of the city budget. The city staff proposal is that you will hold a hearing on June 14th. That's what the agenda says. That's fine. The staff reports suggest that you shall adopt the budget on that date. I think it was clarified at the study session that it will not necessarily have to be adopted on that date, but I hope it can be clarified. Last year, the city council felt a little pressured into adopting the budget a month early, in May, in this month, because we're implementing a new software system, which is supposed to make the city run more efficiently and more simply, but because it was in its early stages, we needed an extra six weeks to get the budget plugged in, so we would be ready to go on July 1st. Used to be that the city council could adopt a budget on the last meeting in June and go ahead on July 1st. I hope it can be clarified if our software is now in a state that if you chose to adopt the budget on June 28th instead of June 14th, so that it could be carefully reviewed, that that's not going to bring the city to a grinding halt. Second comment I wanted to make is on item 8, which is the selection of a professional, actually, the awarding of a contract for professional services agreement to develop a revitalization master plan for Mariners Mile. Thing I wanted to point out to this, out of 28 possible consultants for doing the revitalization effort, the city staff is recommending Placeworks. Placeworks is the group, and this is the particular consultant from that organization that brought the city Measure Y. We're hoping here they're listening to public input. The result of that effort on Measure Y was resoundingly rejected by the residents of Newport Beach. I would hope, based on that experience, we would be looking for a different consultant to produce this land use plan. If not, I hope they've learned from that experience and will be paying more attention to the public sentiment. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
I would just like to clarify, the consultant did not bring forward Measure Y, and Mr. Kiff, maybe you can help me out here. The consultant prepared a general plan, the city brought forward Measure Y.
That's my understanding, Mr. Petros.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other public comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, bring it back to council.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Did we have a recusal on item 6?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Nope, that's you.
Yeah, I have, item 8, I have a business on that highway.
Oh, sorry. And Mayor Dixon, I know you had expressed an interest to me in item 6.
Yes.
You, okay.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. We'll just pull it briefly. And then also, item 10, on the water, is Mr. Murdock here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to pull that for the purposes of allowing Mr. Murdock to just update us briefly on the recent actions by the governor on the state water plan and where we are. Please.
All right, to move the balance, consent calendar, items 2 through 12, with recusal on item 8 from Councilman Duffield, and item 9 and 10 pulled by Mayor Dixon.
Or 6. 6 and 10. Who pulled 8?
8 is the recusal from Duffield.
Yeah.
And 6 and 10 have been pulled by Mayor Dixon.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, we'll deal with item 6. The reason I pulled it, I just wanted to make a statement, and then if there, if there is anyone here to speak on it, I will be voting no, as a representative of the people of this district who have expressed numerous times their opposition to the trial Anchorage area in the Turning Basin, and for quality of life issues, and for concern that the Harbor Patrol will adequately monitor the temporary anchorages affecting their quality of life. I understand from the Harbor Commission discussions and with talking with Councilmember Duffield, that the pilot program will have a number of quality of life measures to ensure that there's proper enforcement and surveillance, if you will, by the Harbor Patrol of that area, and to make sure that there's rules and regulations for proper behavior and hours of partying. So, I'm hopeful and I'm looking forward to the successful operation of that, but in any event, I am going to be voting no, but I look forward to a successful pilot, assuming that it goes forward. Any public comment on item number 6?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Duncan McIntosh, Harbor Commission. This is the second year we've done this, as you know. We started off kind of cold last year, in 2015, so we do have the benefit of the experiences that we did deal with last year. The city has a flyer that the Harbor Patrol is now handing out to all the vessels that go in there, that basically lays out the rules of what is acceptable and what is not. Rafting parties are not, dye tablets should not be put in the toilets, basically noise after 10 o'clock and before 7:00 in the morning, are the basic elements that we've clarified. They were always, except for the dye tablets, they were always ineffective last year, but I don't know that the education was there to make the voters aware of it. We think it's a good program. It's at the, it's two and a half months of the busiest time of the year, when we need all of the places that people can come into the harbor and tie their, anchor their boats for a short period of time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them, but other than that, I just wanted to, you know, make my position and that of the Harbor Commission clear to y'all.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Paul Blank. I'm currently the vice chair of the Harbor Commission, and I'd just like to say that several outreach meetings took place on this topic. The recommendation was formulated based on feedback we received in those outreach meetings. There was participation from the public, from Harbor Patrol, from Harbor Resources staff, as well as the Harbor Commission in all of those meetings. The concerns that we heard have been addressed, as my colleague McIntosh just enumerated. I am in support of this trial period, and I'm in support of the recommendation that's in front of you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
I'd move approval of the item.
Second.
Second? All right, let's vote.
With Mayor Dixon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right, and item number 10, update on water use and conservation efforts. Mr. Murdock?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the, there has been quite a few changes in the conservation stuff, if you've been hearing in the news. You may have heard that in, first, I'd like to congratulate the city. If you read in item 10, you can see that the city achieved a 28% reduction for the month of April, so congrats to our residents and our customers. That brings our cumulative total to 21.4%, which is now the first time that we've exceeded our state standards. So, congrats to all.
Good job.
That was a lot of work for folks to do. So, just when we figured that out, the governor came out on May 9th and issued another executive order that extends the drought through the end of January of 2017. In addition, he directed the State Water Board to retool the emergency conservation standards, and this is what you've been hearing in the news, is the proposed text that's attached to your staff report did, since the time we wrote the staff report, was adopted by the State Water Board on May, on May 18th, with a couple of changes, mostly to the timing. Those changes are fairly minor, meaning the wholesalers have a little bit of the extended time to report the water supply issues in California, and then retailers will have a little bit of time. So, a couple minor changes, but basically, the proposed text that's attached to the staff report is what they adopted. So, the big news is this self-certification. The State Water Board, for many months now, many water agencies have been asking the state to put the control of water conservation, supply, and conservation measures in the hands of the local agencies. So, the state board has proposed that each agency in California self-certifies So the state board has proposed that each agency in California self-certify a conservation standard to meet the goals of their water demands should the drought continue for an additional three years. So in simple terms, if the drought was to stay as it's been for the last three years, continue on for the next three years, if we had a 10% shortfall in water supply, then our conservation standard would be 10%. This has mostly been done because in Northern California, the water supply conditions have been varying recently, as you know, the rainfall and snow pack. Some agencies in Northern California are doing great. They have full reservoirs, and other ones haven't. So they're putting that enforcement conservation standard in the hands of the local agency to come up with the standard. So here in Newport Beach, our water supply comes from two sources, our groundwater and our imports supplies. So the Metropolitan Water District and Orange County Water District will need to provide the city of Newport Beach water that would be available after a third dry year. So the state has given these wholesalers up until June 8th to provide those numbers. We anticipate, early on, we've been hearing numbers that, yes, if a drought continued, the groundwater table would draw down a little bit, but they could still meet supplies. The same for the import supplies in Northern California. But one thing to keep in mind is that the state says for your water demand, they're basing the average usage for every agency from 2013 and 2014. So if we provide the numbers, our demands are the average of 2013 and 14, could those reservoirs endure another three years of drought? We will always, at a minimum, have to meet that 2013-14 deadline. I guess what I'm saying in too many words is the drought's not over. We'll still need to conserve. We don't know what the number will be yet. We hope to look at that here soon, in the next couple of weeks, when we start getting numbers from our wholesalers, but it's quite a big change. One thing that we've heard that the state's really doing with this is it's kind of a test. They called it a stress test, if you looked at it, and believe me, it is stressful. But it's a stress test to see, can local agencies manage the supply and demand conditions? And if not, the state would be happy to come in in January and come back with mandatory conservation standards, so.
Well, thank you for that. If there was one key message to our residents, what would you say?
So the drought's not over. We're not, it's not going to end. Even with the water supply conditions, there are local, you know, underground, the water basin and some of the reservoirs that we have in Southern California still need to recharge. Stay tuned. I, you know, I think it's fair to say that we will ease up on some of the citations and the things that we've had to do. That's fair to say, but we will still continue to look at folks that are wasting water and that the folks that haven't.
So bottom line, people should continue to conserve as they have been for the last, or can they lighten up a little bit or stay at the current level of use that they have been doing for the past several months?
Well, for now, residents or our customers will have to stay at the current regulations until we have an opportunity to change that.
Okay.
So the plan would be, once we know what those numbers are, we'll bring it back to the city council. We'd have to change the, adopt a lower level, so please conserve. We are going to ease up on citations, I will say that, but please continue to conserve until we can know a little bit more detail in about a month.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Murdock here? Any public comment, please come forward regarding this item. Seeing none? Well, thank you.
Move the item.
Second.
Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, oh, good, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Riley-Tung. May I begin?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dixon and city council members. It's a pleasure to be here again. I was here about two years ago for several different meetings to ask for parking permits for Aurelia Street. I brought up this very simple diagram, so you could see, where we live in East Bluff, because I know a lot of you don't necessarily know the neighborhood, but here's CDM High School, right over here. Here is East Bluff Drive. Here is Aurelia that parallels East Bluff. The city council was kind enough to listen to our concerns and give us parking permits for Aurelia Street only. What's happened is all the CDM High School students have decided that because they can't park on Aurelia, they have moved up Arbutus, which is a street that parallels Aurelia, and Alta Vista, which also parallels Aurelia. And then this street, Aleppo, here goes across east-west, and they're parking there, too. Where I've made the blue marks is to show where the high school students park on a very regular basis, Monday through Friday, because either there's not enough room at the high school parking lot, or there's simply no desire to deal with the traffic getting in and out of the high school. I just want to let you know that it creates a very dangerous situation for drivers on our streets. We live in a quiet residential neighborhood, and it blocks views if you're coming around turns. It also brings a lot of kids who drive safe and, excuse me, who drive fast and unsafely onto our streets, where we have kids playing and pedestrians and other drivers coming in and out on a regular basis. So I ask that you consider continuing the limited parking with the parking permits that were issued two years ago or permitted by the ordinance that you voted on, to continue up the streets, both Alta Vista and Aleppo, and also on Arbutus. We're working right now on getting signatures from all the residents to show that this is something they desire, the entire A-streets of East Bluff neighborhood deeply care about and want, and we'll present that to the city council when we have collected all of them. As well, I've been in contact with Tony Bryant, the city traffic engineer who helped us last time to get this done. So, did you have any questions? All right, well, thank you very much for your time, and I'll just add one last thing, which is, we know that the CDM High School is proposing a much larger stadium right next to our neighborhood. We're very concerned about that. And so we'd also like to consider changing the time limits for the Monday through Friday parking restrictions from eight to four to eight to 10, but we can talk about that a later time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and members of the city council and the city staff. My name is Mara Quist, and I live in the East Bluff neighborhood, across the street from Cronodamar High School. I'm a member of Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth, or NCRG, we're a nonprofit corporation formed by residents around the high school, and we're committed to working with them to meet their needs as well as ours. Specifically, I'm here to say that I'm in favor of renovating the Cronodamar High School track and field for the safety of the student athletes, and I am very much in favor of a two-field alternative that Newport Citizens proposed to the Newport Mesa School Board in March of this year that will be included for comparison in their environmental impact report. Now, I know that this isn't your decision. The school board will ultimately vote how to proceed. However, the city of Newport is responsible for traffic management and pedestrian safety on the large and small streets surrounding the high school. The current stadium proposal would increase permanent seating from 600 to 1,000, and it would actually remove parking spaces to make room for an entry plaza. More cars would thus be entering the surrounding neighborhoods, looking for parking, and more kids and parents would be cutting back across the busy streets around the high school to get to sporting events. Therefore, we, as members of Newport Citizens, want you to know about a viable alternative to the current proposal that actually better meets the safety needs of student athletes and the surrounding community. The two-field alternative would replace two natural turf fields at the high school with two synthetic turf fields. The first synthetic turf field would be where the existing football field is located. This field would be sized for football and lacrosse. The current track around this field would be replaced with a synthetic track in the same location. The second synthetic turf field would be where lacrosse currently plays on natural turf. This area is often referred to as the Dust Bowl due to the poor condition of the grass field. This field would accommodate soccer and lacrosse. We propose portable lighting and bleachers for this field. Under this two-field alternative, a six-foot perimeter fence around the track and field areas maintained, screening trees along East Bluff Drive and Vista del Oro are maintained. Varsity football night games remain at Newport Harbor High School, which is less than four miles away from Cronodamar High School, and the cost is about the same as the original proposal. What's missing from the two-field alternative plan are the following: 80-foot light poles, new amplified sound system, additional fixed seating in a press box, new bathrooms, ticket booths, concession stand, a 10-to-20-foot perimeter fence or sound wall along East Bluff Drive and Vista del Oro. What is gained with the two-field alternative plan are the following. It meets the needs of more student athletes because it allows for more on-campus practice time due to two all-weather synthetic fields instead of one. New bathrooms may not be required due to no addition of permanent fixed seating, and current bathrooms are centrally located to both fields. Reduction in the lighting impacts, the noise impacts, better aesthetics because the trees are preserved, reduction in parking and traffic impacts.
Could you please wrap it up?
Because the interior field can be accessed from a back parking lot. So in conclusion, I believe that the two-field alternative better fits the needs of the student athletes at the high school. It's a better fit for the surrounding residential community, and it places less demand on city traffic and safety resources. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi there, my name is Ryan O'Grady, and I'm also here to speak on behalf of Newport Center for, Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth, to talk about the Cronodamar Sports Field Project. Newport Mesa has two alternatives to choose from, so they can choose, well, they have three technically. They can choose a stadium, they can choose the two-field alternative that we've put forward for them, or they can choose nothing at all. And, you know, as we've spoken, we support Newport Mesa and their desire to improve the sports field, we just think the two-field alternative is the better one. Last meeting, I talked to you about how homes in the area are seeing, you know, the homes have been on the market for months, they're not selling, there's been double-digit percentage price declines on the homes that are close to the stadium. So this is an issue that's impacting East Bluff and the Bluffs residents now, before the stadium is even, you know, before this issue is even decided. And these are things that can, that can damage property values for years to come if we get comps start to reset at these lower prices. So there's many reasons why people in the neighborhood don't want the stadium there, and, you know, Mara talked about some, and you'll probably be hearing more in the next couple of months, but one of them is noise, and that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. So stadiums are noisy. And Councilman Duffy recently worked with Dover Shores to, you know, there were Dover Shores residents complaining about noise coming from the Newport Dunes, and so Newport Dunes promised to have sound monitors at their events, so I got a sound monitor right here, so I'm monitoring my sound. So I've been tracking around sort of 55, 60 decibels, which is considered okay for a neighborhood. So Newport Dunes is 800 meters away from the closest Dover Shores home, and most of them are at least 1,000 meters away from Dover Shores. If you drew a circle of radius 800 meters around CDM, you'd get within East Bluff all the A-streets, all the B-streets, you'd get 70% of the Bluffs, you'd get the entire plaza, and you'd get all of Villa Granada. It's close to 1,000 homes are closer to CDM than the closest Dover Shores home is to Newport Dunes. So that's probably half the homes in District Four are within this sort of 800-meter complaint zone that just, you know, that you guys just recently dealt with. So obviously, we're very worried about this. We're, you know, trying to work with the city and the school board, and there's been hundreds of letters written in from East Bluff residents, from Bluffs residents, to the school board, asking them, you know, please reconsider no stadium, no light poles, no sound system. So there's homes less than 100 meters from where the proposed stadium is, eight times closer than the closest home in Dover Shores. So when you move eight times closer to something, that's an increase of 18 decibels. And 18 decibels moves you from, like, let's say you're in the normally acceptable range, 50 to 60, which is kind of, I'm a little bit above it now because I got closer to the mic, but it moves you from the normally acceptable 50 to 60 into the clearly unacceptable above 70. So the people living near this stadium are going to be suffering these really loud noises, and there's no way to test for it because the stadium is not there yet. So anyway, we, we hope you support the two-field alternative, and we're just looking for some friends on the city council.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, and ZF members. My name is Brenda Calvio, and I spoke with you earlier at return, and I apologize for that, but what I wanted to ask the council to do is seriously consider placing a ban, like many, many cities, on the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits and pet stores. Why? Let me give you just a brief overview of how pet stores work. Pet stores have to get a reliable source of dogs and cats, and they get them from the Midwest puppy mills. Puppy mills is a name given to these kennels that have 600 dogs, and these are pulled from the USDA reports, they're open to the public. The United States Department of Agriculture oversees these puppy mills. By definition, kennels that have a USDA license are puppy mills. So these kennels, San John kennels, trailing kennels, broke kennels, you'll walk into a pet store in Newport Beach in Fashion Island, and you'll see some of these names on the kennels. And a lot of people think, you know, this is not an issue that is very important to the citizens, but I happen to be a contact person for a lot of people to place animals, and I'm very knowledgeable, I've done a lot of research on this. So they contact me and say, my dog has parvo, and just in 2015, there was a big parvo outbreak. Contacted your old contractor, which was the U.C. Humane Society, and I told them about the parvo outbreak, and of course, they said, well, contact city council, and we did, and there was nothing done. Now it's a year later, 2016, there's another parvo outbreak. People are buying animals without, I mean, you have city council not protecting their citizens, and you have people walking into these stores with no knowledge about puppy mills. They think that because there's a store, it's legitimate business, but pet stores have become a source where it's no longer acceptable to put dogs on a shelf to sell them that come in from puppy mills. So please consider an ordinance, and if you'd like, I can contact you and have a meeting with you, because I know that there's a lot of information that has to be pulled together, numbers, how many dogs are picked up. So I can provide you with those numbers, and we can provide you with a humane alternative. So please, consider passing an ordinance against the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits and pet stores. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the time to educate us. I appreciate that. Next speaker, please, and any other speakers, please come, be prepared to come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Gru. I'm a resident of the city of Newport Beach. I've been here since 1980, so I just miss the era of when John Wayne lived here. But I wanted to mention to Councilman Duffield that I voted for you. The reason I voted for you, and the reason that so many of us did, was that not only do you have a successful local business, but more important, you are a longtime resident. This means you know the value, the character of our city. We know that the vast majority of our residents don't want to be in LA on the bay, and they don't want high-rise buildings. When I voted for you, I was sure that as a member of the city council, you had worked to protect our community against developers who would like to transform us into something we don't want to be. As projects such as a museum tower are brought before you, I know that you, with such deep roots in the community, will lead the fight against them and protect Newport Beach for all of us that love it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, 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 no clapping, please, thank you. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, let's have some oral reports from city council on committee activities. Mr. Petros.
This Thursday at 4:00 PM, I announced already, we will be having a finance committee meeting up in the Newport Coast Conference Room. meeting up in the Newport Coast Conference Room in the City Hall, Bay 2E. A very important Finance Committee meeting where the Finance Committee will be making a recommendation to the council on the annual budget. If you have any thoughts on our budget or questions about how we operate here at Newport Beach, please, I encourage you, I ask you, I will bring candy, come to the Finance Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Curry.
No reports.
Mr. Sow.
No reports.
Mr. Piattar.
None.
Mr. Duffield.
None.
Mayor Protemaldoon. All right, let's move into current business. Item number 13, Cameo Shores Pavement Reconstruction Award of the Contract. Mr. Webb.
Actually, Deputy Director of City Engineer Mark Velkovich will be giving that report tonight for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Good evening. We're excited to bring this to you. This neighborhood has been in dire need of pavement rehabilitation, too, and this is a big project that we've been planning and working on for years. It's about three and a half miles of streets in a residential neighborhood that we're going to be undertaking this summer and working through the early fall. And we've already started working closely with the HOA and the community of how we're going to stage this project for reconstructing the entire street, which is going to take quite a bit of effort, too. It's going to be removing all of the asphalt in the street and digging down and putting in and stabilizing the pavement down below and putting in new asphalt. The existing street is pretty much original, it's from the late 1950s when the track was originally built, and it's got extensive alligator, what we call alligator cracking, and because of the soil conditions beneath it, it's been slurry sealed many times, but it's time for a full replacement. And it was designed here, put together by our staff through a variety of consultants, and we're asking for your award, approval for the award tonight, and we would move forward to construction in June. Like I said, and this is a large project, this is why we have it as a new business item. And then I think also importantly, we'd like to move those pavers from the peninsula over to Cameo Shores to alleviate the traffic in the peninsula over the summer.
Sounds good. All right. Mr. Sow.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I lived in Cameo Shores, had homes there for about 22 years, and every time when you guys would do the slurry seals, the streets would start cracking again. And I noticed there was, there seemed to be a lot of movement underneath the asphalt, so, and it was more prevalent on some streets than others. So are you guys going to get in there and pull up that base and do some recompaction and maybe take a look to see if there's some water or something migrating down there that might be causing some of this?
That's absolutely correct. So we've dug potholes in all the locations out there, too, so we know the soil conditions. There's a lot of clay, a lot of saturation that's stuck there, too. So we're digging down several inches below the existing asphalt and putting in base and asphalt to keep a new road section. The existing pavement is very thin, it's only about three inches, and when we leave, our new pavement will be somewhere between seven inches on certain roads and 10 inches on others.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? I don't see any posted. All right, let's go out to the public. Any comments on Cameo Shores Pavement Reconstruction, please come forward. Seeing none?
I'll move the item.
Second. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Very good. Item number 14, Petition Certification for Proposed Underground Assessment District for Number 114 and 114B. A couple of procedural items I want to identify first. This was, this matter, same matter.
Madam Mayor, on the advice of council, because of a stock ownership issue, I am required to recuse myself on this issue.
And Madam Mayor, as am I, but I'm looking forward to an equally long Dog Park or Dog Beach hearing. Thank you. And I'm doing it for our, because I work for a telecom company.
All right. As I say, I started to say, a couple of procedural items. Number one, since this was...
I have a question. I have a question.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry. Why do these people get to walk away right now?
Please, you're out of order, sir. Please, you sit down.
I don't understand this.
No, you need to sit down, sir. It's not time for you to speak.
Please, sit down.
I know that.
We don't do that. Come, please, sit down. Please, please.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to answer the gentleman. I've been advised by our city attorney that because I own stock in AT&amp;T, and because AT&amp;T may be a beneficiary of this, that I'm ineligible to vote on it.
You get to just leave. And likewise, yes, I do get to leave, thank you very much, and that's because I'm employed by a telecom company. We do wireless infrastructure, and so essentially, we're, sir, sit down. Sit down.
Please, sit down.
So for those of you who are being patient and understanding of my legal conflict, I appreciate it.
All right, so thank you.
Watched in the back room.
Okay. The procedural, continue, the procedural items. Couple of things I want to clarify, since this same identical matter was discussed on May 10th and was postponed and carried over to tonight, I will propose to the remaining council members here on the dais that we limit public comments to two minutes instead of three?
Oh, great. Yeah. Wonderful.
So do we have to hold on?
Well, just here, yeah, I'm in favor of that.
How do you folks feel? Okay, Tony? Okay. So we will, I mean, this was fully discussed for two hours on May 10th, so it would be constructive to have new thoughts or ideas presented. That's point number one. Point number two, Mr. City Attorney, how would you like to, are we talking about two separate items? Are we going to be discussing these 114 and 114B together?
Yes, they'll be discussed together.
Okay. Will we be voting on them as a single item?
You can decide how you want to vote on them.
After we have...
After you have a public comment on both.
All right. So, Mr. Webb, do you want to start the discussion?
Yeah, I could introduce it a little bit. Last time you know, we brought this item to you. This is two assessment districts up in the Newport Heights area. The applicant has asked to bring this forward to the council for its hearing. Our guidelines, as you know, it was 60% signatures to move forward with the petition. They do not have that amount, but they did want to bring this to you, so staff's packaged it up. At the last item, it got carried over, and in the meantime, some signatures have been added and replaced. So we have some new numbers for you tonight. Our assessment district engineer from Harrison Associates here, and I did provide you with a memo that basically gives you where the signatures are at this point, and it is with 8114, the signatures are now at 50.85%, and the signatures for 114B still stay the same at 59.71%. And we can provide you any more information on that if you would like.
Which way did 114 go, Dennis?
114 went down, was it 52 last time?
One vote.
Or one vote, I'm sorry. And it's probably good to hear from the assessment engineer on the numbers, too, because I understand there were four signatures that were for it, but they couldn't validate them, they couldn't get ahold of the folks, and he may speak to that. Dennis, if you could fill us in on the numbers.
Again, Dennis Anderson with Harrison Associates. So since, give a little bit of background again on where we started. Back on April 25th, we had submitted our original certification for the petition for 8114 at 54.21%. Then as of May 10th, when we were at council two weeks ago, we revised that because we had received a number of requests to rescind signatures from the petition. So as of May 10th, we were at 51.23%. Then the item was continued. Since May 10th, we've received two additional requests to rescind signatures. We've also received four new signatures on the petition, and there have been changes in status and some other signatures, clarifications. So I'll go through those clarifications. So to date, we've received a total of 32 requests to rescind signatures from the petition. Of those, two were from properties where no signature had been originally submitted, so those rescission requests didn't have any effect. Two were from prior property owners, so the properties had sold, and those new property owners have since signed the petition. One was from a prior property owner, however, the property has sold, and the new owner has not signed, so that rescission has no effect, and we're not counting that property. We've, one signature was shown to be from a tenant, not the owner, and so we have invalidated that signature. Four property owners had, have retracted their request to rescind, they're now in favor. So those signatures now count. We had one individual who signed the petition that was not the property owner, so we have removed that signature. And we have 21 rescissions that were verified, that the person who actually signed the petition requested that their signature be removed from the petition. In addition, from the original list that we had received, or petitions we had received or signatures, two were submitted from properties that were in trust, but we could not verify that the trustee had signed, so we did not count those signatures. And one signature was submitted where a person that signed did not match the property ownership records and could not get verification that they had the ability to sign, so we did not count that one. So again, as of 3:00 this afternoon, the petition percentage was 50.85%, so 5-0.85%. In terms of district statistics, of the 251 properties in the proposed district, we had a whole, a total of 129 parcels of verified signatures. 97 of those are owner-occupied, 32 of those are non-resident owners, and I'm available for any other questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Anderson? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Webb, back to you.
Well, at this point, we'll be looking for council's direction on this. We did have public testimony last time. Again, the proponent of the signature list is asking for your approval of it, but he doesn't meet your guidelines of 60%, but he does go over the legal threshold of 50% that you could go ahead and call for the vote on the district.
Okay. Please, all right, any comments before we put it to the public?
Quick question of staff. You're recommending that we combine 114 and 114B?
It would be our recommendation, if you choose to go ahead with the votes on these and they are successful, that we combine the districts for economics of scale, again, based on the votes of what the districts come out. Thank you.
I think for purposes of the petition, though, you're looking at them separately, but then when it comes to looking at it for the actual vote on whether to go forward, staff has requested that you combine the districts. My legal advice is to not do that, to not combine the districts and treat them separately.
But then at the time of, if the projects were to go forward, then they could be combined for efficiency and economic reasons?
Yes, so for purposes of the vote, I'd treat them separately, but then if they both pass, then you could potentially combine them to get some economics of scale and decrease the overall cost.
Okay, well, if 114 were to pass and 114, I'm sorry, if 114B were to pass and 114 were to not pass, is 114B large enough to proceed?
Simple answer is no.
So they really do need to be combined because 114B really doesn't stand by itself? And is there a problem doing that from a legal standpoint?
Well, I think that the petitions were circulated as being two separate districts, and if for some reason one district didn't pass, you know, they didn't have enough votes to pass and the other district did, but had enough to carry basically the two as a whole, then that would be an issue. So my recommendation is not to combine them for purposes of a vote to go forward with the assessment districts, because you wouldn't want to have one district that would have failed and one that would have passed, but now they both passed because you combined them.
But 114B, if it passes and 114 doesn't pass, it's not a legitimate project?
Well, I think that there'll be, the cost will be higher. I don't know whether it's a legitimate project or not. You know, they can still go forward with the one and not the other, it's just going to be more expensive, that's all.
Okay. Any other, oh, Mr. Sow.
Well, the way you have the agenda set up, 114 is set up to be voted on before 114B. So if 114 doesn't pass, then we always have the option to not approve 114B because it's not economical.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other council questions? Let's move it to the public. Sir, please come forward, identify yourself.
Nice to be first in line. My name is Burr Buman, and I live at 515 Irvine Avenue in Newport Heights, and two weeks ago, I told you about how I magically got on the petition in favor of undergrounding. And nobody, and the flyer that I got that was ostensibly from the city, did the city generate that flyer? I got a flyer that said it was from the city, there was a postcard attached to it with a return address that said City of Newport Beach. Admittedly, there was a post office box there, and I'm not sure if it was the city's post office box, because I sent the postcard for more information, and subsequently, I ended up on the petition in favor of undergrounding. Now, you guys are talking pretty much about numbers and the sundry other things, but the last speaker just mentioned that 21 people have tried to get off a petition. Now, I was on that petition, and I feel I was, a fraud was perpetrated against me, and all of a sudden, I asked for more information, and I'm on the petition in favor of undergrounding, and I had to go through some hassle to get off of that list. And according to the last speaker, 21 people have had to do that. So we've talked about the two lovely young ladies that talk to people and say, "Oh, if you want more information about undergrounding, sign right here, and we'll get you the information." Well, the information never shows up, but they end up being on the petition in favor of undergrounding. Isn't that a fraud? You talk about the two sides being equal. 21 people have had to fight to get their name off a petition they never thought they signed. I'm upset about that because I was one of them. And I...
Please.
So that's my comment. I just wanted you to know that I feel like this, the proponents of undergrounding have done almost everything in their power to get this to come to pass, and they basically got me upset because initially, I didn't care either way, but when all of a sudden, I'm a signatory to undergrounding when I didn't have a position on it, and I find, okay, I'm done.
All right, thank you. We'll address any specific questions after we do the public comment. Next speaker, please.
I prepared a three-minute presentation, and I guess the goalposts got moved, didn't they? So it has to be compressed, down to two minutes. The pictures will have to speak for themselves, pretty much. It's a shame.
Could you stand in front of the mic, please, a little bit?
I don't really feel I need it, Mike, but we'll see. I mean, Mark, it said go, right?
Go.
With or without the poles in the alleys, there it is with, there it is without. What you have is a paved service roadway, driveway aprons, concrete slabs, six-foot fences, garden walls, blank building walls, and garage doors, and very small patches of landscaping. These alleys are not amenable to beautification by the removal of power poles. The overhanging foliage is not permitted by the city because the trash truck can't get clear underneath it. This much of it would have to be cut away and might, and very likely, will happen soon. Quoting the Newport Beach zoning code, "No encroachments at the ground level are allowed within the required rear setback area of a lot abutting an alley. Rear setback areas abutting alleys shall be kept clear of obstruction," which of course includes landscaping and trees. And given mansionization, the, we get yet more paving. Three-car and four-car garages, these alleys are not amenable to beautification. Here's a tour of the Heights. This is the Silk Purse Side of the Salsir, which is in the alleys. Here and there, you get a glimpse of a pole. Going down Aliso Avenue, no poles to be seen. To see a pole, you have to walk down the street and look at 90 degrees to the curb, and you get fragmentary views on the southeast side, only two. That one's hard, particularly hard to see. By contrast, on 15th Street, you've got a forest of poles on a residential front of the street, and you have to drive through this to get into the Heights, which further trivializes the impact of the poles in the Heights area. Here's more, a typical shot in the Heights. There are few areas where there are poles clustered together and they are unsightly, and these occupants of these areas, if they're concerned, can avail themselves of 20C and have them removed.
All right, thank you very much.
That's a crying shame that I didn't get 20. I'm thoroughly annoyed that you people moved the goalposts.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Tom Newman. I live in El Medina Street. I spoke last... Oh, thank you. You're really moving the goalposts now.
Oh, I think that was a little mistake. Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. I live on El Medina Street, and I'm not in favor of lowering the standard down from 60% vote. I talk, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Tom Newman.
Tom Newman, again. Start all over again. Start all over again. So I, I, I think that I can speak for a lot of the friends and people that we know in our neighborhood, who are, who have lived there for many, many years, and have developed that neighborhood, and made that neighborhood's a place that people want to move into, long before some of the folks who have come lately, and have moved in with power poles already in place. And we're moving the goalposts on these people potentially. They have not the resources to withstand the cost of doing this. I think we're putting that at unfair advantage. And maybe I'm in a position that I could do it, but I am talking for my neighbors, many of them who cannot be here, because it's a late time for them, and they're just not able to get out at this time. So I'm asking you to stay the course. We have rules, you are actually abiding by rules here. We have council here that reminds us that we have rules, and we don't change them in the middle of a meeting. And we shouldn't be changing the rules in the middle of something as important as this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. No clapping? Please, please refrain from clapping or commenting. Thank you.
Hi, Sarah Delia. Nice to meet you, mayor and council. I live in 114B, and I think we've gotten really close to that 60 percent, and all of the neighbors that I know are in full favor. I've helped out a little bit in speaking with some neighbors, and I think the only thing that I ever hear against it is that neighbors don't want to pay for it. I absolutely understand that, and I know that the people who are not in favor don't want to pay for it. But I also know that we have the benefit of living in Newport Beach with no assessed dues, we don't have association dues, we don't have a way of contributing to beautifying our neighborhood, looking out in our backyards. I know it may not just be an alley thing, but it's also a backyard appearance. And many of us have unsightly telephone poles, we try to put big trees in their place, but the reality is, we would love to see the, you know, the movement and the improvement within our neighborhood. So I would just ask council to please reconsider. This cost is not going down. I believe we had some numbers on power poles that were taken down in alleys, maybe five years ago, and the cost was near $10,000. Now we're looking at $20,000. This isn't going away. People moving into the Heights, there's 14 new people that have moved in, 12 have signed in favor. So the trend is going in the right direction, and over the next 10 years, it's going to cost us $30,000 plus. So I would urge the council to please take that into concern, consideration. I under, understand the concerns of my neighbors, but it's just not going away, and there's no better time than today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Members of the council, Mayor Diane Dixon, I'd like to give my full two minutes to Ernest Adams, so he could clarify his position.
Don't do that.
We don't do that. Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry, we do not do that. It, it's not permitted in our rules.
Actually, it's permitted.
Could I, Mr. City Attorney, do you want to comment on this?
We don't let people see time to other, other speakers.
Okay, well, then I'll stand here and translate for you. What was your position on the, on the subject?
Well, one sentence. Given the negligible aesthetic benefit and the onerous expense to the property owners, the city should never allow that this assessment to pass with a razor-thin majority.
You know, this is-
It ought to be a two-thirds supermajority for at least 60 percent.
You know, we established rule to how this meeting was going to be conducted. I, I really-
That's not, that's basically ceding time to them. That's not appropriate.
All right, I still have a, a minute and 40.
You may speak, sir.
Okay. Given the negligible aesthetic benefit, the onerous expense to the property owners, the city should never allow this assessment to pass with a razor-thin majority. It ought to be a two-thirds supermajority or at least 60 percent. Surely, many property owners have been enticed by the idea of UG, which is good, what?
Underground.
Underground, which is good in NU constant, where poles are on Streets 15th, but it does not apply in Newport Heights, where the negative impact of the poles is insignificant and is absurd, insofar as it would require the homeowners to throw $25,000 into the alleys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please, 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 I've asked you several times, please refrain from clapping and commenting. Yes, please, next speaker.
My name is Barbara Kraus. I live at 518 Riverside. Thank you, council members and mayor. I am in favor of undergrounding. I know that many people are not, but for several reasons. Our neighborhood, the Heights is kind of has an older connotation to it, which is what we love about it, but the undergrounding would improve it. If we're talking about doing the alleys, which I know has been on the agenda for some time, why would we go to the trouble of doing our alleys and coming back two years later, because this subject is not going away, and having to go through the inconvenience and the expense again? So that is, I'm looking at it from a practical matter and from a financial standpoint. And I also believe that there's been a lot of miscommunication and a lot of bad information out there, so people don't really have the facts to make an intelligent decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name's Rick Weiss. Please don't gamble with the city's money on an uncertain ballot outcome by lowering the threshold from 60 percent. If anything, it should be increased to more accurately reflect the overwhelming level of community support needed to pass the ballot. There's been a lot of talk lately about the signature gathering process and threshold to go forward with the ballot. I think we are losing sight of the fact that there's actually no public benefit to undergrounding. In fact, there's evidence to show that there may be public harm. There have been many claims of misinformation on both sides of this issue. Here is some completely accurate information quoted directly from the utility companies themselves. According to giant utility company Entergy, quoted verbatim, Entergy.com, "Underground costs more to install and maintain resulting in increased electric rates. Installing lines underground is expensive for customers and taxpayers, costing 10 times more than overhead transmission lines." This information is corroborated by Southern California Edison. According to the Edison Electric website, the, quote, "The information we have, while inconclusive, seems to indicate that outages tend to be longer with underground facilities, simply because it is more difficult to find problems or replace equipment underground." Edison even has an above-ground equipment initiative, indicating a strong above-ground preference. Quote, "Because it takes less time to find and repair a failed piece of equipment when it is located above ground than when it is located underground, reliability will improve. Above-ground equipment will be easier, faster, and safer to switch. This initiative can help constrain upward pressure on utility rates." That's from Edison. "We should not be taxed against our wills to install a system that is more expensive to maintain, could lead to higher utility rates, and that will definitely be harder to repair and result in much longer outages in the event of an earthquake, when these services will be so sorely needed. Those in favor of undergrading won't be so pro-undergrading when, after a major earthquake, they are without electricity for days, weeks, or months, while their overground neighbors are sitting in their well-lit homes and getting emergency information from their still-functioning TVs and computers and food from their refrigerators." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please, no clapping. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Summer Anderson. I'm a part of the 114B area. Just to clarify-
Can I just ask your first name?
Summer Anderson.
Summer, okay, thank you.
Yeah. To clarify, this is not just a neighborhood issue, this is a personal issue. In front of our home, we have a beautiful tree that was intersected with a line while we were away at work by Southern California Edison. The tree actually has grown around the line, and we had to cut and trim the tree, and there's still a, a post hanging in that line. So it's a personal issue for us. What's more is there's probably three or four other lines that are going directly across our property line in the back and in the front. We're sort of the poster child for this. And I have to tell you, it's, it's not just unsightly, I wonder if it's unsafe. If we were to have some kind of electrical storm, I don't know what kind of shape my front yard or my home would be in, so that's just the first piece. The other piece is that I do have some other friends in the neighborhood who are fantastic residents. I want you to know that they are deep friends of ours. We've been in the Heights since 97. We're not new residents. Our home is the original house. And we don't want to change it. We love it just the way it is. And I also respect the views of the folks who've been there a long time. At the same time, we plan to be here for a long time, 20 years more, and we want to make the investment. I would be happy to shoulder more of the cost, just so we can get this taken care of, and it's safer. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon, council members. My name is Diane Byers. I've lived at 535 Tustin Avenue for the past 38 years. I was part of District 118. I'm now part of the newly created District 114B. I'm opposed to the petition process of undergrounding, as it is played out, because the rules keep changing in process. Our councilman, Tony Petros, voted against the motion to move forward with an assessment study, because the proponents of the two districts have not met the city's standard of reaching 60 percent support for the petition. I agree with his statement that we have a set of rules that we would follow, and if you can pass that set of rules, then you can exercise your right to vote. Because 60 percent of residents did not sign the petitions, it would seem there would be no undergrounding. This undergrounding petition is a mess. Perhaps we need a do-over. Let's follow the established rules, give the residents correct information before they're asked to sign a petition. I urge you to support the 60 percent resident approval of petitions. Why have rules and precedents if we don't follow them? Why not be conservative when we're deciding how we should spend the city's money? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please, no clapping. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor Dixon, members of City Council. My name is John Horn. I'm a resident of 519 Tustin Avenue, and I'm against the undergrounding. I really can't see the need to spend money on something that doesn't need to be fixed, in my opinion. It's all, it's all a matter of aesthetics. My father owns the house. He's been a resident of Newport Heights since 1971. Back at that time, it was a middle-class neighborhood. My father retired from Kraft Foods in 1984, and I just recently retired as a California Classified School District employee four years ago to become my father's full-time caregiver. If this passes, it would put us in financial difficulty. We're middle-class, we can't afford it. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
My name is Nova Wheeler, and my husband and I own a home in Newport Heights since 1972, and I'm speaking for Lynn Lorenz, who can't come here tonight. She wrote this. This evening, I am addressing a group of council members who have been successful in their personal careers. Upon reading their resumes online, I have found that we share some of the same expectations. A government that is fiscally responsible and responsive to its constituents. Listen to these impressive resumes. Mayor Diane Dixon has a political science degree from USC, from which she graduated with honors. She has had a 30-year career as a senior executive in a Fortune 500 public company. She has stated in her bio that she believes in limited government, small budgets, and the power of the people to make their government work for them. Councilman Ed Salich received a bachelor degree from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo in environmental design, and also did a postgraduate work in urban and regional planning. He worked in the private sector as well for Huntington Beach and Newport Beach. He has served three terms as mayor of Newport, has been on the council since 2005, and has never missed a meeting. Councilman Scott Pieter served on the Newport Planning Commission before being elected to City Council. He was in the real estate profession and a licensed architect, having received his BS in architecture from University of Illinois. Most impressively, Scott was an Eagle Scout. Councilman Duffy Duffield has been a resident of Newport Beach since 1955. He's the founder and owner of the largest electric book company in the world. Duffy served as Newport Beach Harbor Commissioner. His bio on the Newport Beach government site says that he believes in smaller government, fair taxation, leadership which carefully considers in response to the concerns and desires of Newport citizens. Last but not least, Councilman Tony Petros is a native of Coastal Orange County. He attended UCI, where he received a baccalaureate degree in biological sciences and sociology. He also attended Cornell University, where he received a master's of regional planning degree. He has served on numerous public and private boards and committees. Each of these members is impressive in their leadership qualities. Core beliefs lead me to believe that as elected officials, they would want to be fiscally responsible by maintaining the threshold of 60 percent petition approval.
Okay, could you please conclude? Thank you.
We would expect them to be fair by not changing the rules they themselves have established in knowledge.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon and the City Council members, my name is Steve Byers. I reside at 535 Tustin Avenue, and I have been a resident there for 38 years. I'll be brief, but just would like to remind the council that you have a fiduciary responsibility to maintain the 60 percent. So I urge you to vote no on this request. And I absolutely oppose any effort to combine AD 114B with 114. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Nile Barrett, 445 Tustin Avenue, which is in 114B. I support the action to move forward to the voting process, per staff recommendation. For my home, I have a view of two power poles, eight power lines, and two transformers. Eliminating these overhead power poles will raise the value of our properties, that is known. In fact, this is just a continuation of the utility undergrounding that's already happened on Tustin Avenue on the 100 and 200 blocks about six or seven years ago. Undergrounding utilities will give us the latest technology, as opposed to what we have out there today, which is about 50, 60 years old. We do live in earthquake country, and when the seismic event comes, the longer poles will move one way, the shorter poles will move another, the power lines can and will come down, when it, in and of itself, is a safety issue. Obviously, live power lines are a safety issue. So too is access by emergency vehicles, not just in the alleys, but on the streets as well. 15th, Cliff, Clay, Beacon, all of these streets have overhead power poles. Undergrounding utilities is cleaner than the existing power poles, which are coated in creosite, coal tar creosote, which is a carcinogen, per the EPA. My kids play in our alley. I'm sure everybody else's kids do, too, because we don't have streetlights or sidewalks out on the streets in the Heights. And then finally, there's been a lot of talk about this issue tearing the heart of the Heights apart. And what I would say is, in this year of election, surely the best thing to do is to move to a vote, and that way, we can put this issue to bed once and for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, City Council members, and City Manager Dave Kiff. My name is Jacqueline Ellis Warren. My late husband and I purchased our home at 404 Fullerton Avenue in 1989. We loved the small houses, the small homes and friendly neighborhood. As you know, at that time, there were poles in the alley, and for the lines that connected electricity to our homes, and they continue to do the job for which they were intended. True, our neighborhood has had many ownership changes since 1989. However, many of us in the neighborhood are now retired and still live in the homes that were built in the 1950s, even though some of the houses being sold, which have been torn down to build new, larger homes that fill the lots. Under the current proposal, these longtime homeowners would be forced to pay substantially to create a situation that would recruit, that would create no improvement of value to them. I feel the continuation of the undergrounding program is wrong, as it would force homeowners to have a financial burden placed on them that is not only unnecessary, but largely unwanted. My understanding is that the suggested undergrounding would only deliver electricity to the property line. The requirement to tear up, then replace patios, pools, backyard landscaping, and decking improvements in order to connect the utilities to the structure would be totally on the existing homeowner. As you are aware, this would be a substantial additional financial burden to each homeowner that would add no real benefit to his property or way of life. Finally, it should be noted that at least the fee ownership of the alleyway that is behind our home is owned by the city. If the city deems it a requirement to underground utilities for city unification, then the city should pay for the undergrounding, not the individual and longtime homeowners, who will receive no benefits and substantial financial burdens. If I had my way, I would suggest adding lights to the alley poles to illuminate all the alleys. That might reduce the number of home and car break-ins that we are now experiencing, and would recreate a real value to the neighborhood. In closing, I would like to thank you for your attention, and respectfully ask that you, honorable board, maintain the 60 percent threshold for certification, instead of lowering it to make it more convenient for the applicant to meet and add a financial burden to city homeowners for unnecessary and unwanted projects such as this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Leslie Bub, and my husband and I bought our home 20 years ago. It was going to be our first home, and I think we will die in that home. So we are in it for the long haul, and have enjoyed our time there. So we are in it for the long haul and have enjoyed our time there. I just want to talk about a little bit that there are a ton of people who really are in favor of them, in favor of moving forward and having a vote. And just because they're not here, they still have a voice. I've had the opportunity to meet a ton of them. And there's even people who didn't want to sign the petition because they wanted to wait until there were hard numbers, something on paper that they could vote for. So they're really looking for a vote to come forward that we can have all the facts. I know in the past that you have lowered the threshold to 50%. So this isn't the first time that we're asking that you look at the majority of people and give us the opportunity to really educate all of our neighbors so that we can work together and have a vote that represents what we're looking for. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. My name is Lauren Friedman. I have been a resident of the Heights for nearly 10 years now, and I also intend to stay there for decades to come. So I view this as an investment in our community. There's one particular point that I would like to make this evening, which is citing back the statistic that we heard earlier, that of the 14 recent buyers in the Heights, 12 of them have signed this petition. That's important, because that means this project will happen. So there is a compelling reason to do it now, which is cost. Right now, the project is going to be the lowest cost that we will see. That's because of the alleyway monies that's been set aside, but also because in the future, undoubtedly, the cost that the utility will charge us will be higher. And so if we don't do this now, we're going to do this at some point in the near future. We have already heard that the proponents, if they don't do it now, will simply reorganize in the near future. The problem is that the cost will be higher, not just for proponents, but for all of us, all of us sitting in this room. When it passes two years, five years, we'll have to pay a higher cost than we'll pay now. So because of this compelling circumstance of the money that's set aside for the alleyway, I would urge the council to move forward with the signatures that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Mike Hefner. I live at 422 Fullerton Avenue, which is in Assessment District 114. I'm a proponent of a vote on the, or going to vote on both 114 and 114B. We got a group of neighbors together in June of 2014, and started working diligently to collect petitions in favor of exploring the undergrounding process further, and ultimately going to vote. And the reason for that is because of the alley project. This is a unique opportunity for us to enjoy and participate in the cost that the city's going to incur to redo the alleys. And in fact, it'll be the lowest-cost opportunity that we really ever have to do that, repeating what a few of my other people have said here. We've been very transparent in the process. We have had some rescissions, as your consultant highlighted. Some of those rescissions have retracted, and a number of those rescinding parties that we spoke to are still interested in voting in favor of the district if they have the opportunity. In addition to that, there are others who were reluctant to sign a petition. As Mrs. Bub said, they want the opportunity to see hard numbers in the city and an independent balloting process. We feel confident that this measure would pass if we had the opportunity to vote. We also are sensitive to my neighbors who are here and concerned about the cost. But the costs are only going to go up. And with the trends in the neighborhood and the number of new residents that are signing in favor of this undergrounding process, it is imminent. The city has already required that these utilities be stubbed for future undergrounding on any new home or remodel. It is an inevitable process that'll occur, and now is the best opportunity for all of us to do that. I'm supportive of a vote where we have objective information that's not partial. It's not the opponents or the proponents. It's somebody making a decision in the privacy of their home with their wife over the kitchen table about how they want to move forward or not move forward on the district. It's the only fair way to do it, my way to quiet the rumors and the misrepresentations and misinformation, and allow us to vote on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Nini. I live in 437 Aliso.
Could you say your last name, please?
I moved to Newport Heights four years ago, and the reason I moved here is I love the aesthetic. I like the feeling of old feeling. And I'm retired. I don't have extra income to come up with this. But my point is that if I wanted to be ruled by a bunch of neighbors, I would have gone to a gated community, or I could have bought a condo. I came here because I don't want any neighbor telling me what to do. If a group of neighbors want to say yes to this, then they can go ahead and pay for everyone else. We are thinking, we are dealing about... The issue right now is 50% against 60%. I believe, even if it was 80% to 20%, that 20% had the right to say no. So if a bunch of people, a bunch of neighbors want to rule and tell me how to spend my money, they can go ahead and pay for this whole process. And City of Newport Beach, I'm paying high taxes. City of Newport Beach, if they want to beautify the alley, let them pay for it. Why are you imposing the cost on me? I'm not going to pay for it, and I think lots of people have the right to say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Linda Adams, Aliso Avenue. I've lived in the Heights since 1960. I oppose undergrounding. It is an undue burden on too many people. It is clear that this particular petition has become corrupted. People can disagree on how or why that happened, but it is definitely time to end this particular chapter by upholding the original instructions to the petitioners and maintain the 60% threshold. The committee has been told from the beginning that the threshold was 60%. And then all of a sudden, just like tonight, changes have occurred, and 60% is now in question. The new norm of a 50% threshold is the latest example of moving the goalposts in order to achieve a predetermined objective that further erodes the city's credibility and matters beyond this particular issue. That the city will accept the performance of the petitioners, who with two weeks of intense work, managed to lower their percentage to 50.85 is distressing. It's very distressing. We are additionally concerned by the not-so-veiled suggestion that combining 114B and 114 would be a good idea to bring the total back up to 52.37%, which is less than the original 54 or some percents. We are very concerned with the City Council fiddling around with threshold percentages, the elastic use of certification protocols, and now potentially combining 114 and 114B to achieve a higher, but still significantly less than 60% threshold. Should the City Council accept a less than 60% threshold and combine the assessment districts, or not even combine them, questions of due process come into mind. The petition lacks integrity, and the process is compromised beyond repair. Without blaming anyone, you should act prudently to uphold the 60% and return the sanity to the Heights. This is nuts.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. No clapping, please.
My name is Susan Kopicki. I'm a resident on El Medina in 81114 since 1971. Good evening. I urge the City Council to uphold the 60% threshold. Petitioners have had almost two years to collect the required signatures at that threshold. When they didn't, when that didn't work out, they submitted the petition with barely 54% support. Requests to rescind moved that number to barely 51%. Then the two-week continuance gave them time to add names, while opponents weren't even allowed to see the revised petition to verify that the rescinds had been taken off, and we still haven't seen it. Now we see that support has declined again to 50.85, despite their efforts to increase above 51.23. So the highest number was 54.21, which eroded to 51.23, which even after two more weeks of signature gathering is now at 50.85. I'm not a mathematician, but I can do arithmetic, and I don't think it's a good bet for the City Council, for a City Council committed to prudent decision-making, to accept those numbers toward a ballot that requires more than 50%. This process has not been good for the community. It will take time to rebuild trust in the process and in each other. And if this petition is certified and goes to a ballot, the current atmosphere continues through summer and beyond. The petitioners talk about how they're going to save a lot of money because it's going to be combined with the alley. Well, their savings don't, we're not going to be saving anything, because it's going to cost us money that we don't, a lot of our people don't have, who may end up having to pay over time. I worked on the numbers, and people will... It's really unfair, the way it is right now, and I urge you to let it start over.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name is Stephen Miles. I'm a principal with Miles Law Group. I'm here to confirm that I actually prepared written commentary and emailed it to each one of you and city staff. Just want to confirm that that's been accepted in the administrative record proceeding. I've taken the position, and on behalf of my clients who I represent, that this petition should be rejected by the council. Now, if this council at this point in time still wants to entertain the concept of undergrounding, I think the former commenters' point about a do-over is certainly something that you should consider. The right to petition government initiative, recall, referendum powers, you know, these are constitutional rights that are reserved to the people. The concepts of procedural due process don't, I mean, courts don't really look favorably on changing rules. You're hearing tonight, you know, that there's concern with really the intent of the vote, with the adequacy or the legitimacy of the actual assessment boundaries, and predominantly the rule, the rules of engagement by which to determine whether or not a petition is valid and should be put forth on a ballot for vote. With the evidence that has been offered in this record, I think it's overwhelmingly clear that you have major procedural due process violations and flaws. And so if you are still in a position to entertain the concept of undergrounding, you should certainly consider a do-over. I believe that a lot of this is half-baked, what I've seen. It just, you know, these are not, this isn't rocket scientists in terms of how to get an accurate vote on an issue like this. So it shouldn't be this complicated.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I ask the city attorney a question?
Sure.
Mr. City Attorney, have you read Mr. Miles's letter, and is there any validity to it?
Yeah, I have read Mr. Miles's letter, and we did receive it, so that will be a part of the administrative record. Basically, he raises two issues. In regards to due process, he questions whether or not the people are receiving a special benefit. And I think that the issues raised there, that really, that is not really a due process question. The engineer, when they go forward and put together a report, will identify the special benefit and allocate that to the appropriate properties. And the second issue Mr. Miles raises is a sequoia issue, and the exemption that's been relied on, I believe, is appropriate.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable Mayor Dixon and council members, my name is Chad Liberto. I'm not new to Newport Beach. I've resided here since 1981, but I am new to the Heights in the last three years. My family plans on raising our children there. They play in the alleys. I would like to see the future of the Heights meet the standards that the remainder, or the rest of Newport Beach has already adopted, which is to have the majority of the cities underground. I do respect a lot of the wishes of the people that have been in the Heights longer than I have, but I do see the future moving forward, and I understand there is a cost benefit to doing this now, as you've heard from previous people. And I support their view, and I hope you move forward this so we can actually put it to a vote for the residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Gina Sarita. I grew up in Newport Beach, and when I moved back in 2009, I've been pleasantly surprised by many of the changes. I mean, look at this City Hall versus old City Hall. There's just been some change. And I think at this time, you know, this issue's confusing to some. I've had so many, I'm in 14B on Riverside. There's been mixed opinions. There's been different numbers. There's been many different objectives put out there. I think it is fair to have an opportunity to vote on this and deal with real numbers. What are the benefits that Edison might kick back to the owners? What are the real numbers? What are the real costs? And stop, you know, getting so confused with, you know, just, there's just so many passionate viewpoints. I understand it's difficult for some longtime residents to meet this cost, and hopefully you're amenable with some terms of, you know, making it favorable over a longer period of time of payment. But the main thing that I keep coming back to, in addition to the beautification of the neighborhood, but that's not the most important, it's the fact that all new communities are, and many communities within Newport Beach, are embracing undergrounding. So it's not an issue that's going to go away. It's going to substantially increase, and it's numbers. So I think the change should be embraced, and we ought to have an opportunity to vote on it. Thank you, Mayor Dixon and council members, for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Barnard. I reside at 510 Tustin Avenue. I've been a resident at that address since 1986 for 30 years. I'm going to speak to the alleys from a social dynamic standpoint. If you haven't lived with an alley, it is a little bit different. The alley is effectively our social hub. It is our town square. It's where our kids learn to ride bikes. It's where the neighborhood kid learns a little bit about woodworking, how to fix the boat, how to repair a bike. The boys build jumps. It's where Dale Link builds sand racers, and his boys ride motorcycles up and down to see if the carburetor's working or something. It's where the neighborhood guy puts a surfboard on the back of his truck and goes off. And if you want to see a real pickup truck, it's the guy who owns a tow truck station. He's down the alley. We all know our neighbors up and down the alley. It's our social core. We don't really know the people across the street, because you only see them when you go to get your mail or your newspaper, and occasionally when you park out there. But most of us, 70, 80%, come and go from our alleys. It's our family front door. It's where in-laws park to come into the house. They come in through the patio or something. So it is our social core. It's those people we know. So we look at this as an opportunity when the city's putting forth the funds to repave. And the utilities are going to pay a portion of taking what their reserve accounts are to put things underground, for us to participate to get them underground. And then the rest of the redevelopment happens. People put in a little piece of landscaping. Somebody finds a place to tuck their trash cans when they decide they need to redo a gate. You know, bit by bit, when the houses are redeveloped, they become a nicer place. And when you look at alleys around town that have been redone, they do become substantially nicer. So people walk their dogs down the alley, because it's safer than the streets. There aren't sidewalks and lights. So they go down the alleys. The domestic help that gets off at a bus station goes down the alley to go to the house that they work at. These are the people that go on the alley. And there's about 20% that never use their garage, or the garage fronts on the street still. But for the people that come and go from those garages, which is about 70 or 80%, they all know each other. That's what they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And please, members of the public, respect the speakers and hold your comments and your murmuring and your applause. Thank you.
Mayor Dixon, members of the City Council, my name is Gail Demmer. I am opposed to undergrounding of telephone poles. And I'm not going to give you my reasons why, because you've heard all the opponents' reasons many times, and more than you probably like. I am going to address what's going on in the Newport Heights area today because of how the process appears to be manipulated to achieve the desired results of City Hall to secure undergrounding poles throughout our city. For those residents on Tustin Avenue and Riverside, this is the second time they are opposing each other in this controversy. I foresee that this will occur to all of us in the Heights, and all of us are well aware of it. I question a process that appears so flawed that it promotes behavior so... of it. I question a process that appears so flawed that it promotes behavior so inappropriate that it caused Councilman Piotta to mention at the May 10th public hearing how shocked he was and disappointed in the slanderous emails that he has received. I question a process that stimulates and promotes this kind of behavior, emails to our city staff, to our councilmen, and I have to tell you, I have received these emails also. This controversy at this time is caused by the supposition that you are changing the rules of the ballgame in the middle of the game. This controversy is caused by the fact, if you don't like who wins the game, we have to play it again. Should there not be a timeframe where we, as neighbors and friends, could have a reprieve? I encourage you to keep in place the existing percentage that exists in the process today. I ask you to please stop rezoning our zone into smaller zones, which continue a constant controversy between our opponents and the proponents. I also encourage the council to example... examine the components of the process which causes distrust of our government. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Dixon, council member, my name is Tom Baker. I've lived in the Heights since 1971. I am currently... I am strongly opposed to reducing the 60% approval. I agree with Councilmember Petros when he pointed out that proponents of several districts have not met the city's standards of reaching 60% support for their petition to have the city pay for an engineering report and to hold an election. I completely agree with that statement. I believe it was roughly a year ago with the present city and council members, Mark made a presentation. I think he called it "Undergrounding 101." Correct, Mark? Mike Sennaquerry might have helped you. As a result of that study session, and as documented in Sennaquerry's... I'm losing my... Sennaquerry's staff report, he said that as a result of the study session, the council... the city council issued... I'm losing the chart. As a result of the session, the council indicated general support for the status quo, including maintaining an 80% signature approval, and that was less than a year ago. You said what you're going to do, and what comes to mind is John Wayne. John Wayne would say what he's going to do, then he would do what he said. I ask you to maintain the 60%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I live at 2210 Private Road. We've heard a lot about percents tonight, and my address is not in any of these districts, but I wanted to make a comment in support of the lady who talked about the rights of the 20% in a 20% versus 80% situation. And I wanted to make a comment that in all these comments at the last meeting in this, I don't think you've heard. If you were to go ahead and authorize an election about this matter, somebody said the election would put the matter to bed forever. I don't believe that's the case, because I believe the election is only advisory to you. Achieving 50% in the election, as I understand it, is a requirement for you to go ahead with the undergrounding district, but at that point, when you see the results of the election, you, as the elected representatives of the people of Newport Beach, still have to weigh the two opposing sides and decide whether you want to go ahead with the district or not. 50% is not going to be a determining factor. Even if it won by 80%, and you thought that the 20% had a valid argument for not proceeding, you, as the representatives, would have the right to decide not to have the district, and I think you should have that in view when you decide whether you want to go ahead with the election or not. Thank you.
Thank you. One more comment?
Hello, I'm Parvish Goshtasby. I live on El Modina.
Excuse me, could you just repeat your name?
Parvish Goshtasby.
Could you spell that?
First name, P-A-R-V-I-Z. Last name, G-O-S-H-T-A-S-B-Y.
Thank you.
I've lived in Newport about seven, eight years, but we only moved to Newport Heights about six months ago, because we checked out all the neighborhoods, and we love the area. The neighbors are wonderful. Neighborhood is great. Always walked my dog there. We built a house. But, long story short, I hate to see my neighbors fighting about all this, and I personally am in support of undergrounding. My new property is already underground, all the wires, so I kind of had that concept, and through my backyard, I do see the wires, and it would be lovely to see the blue sky more. I do think that it will increase property values. I think it is safer to underground, and overall, I think the aesthetics would be wonderful to match the other neighborhoods in Newport that have already done it. Now, I understand, and I appreciate and respect my neighbors who have been here for decades. They have a fixed income. It's going to be a major stressor, and I feel for them. So I asked the council and the city, you know, we live in a beautiful, privileged area, financially strong. Is this something that, especially with the undergrounding being done in the city property, the alleys, something that could be covered, or at least helped, through the city to cover the costs for the members of the community, so that it's not such a burden for everyone? That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comments? If you'd come forward, please, quickly. Thank you.
Valerie Carson, and I live at 414 San Bernardino Avenue. I moved to Newport Heights in 1972. There's one thing that has not been addressed at all that people are misinformed about, and that is that undergrounding is less safe for the children playing closer to the electrical field than it is to have it 30 feet up in the air on a pole. So anyone thinks that their kids in the alley are safer is wrong. That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. If there's anyone still remaining to speak, if you would, please come forward closer to the lectern.
My name is James Placolak. I live at 3012 Broad Street, Newport Beach. If you asked me about 50-some years ago about the undergrounding, I would have probably signed a petition. I lost a lot of kites in the telephone poles years ago, but I've matured a little bit. I'm against the undergrounding. It's not going to improve the safety of the neighborhood at all by any means. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does that include everyone? All right, let's bring it back here. We had some questions. Staff, were you taking notes on some of the questions? One question, let me just ask about the process of recisions. Would you explain that?
Do you want to go through that, Mike, or Dennis?
I'll explain it. So, yeah, as Dennis Anderson, the assessment engineer, stated, we had several, a couple dozen people that sent in recisions. We got a lot of recisions last summer. If you remember, the other undergrounding district in Newport Heights called District 118, and they came in from all areas. District 114 has been in the works for two years, almost two years. And folks would either send us a letter, or they would email us, and then we gave all of that information over to Dennis, who would validate that that was the right person. If there was a discrepancy or a problem with that, then we'd send it back to the person and say, hey, can you give us more information? The name doesn't match, or something like that. And I think, like as he explained, all the bugs have been worked out on who's who, and almost everything has been verified.
All right, so you've just clarified that for me. So it wasn't so much of individual people pulling their name off, or it was really validating the signatures and what was a valid signature and not?
Okay, so there's two parts to it. One is, after the petitioners' proponents sent in all the signature packages, you know, so we gave that to our assessment engineer to go and review every single signature. So every single name and signature had to match with the title of each property. But in the meantime, and in parallel with that, there were people that signed a petition and wanted their name removed, and we...
Is that a normal process?
It's not.
Please, please, please don't speak from the audience. Yes?
It's not a normal process. It's not typical, but we had, you know, two different community meetings on this, too, that we hosted, and we sent out mailers ourselves, too. And so then, in the community discussions, and after the opposition formed in 118, then we said, okay, well, if anybody would like to rescind their name, then go ahead and rescind their name, too. We hadn't done that in the past.
I see. Okay. All right. Council members, any...
I wanted a couple follow-ups that I heard. Mark, you said, I think you said, almost everything has been verified. Has everything been verified, or almost everything?
Well, I mean, Dennis mentioned there, there was a couple signatures that he could not count, because he could not verify.
So they are not counted on the positive side?
They're not counted. Exactly.
They're not part of the 50-point...
Right.
...out of my glasses. And then, 3.5. And then, 8.5, sorry. And then, the gentleman talked about something that I've heard a lot, and that's whether or not we counted postcards that were more informational-oriented. Could you explain what actually is counted?
No. What's counted is actually the signature page of the petition. That's what's submitted, and that's what's counted by the assessment engineer. You know, there may have been some confusion when we had the sign-in sheet, you know, for the community meetings. We heard a lot of people say, I never signed a petition. We felt, in fact, we talked to a few people that have told us that they've never signed a petition, and then we've shown them the petition, and they say, oh, okay, I guess I must have signed it. You know, I mean, so, but, you know, because it could have been a year ago or two, when they did sign the petition, too. And, but we did have two community meetings on it. I think there's been a lot of information out there on both sides, and of course, our website, so.
And did we address the due process question? I think you did, Mr. Harv.
Yeah, I think the only other issue that hasn't been addressed by staff is whether or not the council has the authority to waive the 60% and go with the 50. 50% is what's set by state law, from what I'm hearing from Harris Associates and from staff. They have 50.85, so legally, you're in compliance with state law, and you can waive the guideline that's used by the city council, and I think that's the only remaining issue that was out there.
All right, council members. I don't see any names requesting to speak. No? Shall we make... have a motion? Mr. Selig?
Yeah, I'll move that we waive the current petition percentages and adopt Resolution 2016-56 for Assessment District 114.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other comments? All right.
Just to clarify, just for Assessment District 114, you want it... you're separating the two?
Well, we said we had to have two separate votes, correct?
No, I said you could vote... you could vote on all of them together, or you could vote on them separately. It's really...
Okay, well, I'll change my motion to vote on both of them, that we waive the policy and we adopt the resolution for Assessment District 114 and the resolution for Assessment District 114B, and approve the budget amendment and the rest of the actions under Item 14.
And I think the other item that needs clarification, as staff had proposed, to basically combine the districts for purposes of doing the assessment engineers and the vote, I think it'd be good to get clarification on that point from the council.
Okay, I'll add that to the motion also.
They're combined. That's okay with a second.
You're going to combine them for purposes of the vote?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with that?
No, it's... we're combining them for the purposes of the engineer's report, not for the actual vote that goes to the electors.
Yeah, so I guess that's the question that needs clarification. You have basically...
What is your recommendation?
So my recommend... Well, you really could approach it two ways. You could do an...
No, what's your recommendation? Not... Don't give me two ways. What's your recommendation? You're the attorney here.
To do the vote separately. Make sure that the vote is done separately for each district.
But we can combine the engineer's report, and the cost can be as though it were a single district.
If we get two positive votes?
So that's where you have a choice. And so, without giving you guys options, you could do an engineer's report for 114, and you could do an engineer's report for 114B separately, and you'd have two different numbers to, you know, one done for each district. Okay? So that's the first option. The second option would be, you still do the votes for the district separately, but you do an engineer's report that basically combines the cost. So you have one engineer's report, but under that scenario, if either district failed, you wouldn't be able to go forward, because your engineer's report's based on them being combined.
So for the follow-up vote, they would still have to be two separate votes?
Yeah, so you count the votes separately for each district. You could do an engineer's report that basically calculated the cost as being combined, but if either district failed, you wouldn't be able to go forward with either one, because you combined the cost to lower the cost.
So which option would allow us to... would allow that 114 doesn't go through on its own if 114 does not pass? 114B doesn't go through on its own if 114 does not pass? Option A or B?
So combining the engineer's report.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, and I just want to make, just a comment, just to clarify my vote on this going forward, is after hearing, I actually heard all this before I took off on my flight last week, so I've heard all these comments for both nights, as we all have, and what really tears me apart is the tension and dissension in the community, and I truly believe, my position is, my personal opinion, is that a vote will resolve this one way or the other, and will allow this matter to be put to rest or to go forward, but our system is based on a system of votes and democracy and majority rule, and I would like the process to move forward so we can be clear on what the residents want for their neighborhood by majority vote. And just to be clear, just so the people understand the process, it's... the council is waiving the 60% rule, still in compliance with the 50% requirement at the state level, is so to protect this city from unnecessary delays and a huge cost in doing the full bore engineering cost. So to do this in a more accelerated fashion is that we'll get a highly reliable engineering estimation, and that will allow an informed opinion to be expressed in the vote, and we will know that sooner rather than later whether we go forward or not. So that is... Now I call for the vote. Oh, did you want to say anything else?
A quick observation, and nothing tonight has changed where I'm coming from, but I just want us to understand that I believe since February, there has been some rule that this council has waived. Something we have done where we won't agree to follow our own rules, and I think at some point, we need to draw the line and respect the rule of law or change it. But to just every meeting, find some way to change what we do for expediency's sake, doesn't give these people any faith in us. So I just...
Please, please, please.
I would just hope that as we move forward, we can find a sweet spot where we actually do what we say.
Okay. Let's call for... Please, please, quiet, please.
And if I could just, real quickly, I just want to confirm. So each district will be voted on separately, and either pass or fails, but the Assessment District will be combined for calculating costs. Is that an accurate reflection of what your motion is?
All right. So are we voting once or twice?
Once.
Once. Okay. Let's call for the vote.
With Councilmember Petros voting no, the motion carries for one.
All right. City clerk, Ms. Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made by only one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, we are going to adjourn in memory of Mr. James Jimmy Emme, and Mr. Selig will speak on this. If we could please... if you could exit the chambers quietly, please. If we could, please, if you could exit the chambers quietly, please, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Businessman and philanthropist James Jimmy Emme, a longtime resident of Newport Beach, passed away on Saturday, May 14th, just a few weeks shy of his 100th birthday. In fact, we were going to ask you to do a proclamation for his 100th birthday. Jimmy's small stature, he was about five foot two, I think, didn't belie his bigger-than-life spirit or far-reaching generosity. As a passionate, committed lover of the arts and education, over the years, he and his wife Catherine have donated millions of dollars to institutions and organizations such as the Pacific Symphony, Chapman University, UC Berkeley College of Engineering, Caltech, Oregon Tech, Purdue, Hoag Hospital, Seegerstrom Center for the Arts, to just name a few. Jimmy was an avid sailor. He was a member of the Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club since 1970, and he was Commodore in 1977. In 1978, he purchased his beloved Swan 43-foot sailboat named Peli in Finland, and in that same year, he proceeded to sail it back to the, to Newport Beach with the revolving Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club crew, even going through the Panama Canal. The Italian-American son of a shoemaker, Jimmy's career began as an aerospace engineer and executive, and later he translated his keen business sense to become a successful real estate investor. On a personal note, I'll never forget a visit Jimmy made to our home in Palm Desert a few years ago. At the ripe, young age of 95, he pulled up in his Ferrari with a grin from ear to ear. He loved to put his pedal to the metal when it came to fast cars, and he actually did that when he left my house. He hit the accelerator and fishtailed down the street, and my neighbors were wondering who was that 95-year-old man hot-riding down our street. He enjoyed life to the fullest until the very end. We'll miss Jimmy. Lynn and I will miss Jimmy. He was a good friend of ours. He was a good man with a big heart.
Thank you. Very nice. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.